We're starting 6 o'clock. It's Tuesday, March 26th. The first item we have today is our special meeting. This will last one hour until 7:00 PM. We have three items on the agenda. 23 Frog Town Road, as well as an 824 review for 11 Farm Road. Wherever we are with this, at the conclusion of 7:00, we have to stop. And we will need to continue the rest of the discussion on that application, whichever one it may be, into the next meeting in April. So do we, Sarah, should we start with the 824? Or do you want to start with the other one?
We're going to start with Frog Town.
Okay. All right. So first one on the agenda, number 23 Frog Town Road.
Roll call.
Oh, sorry, roll call. Forgot. Commissioners, Dan Radman, I'm here. Krista Nielsen.
Here.
Yeah, turn your mics on. Kent Turner.
Here.
Art Casavant.
Here.
John Criss.
Here.
Chris Herring.
Here.
John Engel.
Here.
Paul Knag.
Here.
Alan Swedlow, not here.
Tom Benton.
Here.
Christina Larson.
Here.
And Eric Knowles. Not here yet. Okay.
I think Eric might be on Zoom.
Is he?
I don't know if he is right now, but I thought that was the plan.
Oh, was it? Okay.
He is not on Zoom right now.
Not on yet. Okay. All right. So 23 Frog Town. Thank you, Mr. Rucci. He just handed out a package of information for the presentation here. Upon application of David J. Rucci, Lampert Tuie Rucci LLC, authorized agent for Jerome Lay, owner, for a site plan and special permit approval pursuant to sections 8.2, Point B, 3.7 Point E, and 3.4 Point C, Point 3, to allow for an accessory dwelling unit with building coverage to exceed the 553 square feet in exchange for the applicant restricting 1,498 square feet of the current home to a height of less than 18 feet as allowable under section 3.5D in the two-acre zone at 23 Frog Town Road, map 32, block 201, lot 16. Mr. Rucci.
Please make sure the microphone's on. No, no, no. Off on your laptop.
Yeah.
You just have to press it.
Hold it down.
Special touch, though.
Yeah, it's fussy. Press hard. Right where it says push on the bottom.
I don't know how to read.
Just trying to help you.
Working? What? Come on.
Apparently not.
Come on. Maybe I don't. Maybe I don't. All right. Sorry, that's not a good start. Okay, so, good evening. I'm here this evening with Jerome Lay, who's the owner of the piece of property on 23 Frog Town Road, Michael Smith, who is the architect on it, and Wayne Devanzo, I think, who is the engineer, who should be on Zoom. So this is 23 Frog Town Road. We're looking for, this is under 3.7E. We're requesting some additional building coverage for encumbering certain parts of this particular property on the home at 23. So here's just, to keep you kind of an idea of where we are right now, this is the beginning of the driveway where we're coming up. And you'll see the house sort of sits kind of along this left-hand side of the driveway. You turn, you come around, you sort of circle into this particular driveway. And in this area here is sort of where we're going to end up. Here's your pool. And we want to put a accessory dwelling unit here, which acts first as a two-car garage on the top. You could actually park three cars technically, because you can tandem two of them in. And then on the bottom there, on the cellar portion of it, there's going to be a little accessory dwelling unit with a kitchen and a little living area, also sort of, and a bathroom, would also double as a sort of a poolhouse on that bottom level there. Members, 3.7E, you have to restrict a certain portion. For the additional coverage that you're looking for in this particular case, we're looking for, we're actually building a building that's about 995 square feet. We need, we're 553 square feet over. So what we're requesting to do is, we would have to, under this particular section, roughly restrict portions of this property to 18 feet or less, about 1,106 square feet. We're going to actually restrict more than that. We're restricting almost 1,500 square feet, which is 1,000, it's actually technically 1,498 square feet. Here's one of the, here's the survey. Shows once again, as we kind of come in this driveway here, turn back through the driveway, there's going to be a little area here of lawn. And then this accessory dwelling unit and garage is going to be sitting right up close to the pool. As you see here, here's the accessory dwelling unit, here's the pool, and then these are the areas that we're deed restricting. There's a portion in the rear that's above the garage itself now, or close to the garage. There's a porch area off, as you come in, towards the west of the property. And then, of course, back here on the side of the property, there's another area. And I'll have pictures of these three. Here's just a sort of more of a upgraded look at it, just so I expanded these particular, these particular areas, so it's easier to see on. Here's the first area that's being encumbered, this 526, oops, sorry, 526 square feet right here. That area's going to, it's going to sit under 18 feet. This house in and of itself is only about 23 feet high in general, throughout the entire building itself. It's kind of a, you know, an eclectic type of house that's been built onto over the years and over the years. And, you know, it's got kind of that rambling feel to it. This is the back portion of the property. The pool is actually going to kind of be sitting, I'm sorry, the accessory dwelling unit's almost right here, if you're, if you're trying to get a perspective of where it is. And then this area right here as well is going to be restricted. Where the, where the accessory dwelling unit's going is about 280 feet from Frog Town Road itself. So it's not really, not going to really be able to see it from that particular spot. And then here's the last spot that we're encumbering here, this 347 square feet, once again, over in another porch on the property. Once again, we just went through this, you know, what we're looking for. It's a 995-square-foot garage. We're over coverage by 553 square feet. 1,106 is the minimum area to be deed restricted, and we're deed restricting more than that, 1,498 square feet. This is the site plan. I think I'll come back to this, and I'll let Michael Smith talk about the architecture of the property, and we can come back to the site plan. The engineering's all been approved by Public Works. But if you had specific questions on the site plan, we're happy to get Wayne, who I know is on the, on the phone right, on the Zoom right now. Oh, yours is on. You got it. Good. So, Michael Smith, I'll just turn it over to him for the architectural plans. Do you want to be able to move it?
Yeah, I'll drive it.
Good, it's just right there. Yeah.
Good evening. My name is Michael Smith from Michael Smith Architects. And I want to start just quickly with a broader review of the site plan. If you look at this plan here, currently, the driveway from Frog Town comes in around the back of the house here. The elevation of the back of the house, where the existing driveway is, and the existing pool difference is about eight to nine feet in difference in elevation. So when our clients came to us and wanted some parking and a poolhouse and/or little accessory unit, we realized, obviously right away, that we have coverage issues. So what we decided to do here was combine everything into a one footprint, keep it as tight as we can, and use the slope of the property, which is what we've done. We do have some retaining walls that we're building to build up the driveway of the property, so we can go access the garage. But I just wanted to start with that. This is a rendering of the, what I'll call the backside of the, of the garage poolhouse. This is, this is basically, you can see the retaining walls going around. This shows also the materials that we want to use. It's, we want to use all natural materials, stone, natural cedar. We're also, just as an aside, we're also upgrading the main house, which you see just rendered in white in this, with all new finishes and roof, and more, more sort of stone and natural materials as well.
Are you getting rid of the existing garages?
No.
No. Okay, so there'd be five parking garages?
Yeah, five total, yeah, spaces, yeah. This is just another view showing, as you're, as you're approaching from the driveway, you kind of drive, this is the existing driveway down here, you drive up here, and then you enter the garage here. These are the, just elevations, the, you know, two-dimensional, two-dimensional drawings, showing, you know, the materials, shutters. This drawing shows our compliance with the building height, in addition to the story, the one-and-a-half-story. So we meet the requirement to be a seller, so we don't count as a two-story, and we also meet the, the 15-foot height, where about 14 feet, nine inches, plus or minus. This is the floor plan of the lower level, kind of a pretty wide-open space, small bedroom, small bathroom. This is, you know, as it walks out to the, to the swimming pool, which is, which is over, oops, over here, the existing swimming pool and patio is here. And then this is the second level, or the garage level, which is just essentially a wide-open, a wide-open space there. And the rest of this is just more architectural drawings. This is a light fixture, similar to the ones we're going to use. Those will be located in the relocations on the outside of the, of the building, attached to the building. Want to take it from here?
Do you want to have, Mr. Chairman, would you like to ask questions now about the architecture, or you want me to go through the neighboring properties? Okay. Sure. Okay. So, looking at the neighboring properties, you can see that there already exists some fairly dense screening. This is, to the east of the driveway, this property sits up on Weed Street. So that's that white house that sits up on Weed Street. It's got some nice screening on it now. This is looking to the north, and this is the screening that exists on this particular line. And there's another, you know, nice density here showing screening. So we're not really proposing much screening in and around these, in and around this accessory dwelling unit at the time. There will be landscaping put in, as you saw before, on those retaining walls. And there's two little areas on the, on either side of the sitting area that will have some trees in that area. But for the most part, we're not really proposing anything more at this particular time. Here's the west screening of the property. Once again, you can see, I mean, even in the winter, it's got some deciduous trees, so there's some good screening there. And also, as Mr. Smith said earlier, all this property's sort of flowing downhill. So it starts at this 10-foot level, even on this property. It's hard to see kind of that distinction here with the snow on the ground. But it drops down about 10 feet, and then it continues to go down Frog Town on that hill. So you can see, we took a look, one of the neighbors who was to the west had asked, can you see, can I, will be able, will I be able to see it? Can you, you know, take some pictures, let me know what you think? And Mr. Smith went out, took a look, and you can, as you can see from this, it, where his house sits, which is sort of down in this area right here of the property, he already just looks sort of up into these trees. And this, this is going to be lower than the house itself that's there today, the existing house that's there today. So we feel like there's little, there's no chance that they're really going to see this particular building from their particular property. And we just have some views from the neighbor's property to the neighbor's property, and then from their driveway. This is this third one here. You see, you kind of look up into this screening already. I'm not sure, would you like to hear anything from the engineer who we have on the, on Zoom right now?
Yes, it's Commissioner Turner. Could you describe the septic system and how it is?
So, right now, the septic system, we actually, we still need to get a B-100 septic system, a central system, approved by the state. So we're not in a position right now to actually build this without that state approval. We were hoping that we would have it, but we don't have it by now. So for this particular hearing, if the commission wants to either leave it open, waiting for us to get that particular, or if they felt that it was, this was something that we were willing to approve at this time, with the condition that we get this approval, obviously, it's completely up to the commission as to how they want to treat that. It was just unfortunate we didn't have it. We don't have it today. Is, if Wayne Devanzo's on Zoom, Wayne, do you want to run through your site plan, please?
Yes, certainly. Wayne Devanzo, Fairfield County Engineering. This is the drainage plan. In essence, we are collecting runoff from the pool, the pool patio, and a portion of the extended driveway, and routing it to a set of cul-de-sacs, which is to the, I guess it would be to the west of, of the pool and the patio, which you can see on the, on that site plan. This mitigates the 25-year storm, and it has been approved by, by engineering, by DPW. And that, you know, and then this, this will also replenish the groundwater, meets, you know, the groundwater recharge volume. And we are providing, you know, adequate separation from the proposed B-100, which is located to the, I guess that would be to the southeast of it, or to the south of the, the proposed structure, which you can see on, on the site plan. And that's, that's really about it.
Just for clarification, just for clarification, there was a question earlier about the number of garages. There's two existing garages and two new garage doors.
There's two new garage doors. I mean, you can tandem park in that. I'm not sure how we actually treat that from a zoning perspective. There's two garage doors, but you can actually tandem park two.
It's actually, the, the new structure has, there's two existing days. The new, the new structure has one 18-foot-wide garage door. So in terms of the width, there, you could get two cars side by side, but it's deep enough, some smaller cars, you could tandem.
Okay, thank you.
Why do you feel to use somebody else's spots? Would it be possible to be made required?
Do you want to answer that, Jerome?
Sure. Better enough, two-car garage, we'd like more garage spaces.
Sir, you need to identify yourself.
Sorry, Jerome Lay, I'm the homeowner. We have two attached garage spaces now. I think it's an integral part of the house to have those attached spaces, so I don't think we would eliminate those two garage spots. I think the, there's, there's no desire to park, you know, the new structure full of cars. I think we'd like to have some workshop space, which is lacking in the existing attached garage.
I have some questions, if I may, Mr. Rucci.
Sure.
On some of the building materials, you mentioned cedar and stone. So the cedar is going to be where on the dwelling?
It's the, if you go to the rendering, it's the vert, excuse me, excuse me, the vertical material here.
It's skinned and?
Yes. Yeah, it's, it's vertical, like one-by-six, natural cedar. And then the roof is also cedar.
Cedar roof as well?
Yes.
I noticed you have a, it looks like a, I don't want to say dormer window, but sort of an attic window that's just all open and decorative?
Yeah, it's just all open in there, yes.
Understood. And I mentioned stone. Will any exposed, called it stonework, be all-natural stone?
Well, it's all going to be all-natural.
All-natural stone?
Yeah.
Not concrete, big stone?
No, no, no.
All-natural stone?
No, no.
You mentioned the lights also. I noticed, I just saw two lights above the garage door. Will there be other lights on the structure you're intending?
There will be one other light. If there, there's a, there's a door, an entrance door.
Yes.
Facing the house, which is right here. There'll be a light under this, like a recess light.
Under the essentially small?
Yeah, there's like a low overhang. And then there will be some recess lights underneath this little porch that we have down here.
Okay, understood. The two garages that are now in the, in the home, any intention of converting those to dwelling space?
No. No, no, no intention. Those will remain garages.
Okay. Also, Mr. Rucci, you mentioned some minor planting, given the installation you're intending. I did not notice a landscaping plan.
Yeah, we don't, sorry, we don't have a landscape designer on board yet. We're showing some sort of generic landscaping in this rendering, where we would definitely want to landscape the walls. But we don't have, we don't have an actual planting plan yet.
Would the, if the commission decides to approve this as a condition, would the applicant be agreeable to having to submit an, a landscaping plan to Ms. Carey for her review and approval?
I'm sure, yes.
Yes.
That would be fine.
That would be fine.
Fine, okay.
Yeah, we're going, we're going to definitely do one, just we don't have it done yet.
As part, and finally, final question, thank you for indulging me. The, the construction of this in itself, are there any potential runoff or other issues of, you know, where piles, because you're doing a fair amount of excavation and building up runoff elsewhere? You also, you're also bordering a graveyard. Certainly, we want to ensure that's protected, since they really can't speak for themselves.
I did notice them.
Excuse me?
I did send them a notice.
I noticed that. It's in the town hall. Did anyone reply?
Someone did reply.
Okay, well, topic for another day. But you checked the notice box. I will vouch for that. But certainly, we want to ensure that neighbors, including those who can't speak for themselves, are, their needs are addressed. If you could speak to how that might be managed.
That's a probably stormwater question for Wayne, if he's still out there.
Yes. Yes, we are showing, you know, a stockpile area and erosion controls across the lower portion of the, the property, as you can see on the site plan. To the, again, I guess that would be to the, to the west of the retention, there's a silt fence, and, and we do have, you have erosion controls planned and a tracking pad in place or proposed.
Yeah. Would you be so kind to show us the location for your mechanical equipment, emergency generator, anything that?
Do we have a generator?
Produces noise?
You have an existing generator.
There's an existing generator.
There's an existing generator, which is right over behind the garage, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's actually, no, it's not. It's, it's behind this, right?
It's actually on the, it's, it's there.
There it is.
Yeah. Sorry, so there's a gener, an existing generator right here, which we would utilize. And then the, the, there's no, the pool, the pool equipment's already there and pretty well screened, because the pool is existing.
Okay. Well, how are you going to condition the garage?
We would condition it with a, a, like a ductless mini-split system that would, that would mount on the wall and have a, a small condenser, like on the outside of the house.
Thank you.
I had one follow-up, Dan. So just wanted to understand what you're asking for from a special permit numbers perspective? If you could humor me for a moment. So what I understand is that you have the total building coverage, you basically want 557 beyond the building coverage, is that right?
553 square feet, correct.
553, thank you, okay. I was looking at the coverage areas, and it, were you excluding the covered porches from building coverage? Because I think if the covered porches are less than 36 inches off the ground, they're excluded from coverage?
Yeah, if you look at the, if you look at the hatched area, excludes that, the covered porch. If you look at this, we excluded, sorry, we excluded this area right here, this covered porch here. So we just counted the, the finished area, because that, the covered porch doesn't count, because it's less than 10 feet.
Yeah, it just seems like you're very close. I wasn't sure. So your, your covered porch and your front entry are both off of the coverage?
Yes.
Okay. And then, do you have a number for permeable versus impermeable for the site? Because you're adding a, just want to understand and be conscientious of the coverage on the lane.
I don't, I don't have that handy, no. We do not have that. Would Wayne have that, or no?
He might.
I thought I saw it in the drainage analysis.
I could, yeah. It does, it does break down everything in the drainage report. It didn't, I didn't total up everything, but there is approximately a, approximately a 3,000-square-foot increase in impervious surface overall.
And with the drain, and obviously with the drainage policy now in New Canaan, we have to meet that, that drainage policy through their offices as well.
Correct. Yes, and we're, we're collecting from a greater area than the increase. That's correct.
Okay. And it's going to be, because you're, you're adding the driveway plus the building.
Correct.
3,000. The pool, plus or minus, will be the same. Okay. Thank you. This is my question.
Thank you. Is the, this is Chairman Radman, the paving around the pool, is that existing, or is that new, going towards this new impervious number?
That's existing.
That's all existing?
Yeah, that's existing. That's the existing layout of the, of the patio.
Okay.
Will the, I, sorry, Dan, I, if I can follow, will the, the new driveway be a gravel driveway, or would that be macadam impervious?
We haven't made a determination yet.
Okay, thank you.
I would like it to be gravel.
Is the existing driveway paved?
It is.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioners, anything further? Mr. Rucci, any further comment?
No, thank you.
Do we have anyone from the public that would like to speak on this application? None in the room? None on Zoom? Okay, all right, this application's closed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, could I just make one comment? And just to recognize Jean Grislecky, who passed away last week, and I just wanted to, you know, just wanted to say something on the record. She was like a very special person, I thought, for this commission. She just did a, you know, this is known as like the hardest-working commission in town, and it's mostly because of people like her, who would volunteer for everything, she'd always be prepared for everything. I remember her on being in all these certain subcommittees, and nobody wanted to do that job, and she always did it. And we have people like that now. I mean, don't get me wrong, she was a part of this regulation, she did a lot of ADU work, she was there all the time for the 2006 zoning regulations, and I just think that, you know, I just wanted to recognize her. I really appreciated all the work that she helped me with. When I was a young attorney, she would ask me tough questions, but she always, you know, kind of gave me a little smirk and smile. And I loved watching her on the board when someone said something, even a commission member, and she just sort of gave a look. So anyway, I just wanted to say that before I, I got off. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you. She will be missed. Next item on the agenda, 824 review. These two go together, obviously, number two and three. Tiger Mann, Director of Public Works, for the installation of a new entrance sign for the New Canaan High School for property at Waveney Zone, at, in the Waveney Zone at 11 Farm Road, map 31, block 51, lot 988. And then the second part of it is 11 Farm Road, formal application upon application of Tiger Mann, Director of Public Works, authorized agent for New Canaan, for Town and New Canaan, owner, for a site, sign, site plan approval of sections 5.1 Point E, Point 1, and 5.1 Point F, to allow a new entrance sign to be constructed for the property in the Waveney Zone at 11 Farm Road, block, map 31, block 51, lot 988. Mr. Man?
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for having a special meeting. We appreciate the, allowing us to come forward. Thank you very much, thank you very much for having a special meeting, we appreciate the, allowing us to come forward. I'm joined at the table by Ann Wagner and Sarah Rada, right, Sarah Rada, got it. And behind me is Heather Bullinger and Bill Egan, Principal of the school. The ladies are from the New Canaan High School PFA. So it's going to be a joint presentation for us, I'll take the 824, then they can take the sign, site application. So, 8-24 review and report, as you're aware, no municipal improvements, no municipal agency or legislative body shall substantially improve municipally-owned property until the proposal to take such action has been referred to the commission for a report. We're looking to, in essence, install a, a new sign at the entrance to the high school at Farm Road. The existing sign was installed in 1998 as a gift from the, that class. The sign itself will be, will help clearly identify vehicles that are traveling in both directions to the high school's entrance at present. Cars sometimes tend to travel back and forth and not necessarily understand where the, that the, that the high school is right there. It'll be constructed of block letters attached to a low stone wall that'll be arched to follow the lines of the entrance drive, and the architectural cast metal letters will be the same font and style as the sign that's affixed to the northern elevation of the high school. We came for that application a year, two ago, I'm not quite certain. The, but as far as what portions of the P O C D that this rests under, I would say it's section five, enhanced livability, provide appropriate facilities and services, A, maintain excellence in our educational programs and facilities, and B, maintain excellence in our community facilities and services. I don't know if the commission has any questions on this portion of the application?
Any questions, commissioners, on the 824 portion? Nope, I think we're good.
Okay.
You tell, sorry, from like a, from an entity that uses it. Okay, can you just speak to, because it's basically where the other sign is and it's.
It'll be right on top of the other, yeah, we're going to remove the existing sign and place the new sign right there, it'll just be a little bit longer, not, not necessarily as tall, but a little bit longer. And then we are looking to possibly relocate that existing sign if we're able to take it down and preserve it while, you know, being removed. It's a basically large slab, if we can do that, we'll find another area on the campus to, to utilize it, since it was a gift from the class of 98, we don't want to, you know.
Bring it to Lou's house.
Excuse me?
Bring it to Lou's house.
Thank you, but I just wanted to.
Absolutely no problem. The, should we go on to the next?
Yeah, we'll show it.
Okay.
Anyone else have, commissioners, any further questions on the 824 portion?
All right, so. Ann, you want to?
I'm just thinking if this works, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. Hello again, I'm Ann Wagner, I'm one of the PFA co-presidents along with Sarah Rada, as Tiger said, and Heather Bullinger is our VP for Gibson Grants. So together, we've been working on this project along with Bill Egan. So I'm going to break out our presentation into three short sections for you, the first being a little bit why we're here, the second would be what we're proposing, and then the third will focus on how we will make this happen. As first mentions, as first mentioned, we are here to address the front sign of the New Canaan High School. You probably have driven past the current campus entrance sign hundreds of times and not really noticed it. This granite slab, as Tiger said, was a gift from the class of 1998, and that's the image on the right in this slide. It was replacement for the previous sign, which was made of carved wood, and that is in the first image of this slide. Oh, I'm sorry, sure. When the granite slab sign was installed, it was a welcome, a welcome change, no doubt, after the wooden sign, 26, did now have this sign put in in 1998. But at this point, it is now proportionally too small for this location, it's difficult to read from the road. Oh, can you go to the next slide, please? There we go. So if you look on the first image in this slide, that was what I was just mentioning, at this point, it's proportionally too small for the site, it's difficult to read, and if you look in the third slide, you'll notice that there's some corrosion occurring, and that's at the back of the current sign. So with that, just to close this first section, we're very proud of our town and our schools, and we would like a sign that reflects that sentiment. So now, what are we proposing? So we've been working, the four of us have been working closely together, along with Tiger, and we've also been working with Diane Starr, a professional landscape designer with experience in other district projects. As I mentioned, our goal was to design an entrance sign that reflects the character of our town and the excellence of our public schools. We also wanted it to be low maintenance and able to stand the test of time, we think we've achieved it with this design. It was actually inspired by the new New Canaan Library sign that sits at South and.
Maple.
Maple, thank you. The proposed new entrance sign will measure three and a half feet high by 20 feet long by two feet thick, and will be built in a gentle curve of Connecticut, excuse me, of stacked Connecticut stone. It will feature 10-inch-high architectural metal letters in a font that matches the existing lettering on the school building, and it will be lit by five inconspicuous landscape uplights for nighttime visibility. When completed, our hope is that this new entrance sign will serve as a daily reminder of the pride we feel in our school and our community, and it will be a lasting tribute to our New Canaan High School education. So moving on to our third and final section, how will we bring this to life? Thanks to the success of our annual appeal fundraising efforts and the generous giving community the past several years, we're excited this project is already fully funded and will be a gift from the PFA to the district with no additional funding. The estimated cost is about $30,000, that includes the photorealistic rendering, project manager fee, the relocation of the old sign, construction of the new sign, and the lights themselves, and the architectural metal letters and that installation. So at this point, I wanted to update you on where we all are in the process. The Board of Education has supported this project, we have received Town Council's approval. So with your approval, we will be able to return as an action item to the BOE and formally present this signed donation to the district. The landscape architect feels confident that we can break ground in early May and have the entrance sign built in time for graduation, which would no doubt allow for wonderful graduation pictures this year and also for decades to come. So that concludes my comments, but we'll also, we'll be taking questions. So thank you for allowing us to share our proposal, and we're happy to take any questions.
Mr. Chairman, a few questions if I may.
Go ahead.
First, on the lighting, will there be any timing regarding when they will go on, go off, such, if you could share?
Yes, yeah. Sarah, go ahead.
They'll be tied into the existing.
You're already.
Come up here.
Step up the mic.
They'll be tied into the existing.
Sorry, say your name.
Oh, Heather Bullinger.
Thank you.
They'll be tied into the existing lighting that is in the parking lot, so they, it would be presumed that they would go on the same timers that the parking lot is on as well, and those are not on all night.
No, they're not.
They're not.
What was, what are the timers now for the parking lot?
We don't know.
What's the exact time? Did you ask?
Yeah.
I think it's dusk, so when it gets dark, sorry.
Bill Egan, high school principal, at dusk.
Turns on at dusk?
Yes.
What time does it turn off?
I don't know the exact time it went off.
We can find out.
We can find out, yeah.
Well, also, if the commission had a sense as to how late you would like it, we can certainly turn them off at that time as well, if there was a condition.
Okay. Will there be any landscaping you're planning around it foliage?
So at the moment, Sarah Rada, at the moment, the existing sign has a border of mulch around it, and we're hoping to do that with the new sign as well. We don't have plans to actually put in any plantings. There are some existing seasonal bulbs at that location, and if we can preserve them, we'll keep them and we'll replant them when the, when the new sign is built. But that's, that's as far as we have right now.
There's also no irrigation at that site.
Excuse me?
There's no irrigation at that site.
I would assume you have, you're going to have to put footings in.
That's correct.
Yes.
And will the footings be proud of the soil level?
No.
Or?
They'll be, they'll be beneath, just beneath the soil level, so you won't be able to see the footings.
And to confirm, all stone visible will be natural stone.
Correct. Natural stacked without concrete joints.
Right. It should be noted as well that the existing sign does have uplighting, it just isn't functional at present.
Those are my questions, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So Commissioner Turner, excuse me, I have a question about the color, you, I believe you said it was anodized aluminum? So it's kind of a gray silver?
It says silver, it, it will match what's on the building right now.
Okay. My, the reason I bring this up is that, you know, it's very important that signage has a contrast, and have you considered maybe white or off-white or something a little different, so that there is more of a contrast? With the stone, it, there's a lot of gray in that, a lot of silver, and it's going to tend to, you know, at certain times of day, it's, it's not as contrasting as it could be, and it's just something to think about.
Sure, and we drew inspiration from the sign that the library put in at the corner of South and Maple, and I believe those are silver anodized metal letters. We haven't gone to inspect them up close, but they do seem to stand out pretty, pretty well as you're driving past. That's our hope with these, that they would look very similar. And I, we actually have a picture of the library sign.
The stone's going to be very similar too, right?
That is our plan, yeah, to, to match that. I'm sure you've driven past.
Yeah, it's a little heavier font as far as.
It is, it is a little bit heavier.
Commissioner Chris, I would agree with Commissioner Turner that, you know, when you're driving around the library, you're not driving all that fast. It's different on Farm Road particularly, and so the, the visibility issue may be something to think about, I have no particular opinion, but something.
Well, there, it's a multiple stops, right, there at that location, so the cars are physically stopped. We can show you on, when you look at the site plan.
Three ways, four-way stop.
Right, so cars have stopped at that location, so they are going fairly slow, and as you come up Farm Road, you'll see it right there, you can't, you can't miss it, and there's a little bit of an elevation, so your, your sightline will be right looking at the sign. So hopefully, that really would help with visibility issues.
Thank you.
Was there any, any concern or interest given in doing a two-sided signs? Because right now, your sign is facing the intersection of people going westbound on Farm Road, but if you're coming eastbound from 106, you don't really see the sign until you're on top of it. Not, not that you're going to miss the high school, but.
Right, so the sign is curved, it will have a curvature to it to follow the curb line, so as you're coming up, you will see it on your right.
Yeah, I'm looking at your site plan, you're really not going to see the sign, the letters of the sign until you're right at that intersection, so. Might be something to consider.
Right. It's definitely more visible than what we have there.
No, no doubt.
What we have there now, for sure. Yeah, I mean, without, without building a giant scale model, it's, it's hard for us to say precisely how visible it would or would not be, but when we've driven past and we've tried to visualize where this new sign will be, we think it, it is quite visible.
By the way, it is a very nice-looking sign.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would also just caution you to evaluate the lighting, if the light fixtures you're proposing are fairly focused. So at night, you're going to end up with really scalloped-looking lighting instead of just a uniform light, and they're not very wide beam spread, so maybe a different light or a different beam spread or something, because the letters, you know, they're going to be metal, right, they're going to be dimensional. You also don't want it to create shadows behind the letters, because it'll all look a little funny.
Right, and the letters will be stud-mounted with a half-inch offset, so they'll be fairly close to the stones, so we're hoping there wouldn't be a lot of shadow, but that's, it's a good point.
Are they, how thick are the letters supposed to be?
They're about, I think it was like a half, one and a half inch deep. For some reason, I'm unable to change your slides here. Yeah, they're one and a half inch deep.
One and a half.
Yeah.
We can certainly look at other options, we're working with the school electrician at present. It's because they'll be the ones actually doing that portion of the installation for us, but we can certainly look at, to make sure that, to your point, that we've got.
That just means moving the lights a little further away, just so you get the coverage you're looking for.
That's a great, you know, no, it's a very good idea, we appreciate that.
The lights are low voltage?
I believe. There are some voltage specifications on the lighting page.
They are low voltage, yeah.
Yeah, good. And we're meeting with Scott Olson, who works for the district, and we'll do a walk-around with him, and he is also, is, I believe, an electrician?
He is, he's a licensed electrician.
So he's consulting with us on this.
Can we also please request that the lighting, the color temperature of the lights is either 2,700 or 3,000?
Absolutely.
Not cooler?
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioners, anything further?
Quick, quick question, Tiger, I assume you've thought of this already, but we haven't had a good snowstorm for 10 years, but is there any snowplow or traffic implication to any of this?
No, this is actually approximately about 45 feet from the edge of the road.
So if we're casting snow that far, I've got a bigger problem, to be honest with you.
Tiger, just one follow-up question on Dan's on the lighting, so I know with the rest of the parking lots, they're all cast-down lighting, so the dark skies, so the spots up kind of counter that notion. So I know that the library lighting is actually backlit on the lights that, backlit on the letters, so it's out, it's not necessarily up. And there's also some options, I was just looking at the, you know, W A C brand, they sometimes cast them down from the top of the, you know, if the, there's a flagstone on top, then maybe the flagstone's carved out from underneath and there's a downlit behind, it's just a little more subtle.
We looked at several different options, and our feeling is that we're going to ensure that the, that top edge of the wall light wouldn't cast above that, so we wouldn't be sending anything into the sky, per se. We did look at lighting that would then, downlighting, because that was one, I said that would be one of the concerns from the commission. The feeling is if we, if we do modest uplighting and we ensure that it stays at that upper range, that we'll stay, you know, that'll illuminate what we want to illuminate and not anything else.
The proper shrouds and all that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, anything further? Mr. Engel?
I've been looking at the signs of our rivals around Fairfield County, and this is the best-looking sign of any high school sign, so. Good job, thank you, congratulations.
I have to ask, what happened to the Rams? The Ram?
The Ram?
From the old sign? No Ram on this sign?
Oh.
Oh.
We, we did not.
I think, I think Ramsey is represented, is that Ramsey, right? I think.
Randy the Ram.
Randy.
Randy the Ram, I think that it's represented nicely throughout the school.
There's, there's also very many iterations of the Ram, and we wanted to do something that would remain timeless, even if the Ram itself changed.
Right.
Well, that's not going to happen.
But if you look around.
Yeah.
But if you look around the school, we have different versions of it.
Yeah, that's true.
Anything further, commissioners? I think we're good, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, do we have to hear public comments on this one?
That wasn't a public hearing item, if you can vote on that in the next nine minutes, you can do so.
For both of them?
Yeah, just not, not Frog Town, because that's a public hearing item, so that would have to go on the next agenda.
The Frog Town will push to the next meeting agenda?
Not, not the next meeting, you just vote later this evening, because we don't have an agenda item on this, to vote on a public hearing.
Sorry, I'm not following.
So you could, right now, in the next nine minutes, you can vote on the sign application.
Right.
Frog Town, we have to wait until the seven o'clock meeting. Frog Town, we have to wait until the seven o'clock meeting, based on how the agenda was written.
Okay. Okay then. Well, let's vote then. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion if I may.
Yeah, hold on.
So just to clarify, it's two separate approvals. First, the 824, that it's consistent with the P O C D, not that you're approving it.
Yep.
And then.
The second one. Sorry, Mr. Nag, you got a question?
No, I was just making a motion, but I'll yield to.
Oh. So first is the 824 section, um, 824 review. Do I have a motion?
This is Commissioner Chris. I move we affirm on the 824 review that is consistent with the plan of conservation development.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Turner, second. The call to vote. Dan Radman, I vote yes. Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Everyone turn your mics on. Uh, Kent Turner?
Yes.
Art Casavant?
Yes.
John Criss?
Yes.
Chris Herring?
Yes.
John Engel?
Yes.
Paul Nag?
Yes.
Tom Benton?
Yes.
Christina Larson?
Too many people, no?
What?
Who, who is seated for that?
You, you got a couple extra in there.
Oh, we have an extra one in there. Sorry. Um, start at the top. Tom Benton will be seated for that one, so, sorry Christina. So Tom voted yes on that one as well. That rounds out the nine. Okay. That passes. Second part is, yeah, item number three, Levin Farm Road. This is for the actual site, site, sign, site plan approval of the design. Do I have a motion on this one?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded.
I call to vote. Uh, Dan Radman, I vote yes. Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Kent Turner?
Yes.
Art Casavant?
Yes.
John Criss?
Yes.
Chris Herring?
Yes.
John Engel?
Yes.
Paul Nag?
Yes.
And Tom Benton?
Yes.
Thank you. Passed. Thanks very much. Eight minutes. Take a break everyone if you want before seven o'clock.
Are you joining? Are you joining the special meeting?
This, yeah, the special meeting's adjourned. Get this shot in the road. Uh, welcome everyone. This is the Town of New Canaan Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting, Tuesday, March 26th, 2024, seven o'clock. We have a, a couple of, uh, applications in, that are continued from previous presentations. We'll get into those shortly. I'll just call, do roll call for this meeting. Does anyone, um, Swerdlow isn't on Zoom, is he?
No Swerdlow or Knowles on Zoom.
Okay. Dan Radman here. Krista Nielsen?
Here.
Kent Turner?
Here.
Art Casavant?
Here.
John Criss?
Here.
Chris Herring?
Here.
John Engel? Paul Nag?
Here.
Tom Benton?
Here.
And Christina Larson?
Here.
And, uh, were Tom or Christina seated for either of these two applications previously?
Um, Commissioner Larson has been seated for St. Luke's.
Okay.
And then for Down River, I, I don't believe either had been seated.
Were either of you, you were not? Christina, were you on the Down River Road application?
No.
You not? Okay. So Christina, you'll, you'll be seated for the St. Luke's, uh, but Tom, you won't be seated for either. Okay. So first item of business, uh, this is a continued application for six Down River Road. Uh, upon application of Cypress Group LLC owner for a special permit approval pursuant to sections or section 3.2.1.1. B. To allow for detached two-family in the B residence zone at six Down River Road, map N block 82, lot M2. Mr. Rucci?
Hi, good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, you can turn off your.
David Rucci, um, I'm just here to help, um, out with this, um, particular application for Joe Bavona. He'd actually called me, um, a while back to, um, get involved and we'd been talking about this as things had gone on. And, um, you know, it just came to a point where there was just some things that needed to sort of be cleaned up. And it's hard to, you know, bring these applications, make sure and you have everything, uh, put together. And so I'm just, um, here this evening, I, I reviewed all the, um, the recordings. Um, and, um, but if I've missed certain things, it was hard to hear last month's hearing, uh, actually. So I may have missed some of the questions. But, um, my understanding, uh, moving forward, this application's been here a couple of times. And we're just trying to really resolve some of the, um, discrepancies that were in the architectural plan, the site plan, uh, the landscape plan and the engineering plan. And, um, what I've given you all today, uh, up there, and we can start going through it, are, are, that these plans do in fact now match. And then going to some of the other questions that the commission had, and once again, I'm pulling them off the, the video here. There was, uh, Mr. Radman had brought up a question about the parking in the rear of the, of the property. Uh, that has also been addressed now. Um, Hammerhead has been brought a little smaller. And we've taken out one of the spots in the back and just moved one of the spots behind that front building. Um, I know that there was a question, um, I think it was from Mr. Swerdlow, others may have chimed in on as well, about, um, trying to do a curb cut on Main Street. And if you, uh, we went to Maria Copta with that. And, you know, in the nicest way possible, she said she would rather not see that. If you read her letter, um, she, you know, essentially saying, I really don't wanna see more impervious service. I don't wanna see another curb cut on Main Street. I think it would be difficult to, you know, you'd have to then prove that you're going to ha- how to back out into Main Street. And, you know, it, she wasn't saying it's an absolute no, but if you read her letter, she certainly, um, was more in favor of the curb cut remaining on Deep River. And that's, um, on one of the, um, uh, slides that you have there. Thank you. It's up on there. The other issue was, um, the easement that Mr. Casavant brought up, um, getting that executed. That was in fact executed, the easement, and we are allowing for the property to have, um, access and to essentially encroach onto our particular piece of property. There was a question also about the architectural plans and whether or not there was sort of a bump out on one of the, um, on sort of the, the facade of it. And we have a note just kind of on the very front of that first page that I gave you, which just essentially says it's not a bump out at, um, at all. It just is kind of flat against the, the building. It's just sort of a design issue, uh, design, um, comment. It's not necessarily something that sticks out, um, further. You know, we believe in general that the, that this application in and of itself with separating these buildings and making them two families that are, that are separated units. It certainly, um, works well with this particular site and the way the topography kind of slopes down onto this site. And it fits in, I think, a little bit, a lot better with this neighborhood, which sort of looks like, you know, they have more smaller houses along the street. And it looks like you just have smaller houses on the street rather than one large, um, two-family house, uh, with the garages in the front. Which almost seems a little bit more out of place than, than these would. And I think it was a good design and a good use of the, of the, uh, regulation for the separated units in this particular case. That's sort of what I gleaned from the last couple of meetings. I'm not sure if there's any other questions that came up that haven't been addressed or by what we've submitted today. We did have a third set of eyes on these. We had Sarah, hopefully, uh, the town planner was nice enough to take another look at it. To confirm that all our, our numbers and all our setbacks were, were accurate and, and matched with each other. I think there, we, we discovered like a two-inch issue with, with the survey and the architectural plans. It will be the architectural plans that control that particular, uh, setback, um, on the plans. But other than that, if there's any other questions, um, myself or Joe Bavona will be happy to, to answer those.
Commissioners, any questions?
Thank you for this. It's helpful. I noticed on, I guess it's your page too, you do have the landscaping plan. Is this the same plan that was submitted in the prior?
Yeah, none of the landscaping has changed. We just, uh, matched the changes to the driveway, um, on the landscaping plan with the architectural plan.
Landscaping is consistent with what we went over previously.
Okay, that's my question. Thank you.
Um, I just have one question, and I also just wanna say thank you for bearing with us.
Thank you for hearing this.
Long trip for you, but, um, I do think that this will be a better project in the long run, so I appreciate all the work you've done.
Thank you.
Um, I noticed, I don't think there's a drainage report provided with this application. Have you done a drainage report?
So, yeah, the, we do have a drainage report done.
Okay.
And I, the drainage report, I didn't add to the slide, but it was submitted with the site plan.
Did you, was a?
So drainage analysis was submitted with the original submission back in December, January. I don't believe that it's been updated to the various iterations, but that is something that would be vetted at the building permit level.
Okay. Thank you.
So Commissioner Turner, um, could you get the elevation up on the screen?
The render?
The rendering, yes. If you look at the, uh, as I'm facing the house, the lower left-hand, uh, corner window, it looks like, are those shutters? What, uh, what, what is really going on with that?
No, so that actually looks into the garage, is what it is. So you're looking at the garage door through the window.
Garage doors beyond.
Garage doors beyond, okay. So it would match the windows above it?
Yep.
Basically. Thank you.
This is Dan Radman. Um, another just comment and recommendation on that elevation. You have, where you have pairs of windows, looks like you have a casing around those windows. And they're divided, four divided lights, probably casements, um, from what's shown. But then the single windows below them, there's no casing around them and they look, they stand out very differently. So I would just ask that you make it consistent, either do it with or without.
Yeah, absolutely.
Make it look uniform.
Yeah, and I apologize. The renders are, it's tough to get the renders exact.
Understood. And then another question on the landscape plan. You do show two types of fencing proposed. I can't tell from the site plan though exactly. I'm assuming the four-foot fence, the picket fence, is what's going along Down River or on Main Street. Is that correct?
Right. And then the fence running along the driveway is a, is a different fence.
So the six-foot fence is running where?
So the six-foot fence is.
It can't be in the front.
No, I believe the six-foot fence is running along the neighbor's driveway to separate the two properties.
Oh, to the north?
Yeah. On Fort, uh, Fort Valmain.
Okay. And is, is there any fencing? Can, can that, um, Sarah, the six-foot fence, uh, it can't go all the way to the corner of Main Street, can it?
Correct. It cannot. Um, it can only be up to 25 feet.
25 feet back. So you'll have to transition from a six-foot down to a four-foot for that remaining.
Okay.
Portion as you approach Main Street.
Alright.
And then if you do that same fence on Down River Road between yourselves and the property to the east, same condition applies.
Only 25 feet with the six-foot?
With a four-foot.
Oh, four-foot in the front. Okay.
So the six-foot's in the, think of it in the back half of the property.
Alright. Absolutely.
Commissioners, anything further on this one?
This is a much better plan.
Thanks. I appreciate your assistance.
Everything we asked, you addressed.
Thank you.
From the neighbor's easement, buttoning that up.
Yeah.
The site, the, the way it looks from Main Street, which is what I brought up two months ago. Much better facade on Main Street, um, much better traffic flow, much better landscape plan. So I know it was a lot of work and I know you're aggravated to have to come back, but this is a much better plan and so we thank you.
Dan, I appreciate it. Um, it was honestly, um, it's nice that we were able to get the landscape plan done. And I, I agree, the elevation is much nicer coming up. Main Street, I think it'll be good for us as well.
I would, I just wanted to make a comment. I really appreciate the, the efficiency of the building coverage. It seems like you're, it's a very vertical building with a, a shared driveway. So the, um, impermeable coverage, given the tightness of the lot, the adjacency to the water, I think it's a thoughtful way of restricting, um, impermeable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, anything further? Mr. Rucci, do you have anything else?
I have nothing else. Joe, do you have anything else?
No, thank you guys for your time. I know this is, but I know we came forward with some, the plans were a little bit.
Glad we got it all cleaned up.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this application? No one in the room, anyone on Zoom that would like to speak to six Down River Road?
I just left the Zoom. Should I jump back in room?
No, you're fine.
Nope. Okay, this application's closed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alrighty. Uh, next is a continuation of the application for 377 North Wilton Road. Uh, this is in two parts. We have a, uh, regulation amendment and then the, uh, special permit modification. I'll read off both of them. Yeah, oh, sorry. Um, Paul Nag is leaving. He's recusing himself for this, for this meeting. Thank you. I didn't see him walk down. 377 North Wilton Road, discussion and consideration of the request of Stephen Finn, Wofsky, Rosen, Queston and Kuriansky. Authorized agent for St. Luke's Foundation Incorporated owners for a zoning regulation amendment to the New Canaan zoning regulations dated June 16th, 2007. Revised November 10th, 2023, to amend section 3.7. E. Point two. And to add section 3.7. E. Point two. Point F. Single-level parking structures primarily used for passenger vehicles constructed underneath areas that are maintained as open space or athletic fields. Where the visual impact is mitigated by site design and the surrounding topography. Second part of this, 377 North Wilton Road, upon application of Stephen A. Finn, Wofsky, Rosen, Queston and Kuriansky. Authorized agent for St. Luke's Foundation Incorporated owners for a site plan and special permit modification of sections 8.2. B. 6.4. G. And 3.7. E. Point two. Point F. To allow construction of a surface-level parking garage directly beneath an existing artificial turf football field. Which will be renovated and elevated in the four-acre zone at 377 North Wilton Road, map 40, block 105, lot 12, 90 and 135. Do we have Joel Green, Attorney Green? Would you like to start? With comments? Welcome. How are you?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission.
Sure. So, before the applica-, I just have a quick thing to read before we, uh, get going. Before we dive into the application for this, a lot of feedback, uh, for this evening. Procedural matters. First and foremost, we're planning to close the public hearing on the application this evening. This application was first opened to December 19th. And at subsequent public hearings, this commission provided an ample amount of time for the public and the intervenors to provide the commission and the applicant with comments, concerns, questions and requests relating to the proposal. The commission therefore does not intend to have any additional comment from the public this evening. The comments made at the hearing on January 30th and every letter sent to our town planner over the last few months are all incorporated into the record. Tonight, we plan to hear what revisions have been made by the applicant as a result of the meetings. I also want to acknowledge a few items that have been entered into the record but will likely not be reviewed in detail this evening. The first taxing district of Norwalk, who manages the group's reservoir, which is in close proximity to the St. Luke's campus, hired a consultant, Weston and Sampson, to evaluate the proposal as it pertains to the first taxing districts. Interests in protecting their reservoir and has requested some modifications to the proposed drainage, uh, to the proposed drainage system. A final summary letter was submitted to the town planner yesterday stating St. Luke's has addressed their requests and they have no further comments. Second, our town engineer Maria Coplet issued an updated memo that has been added into the, uh, into the record. Evaluating the edits St. Luke's made to their application, following the first taxing. following the First Taxing District's requests. Her memo states that the proposal complies with the town drainage policy. Finally, we received a memo on Friday from the intervenor's engineer Steve Trinkus, also commenting on the subsequent edits made to the plan. So before, before we hand the floor over to Attorney Finn and Attorney Green and the St. Luke's team, if the intervenor has any other information or testimony that has not already been either, already been said or submitted in writing to the town planner, you're absolutely allowed to speak and bring that up now. Again, we're limiting only the items that are not already on record, that have not been reviewed. We don't want to repeat stuff that's already been reviewed and said. Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had, for the record, Joel Green of the Law Offices of Green and Gross, representing the intervenor Sarah Pierce and also Will Pierce as, Mr. and Mrs. Pierce, as members of the public, as you're aware, they own a budding property. I had, many of my remarks this evening are really directed to the new material that was submitted by the applicant over the past two weeks. Most notably, and, and also frankly, some information that was submitted by the public. And specifically, that information relates to, first of all, the First District materials that were submitted. And there was a important information submitted regarding testing of the water in group's reservoir. And that is certainly relevant to the petition to intervene. But largely, I planned my comments in response to the documents that were submitted, including the information presented by, or filed by Mr. Kenny, information regarding the parking space reduction, and some incomplete items in the application. When we had last been before the commission, I was presenting issues of public concern by my clients regarding issues in the zoning regulations. And I believe that the chairman had asked for me to submit some bullet points, originally a list of bullet points. And after reviewing that with my client, we were actually satisfied with the state of the record in terms of the claims by the, by my client regarding the compliance. And it is our position that the application does not comply with the zoning regulations in a number of respects, but we're satisfied that the record that we need is, has been established. And as the commission is aware, the burden on a special permit is on the applicant to present the evidence that the commission needs to find that it meets the standards in the zone and standards that this commission has for a special permit. So I think that it would be, I, I think, as, as a procedural matter, I presume, as the applicant did at the Inland Wetlands hearing, that the applicant plans to present the new materials as part of its presentation this evening. And as an intervener, and I suppose as a member of the public, I would like to respond to those after they're presented by the applicant, as we did at Inland Wetlands. I mean, I can get in front of it right now and give you my comments on the new materials, but it might be better context if, I presume that the applicant is presenting its new materials that it submitted. I don't know if the Water District is appearing this evening.
The Water District is not.
Okay.
They submitted their letters and memos. They're on record. We've all seen them and read them.
So I'm happy to address some of these items in advance, but I'd also, if the applicant presents their consultants on the new materials, I might have a brief presentation on that as the intervener.
My assumption is the applicant will be presenting and reviewing the amended materials as currently submitted and to you and for the record.
Okay, so what I can do is, I'd be happy to present as to the Water District. If they're not going to be appearing, I don't know if the applicant's going to make that presentation tonight, or whether you want me to get upfront on it. I'll do what you say.
So you're saying you have comments on the Water District's letter?
I do.
Feel free.
So on the Water District's...
Are they separate from Mr. Trinkus's memo?
They are.
Okay.
And I'll, also, Mr. Trinkus is available online. I would also have him present just very briefly on that, the materials. But my comments are that the Water District, and again, in the context of the information that's in the record, and I'm referring specifically to the email that was submitted by Louise Washer, that was submitted yesterday at 12:51, that provides testing of groups, the water in group's reservoir, and shows the existence of PFAs in the water in measurable quantities. I believe that Commissioner Casman had asked that question earlier, but now that information is in the record. In terms of the submission by the Water District, first of all, procedurally, the Water District notes, and the Water District notification is in violation of the zoning regulations. Specifically, I would call the commission's attention to section 8.1 I, number 1, which provides requirements under the zoning regulations for the notification of water companies. And it says that the applicant was required to provide written notice to the water company and the Commissioner of Public Health, and it refers to, when an application, petition, request, or plan is filed with the commissioner board concerning any project and any site that is within, and in subsection B, it says, "The watershed of a water company, provided such water company or said commissioner has filed a map with the commission or the board and on the New Canaan land record showing the boundaries of the watershed." It requires that notice be made by certified mail to the Department of Public Health and to the Water Authority, not later than seven days after the date of the submission to the Planning and Zoning Office, and that the applicant shall submit to the Planning and Zoning Office or the copy of the complete package of information that was sent to the Water Authority and to the Water District, and with proof of mailing. And so that was not, I don't see that in the record. I don't see any proof of the filing. The watershed, a portion of the school property is in the watershed. That was established at the Inland Wetlands hearing. There is a requirement that the Water Authority be notified. The only way that the Water Authority found out about this is, and this is testimony that you can see in the record of the Inland Wetlands Commission hearing, is that the Water Authority was notified by Kathleen Holland.
That is incorrect. That was clarified at the Inland Wetlands Commission meeting in the recording. The applicant notified the water company. Ms. Holland did not specifically notify the First Taxing District, the applicant.
Okay, and is, I, I appreciate the, the update in the record on that, but is there any evidence in the record that staff is aware of, or certified mailing to the Water Authority?
Sure, so as was also noted at the Inland Wetlands Commission meeting and stated by Attorney McCann of the water company in answer to your question to him at the Inland Wetlands Commission meeting, they were not notified within the seven-day requirement, but they waived that and were not going to pursue anything against St. Luke's for not notifying them in a timely manner. They were notified late, but they have been able to provide their comment, and they are not pursuing anything further.
So first of all, I don't think that the regulation allows for necessarily, necessarily the waiver. I think those are matters of public record, and they were supposed to be certified mail, and the public, including my clients, would have been aware of that. What's happened as a result is we got notice of these requirements only recently. And we were aware, and this, a lot of this will overlap, but the point is that the applicant has provided water testing data to the commission. But notably, despite the testimony that we presented to Inland Wetlands and that was incorporated into the record in this file, the applicant did not test any of the water at the three points that it tested for the compounds that were identified by Dr. Tian, and indeed, they did not test those areas for PFAs. Now, the significance of that is that as a result of the applicant not complying with the notice requirements in your regulations, when I contacted York Labs, which is the same facility that the applicant used and the same facility that was used for these test results that are now in the record, that was also done by York, I was informed that we could not get test results because my clients would have tested for PFAs at those three points, now knowing that these conditions exist and also that this was being looked at with, by the Water Authority. Therefore, we only found out about it recently, that this was all occurring, and we were prejudiced by the lack of notice. And there is no provision in the zoning regulations that says that the Water Authority can waive a provision of your zoning regulations. Also, and as Ms. Carey can...
Mr. Green?
Yeah.
What is the intent of that notification?
The intent is, certainly, the intent is to provide notice to the Water Authority if they wish to comment.
And the intent of that is to, to garner their review, testing, and comment on whatever the application might be, correct?
Absolutely.
And do we have that?
We have it.
Thank you.
But, but, but as a result of it not being filed in accordance with your regulations, the public, and indeed my client as an intervener, was denied an opportunity to respond effectively to the water company comments.
Isn't that what you're doing now?
Yeah, but I couldn't get testing done because York could not get PFA testing done on a timely basis for this hearing, and I certainly couldn't have submitted those results. And I would also note that the applicant, once again, did not test for PFAs at the points. So it provided testing to the commission in the last week, and it tested at three points and tested only for metals and didn't test for PFAs. And once again, we don't have the opportunity to effectively rebut that as a result. And some of those test results have been available for three and four weeks, but they were only filed in the last week. So that's the only reason I raise it.
Okay. Mr. Green, but didn't the Water Authority, in their response letter, say that they want to test the material being put on the field, the new field, for the PFAs?
They do.
Okay, so if we're making sure that we're not adding any new PFAs to the water source, is that not enough? You, you want to make sure there's no existing PFAs?
I want to be sure that there's no existing PFAs, and certainly, everyone who owns properties, all these butters, are deeply concerned about their wells. The well data that was submitted was only submitted recently, and I think in the last week.
Even though the field's been there for 20 years?
Yeah, but there are consequences to the removal of the field, as we discussed when we were before the commission. In other words, a lot of those fibers are friable, so even removing the field, excavating materials that might be in the ground, we don't have calculations on any of that.
Weren't there conditions from the Water Authority on, on the removal of the material as well?
So some of the conditions, I thought, did not go, we didn't think that they went as far as they might have. But the point is, we didn't have time to, to reach out to consultants and get responses on all that. And that's why I raised the timing issue. I don't know if you want me to respond on some of the, you have received letters from, and again, I, I don't want to just casually mention the concern of the public about their wells on abutting property owners with everything happening on the site.
We're fully aware of the concern of the public on the wells.
Fair enough, and I don't, I don't want to take up...
We don't want to repeat what's already been submitted in writing to the commission.
Fair enough. I would submit that many of the letters, and you received a number of letters this week from both in favor and, well, mostly in, overwhelmingly in opposition, but there were a few letters. I note that, I think, all of the letters in support were from individuals who also committed, who also contributed to the capital campaign of the school. And I, and none of them are abutting neighbors, such as the interveners. In terms of the parking space reduction, do you want me to address that now or after the applicant?
No, you can address it now.
So as you can see, and to the frustration of my clients, for example, we identified the fact that the parking spaces in the proposed garage were not compliant with your regulations, and of course, and I, I hate to keep beating this drum, and I do it all the time, but these public hearings turn into kind of workshops on allowing the applicant to sort of tune up their application, which is why, frankly, another reason why my client didn't want to get so much into the zoning regulations and identify them, because there are a number of areas in which the plan doesn't comply with the regulations. But if we reveal them, then the applicant is simply going to amend their plan again. But now they have revised the parking structure in terms of how the parking spaces are laid out to try to make them compliant. They have reduced the number of spaces down to 177 spaces. They have not made what we would review, would view as meaningful changes to it, however, and they, even with 177 spaces, the whole point, I suppose, is to allow more students to be able to drive onto the site. The applicant speaks to, using this to improve the queuing into the site, but the reality is that the applicant doesn't need a parking garage to do that. The applicant could, for example, widen their drive into the site, create additional queuing in the driveway by making extra lanes coming in, for example, in the morning, and manage that. The reality is, this will produce more drivers coming to school, and I think Mr. Finn spoke about, or someone, I don't know whether it was Mr. Finn or Mr. Ross, I've talked about their junior wanting to drive to school. So it just means more students will be driving to school, and it's just increasing capacity. And we also, there are assumptions made in terms of the number of trips. Well, while they said, oh, parents will have to come and go, won't have to come and go twice a day, and so four trips will turn into two if students can drive, but there's no guidance on students, and nothing that was represented on student trips, students leaving the site in the middle of the day, coming back for athletic practice. So I'm not sure that the school meaningfully addressed a lot of these engineering issues. I would point out to the commission that the, by adding, and sort of this 177 drivers now, and enabling, for example, junior 16-year-old drivers to drive to school, it's interesting that no one has addressed that the driveway into the site crosses the walkway that leads to this central queuing area. So everyone coming and going out of that site, and that's 16- and 17-year-old drivers for the most part, are going to be crossing a crosswalk that leads from the main entrance of the school to the queuing area. And that should be, I mean, that's, that is, I think, an invitation for significant problems on the site, and yet, that hasn't been addressed. Now, I assume we will hear from the school on rebuttal, and I'm sure Mr. Finn will address it. My other comments are largely going to be directed to the consultants. So I may, I'm going to keep that very short, and I really don't want to take up a lot of the commission's time. You've been very patient, and my clients and I appreciate it. I would like Mr. Trinkus to just comment briefly on the new material, including what SMRT has come up with on addressing the Water Authority comments. But again, just very briefly, he'll highlight the comments in his report.
Good evening, commission members. Steve Trinkus, for the record. I'm a professional engineer with an office in South... Steve Trinkus, for the record, I'm a professional engineer with an office in Southbury, Connecticut. I reviewed both the Weston and Sampson, multiple letters, and the applicant's response. Weston Sampson, on behalf of this First Taxing District, you know, asked them to put in an isolator row on the stormwater system, which is smaller, which is taking the runoff from the parking area under the turf field. However, the design of the isolator row is not the way it's supposed to be. Isolator rows are only designed to accept the water from the water quality volume. When you have all the flows going into it, you basically will prevent the settlement of suspended solids and some metals and hydrocarbons in the system. As proposed, all of the runoff will be going through the isolator row, which pretty much negates its pollutant reduction. Additionally, they proposed a hooded outlet in a manhole. A manhole has no sump below the bottom of the pipes, only catch basins do, so you can't put a hooded outlet on a manhole because the hood would basically not be able to go below the bottom of the pipe where the flow line is. So the hooded outlet basically is a dysfunctional modification to the design, and we're still at the same point where water quality is not being addressed from that runoff. Additionally, the larger system on the other side of the turf field, again, where it takes runoff from the turf field, is still not being treated. So we're still going to have increased pollutant loads, as we've heard from, you know, the prior meetings. Thank you.
I don't know if the commission has any questions for Mr. Trinkus.
I have just one question.
Mr. Michael?
I have one question, Mr. Trinkus.
Yeah.
At an earlier meeting, your recommendation was to have Weston and Sampson do the soil evaluation and testing. Is that correct?
Well, I, the, it's really, the burden is on the applicant to do the soil testing for the stormwater man-.
No, I understand, I understand. I understand that, but I believe your specific recommendation at one of the earlier meetings was recommending Weston and Sampson to do the soil testing and evaluation, correct?
I don't, I do not recall saying that, but I wouldn't have an objection to it.
That's fine. That's all I have.
Was that in the context of having them evaluate the, the quality of the soil that was to be excavated in the area of the garage? Or was it, I don't follow the chairs, maybe you could elaborate on the passage that you're referring to.
I'd have to go back to the, the previous minutes, but I believe Mr. Trinkus specifically said he would recommend that a soil engineer evaluate the potential impact of the construction, the contaminants, and how the filtration system was going to work, and he recommended Sampson and Weston, as a reputable firm in Connecticut, to go to.
100%.
Yeah.
And I think, I think that, and Mr. Trinkus, you can comment on that, our point was that there was inadequate soil testing.
I understand.
And it would be, I think they're a very reputable firm, and I'd be happy to have them do the soil testing necessary to understand the areas, the, once again, the amount of soil that needs to be excavated, and, and test areas where the subsurface stormwater drainage system is going to be, so that we can understand.
So First Taxing District, they hired Weston and Sampson, or Sampson and Weston? Weston and Sampson?
Weston and Sampson, they did.
Okay.
And, and I wish the school had, and they, but their task was to review the impacts on the watershed.
Mm-hmm.
Not to assess the quality of the soils that are going to be excavated under the field. And I will tell you-
Yeah, I don't, I don't think they were tasked with that at all. I think their specific task, which is what we were referring to in the earlier meeting, was to evaluate the impact of the proposed project on the watershed and the quality of the water.
Correct, correct.
Which, if I'm correct, is your primary concern as an intervener-
As an intervener, yes.
What is going to happen to the watershed water quality.
Correct.
Okay.
However-
Just making it clear.
And just so the record is clear, Weston and Sampson did not have the results that we now have regarding PFAs and groups reservoir, and Weston and Sampson admitted at the Inland Wetlands Commission hearing, their, I'm sorry, the water, the Water Taxing District's attorney, and Ms. Carey can confirm this, indicated that they, that they did not consider the materials that we had submitted to this commission or to the Inland Wetlands Commission in their evaluation.
Okay.
So, at this point, I will-
If I, Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Trinkus on his submission.
Sure.
If I may. I'm looking at two documents for the record. One is a letter from a Melissa Flynn with SMRT, she is an engineer, and in response to that, there was a letter from Mr. Trinkus dated the 22nd of March, the first letter was dated, excuse me, the 18th of March, for the record. And on page two, it states the following, this is in the middle, under the 18 March 24 SMRT response, it says, it's about runoff. It says, "This travel path of the runoff perends through the geotextile backing and the shock pad," we'll get to those terms soon, "will act as a filter and prevent small particles from the infill or grass blades from," it's grass blades from the fake grass, as I understand it, "from entering gutter, the gutter, and therefore, small particles from the turf or infill will not migrate to the subsurface storage system." I put a question mark next to that, I really couldn't figure out exactly why that's the case, since it wasn't stated exactly why that's the case, and why a geotextile backing and shock pad are working as filters. Also, the term "small particles" begs the question of, well, how small is small? It's like, how long is a piece of string? So, then, I read Mr. Trinkus's note, which is on the beginning of page two. He, Mr. Trinkus says, "According to detail on the site plan, there's a shock slash drainage layer under the turf layer, but no information has been provided about this layer," which was my question. "Will rainfall go through the shock layer and follow the roof membrane to the perimeter drainage system? If so, how will runoff move between the, these two layers?" Should be layers. And on and on. So my question is, it is stated here that the, let me get the terms correctly, the geotextile backing, which I guess is below the fill-in stuff, and then there's the shock pad bottom, will act as filters, but I have no information I can evaluate on how they act as filters, and if so, how good a filter they are. And so I'm a bit confused, and I would welcome any clarification from anyone in the room who could have on this.
If I could just comment briefly on that, and I would turn it over to Mr. Trinkus then. But this came up at Inland Wetlands as well. And if you look in the submission, and I'm not positive which page, I want to say, there's detail on the turf, how the turf is composed. They show existing and they show proposed. The applicant shows existing and they show proposed. And I went over this with Mr. Trinkus. As it is proposed for the, this proposed new field, there is a, this shock pad, which, at the Inland Wetlands hearing, the applicant's consultant testified is 18 millimeters thick. Above that is a material that is a membrane to which the grass fibers are fastened, apparently. And then there's, I think, two inches of, two inches of infill material, and that sits on concrete. So it's concrete, 18 millimeters of, I guess, porous, that, and I'm sure the applicant will fill this in, but, and then, a couple of inches of infill material, and that's it. Interestingly, in the submission, there's also existing turf field cross-section, and it shows the fibers, that mat that holds the grass fibers, and the infill materials in between the grass fibers. It shows a pad, some sort of membrane under that, and then there's four inches of stone. So when the field is located on grade and on the ground, there's four inches of stone that receive the water that trickles through. Mr. Trinkus, do I have that right?
Yes, you do, Attorney Green.
Do you want to expand on, respond to the question by Mr. Trinkus?
Yeah.
With that information in the record?
Yeah, we, we, Steve Trinkus, for the record, you know, while the applicant's detail shows the three layers, as Attorney Green has explained, there is no information on the, the material. I think at Wetlands, the applicant said that the layer with the, you know, grass fibers coming up through it had an eight-inch-per-hour infiltration rate, which is, you know, pretty quick, so you have to have a lot of holes in the bottom of that for the water to get through. But not knowing what the material is, not knowing the size and pattern of the holes, you know, there's no way to evaluate what is, Commissioner asks, you know, what material will go through them and what will not go through them. I think it's also important to note that, you know, on these athletic turf fields with the crumb rubber, you know, as, you know, they're played on by, you know, football, soccer, lacrosse, you name it, you know, the, the kids are wearing spikes, and as they run through this, you know, the action of the spikes on the rubber, you know, does begin to pulverize the rubber, creating smaller and smaller particles, you know, within that base. So as you do that, you know, you're going to have more smaller particles that might migrate through. The shock pad should be kind of a rubberized surface to kind of, you know, you know, give a little bit of cushioning when you, you know, land on the turf, you know, because you've got basically a layer of concrete underneath it. But again, there's no information on what these materials are made of, and if the, if the upper layer has a permeability rate, it's, you know, and the shock layer is, you know, basically a rubber layer, then that runoff is not going to get to the roof membrane, it's going to run along the top of the shock layer out to the perimeter drainage system that's proposed. But again, there's no specifications on any of these materials that are going to be used, and without that, you, you can't verify whether, you know, the water's going to go the way the applicant suggests it's going to go.
So there's no documentary detail that indicates the materials and their porosity and that sort of thing from which we could evaluate that anyway. One comment before I rest, one comment that I just wanted to make that came to mind is that notice provision that I'm talking about refers to all applications before this commission, and it's notable that Weston and Sampson and the Taxing District did not make any comment on the text amendment and the impact of the proposed text amendment in terms of allowing these underground or one-story parking structures with fields on the roof. And I would strongly suspect that the, that the Taxing District didn't even have that before them. And there's nothing in the record that certifies that the Taxing District had the proposed text amendment before it for comment, and Weston and Sampson is a very thorough firm, and they didn't comment on it.
Sarah, would you look at?
Sure. So I emailed the First Taxing District once St. Luke's had notified them of the application, and I sent them a link to our website, also with meeting minutes and a link to the website with all the application materials. As many people are probably familiar with our website, the text amendment is right below the special permit application, so I don't remember off the top of my head if I explicitly said text amendment or not, but I sent them a link to all the application material.
Well, it's just interesting that your regulations are very specific, that a complete copy of the package of information that it's actually provided to the Commissioner of Public Health and the Water Taxing District, and proof of mailing must be submitted into the record.
I think we just heard Ms. Carey say that she sent the complete package to them.
No, she sent a link to the commission's website.
A link to the complete package, yes.
Look, I can only-
It's semantics, Mr. Green. I mean, if, we can argue whether it was on paper, whether it was digital, whether they received it, they got the package. And is your argument that the Taxing District should weigh in on the proposed structure if it's not on their property?
Well, when it says in your reg-
Not the discharge from the proposed structure that would impact the, the wetlands and the watercourses and their reservoir, but a proposed structure on a piece of property? You think they're due to weigh in on it?
I recommend that we don't speculate what the Taxing District should or should not have done. They've provided a letter to us and a consultant report, so I think we should leave it at that.
Well, I would, and I would only comment that your regulations say shall be mailed within seven days, and you require certified notice. So you call it semantics. I call it the rules that we all have to follow, including St. Luke's.
That's not what I was referring to, Mr. Green, don't twist my words. I was referring to a complete application, whether it's a paper copy or a link, we sent them a complete application. I understand and I agree, it didn't go out in the time allotted, but we have their response, we have their letter, we have their evaluation, you've had it, you've reviewed it, and that's what we're commenting on.
Well, I didn't have it on time, so that's my comment for the record. So-
I'm sorry, ma'am, would you like to speak or?
Sorry, no, I was just-
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that my client just wanted to, I think there's materials in the record and there are requirements, and I think Mr. Trinkus had commented on this, is that some of these materials on the turf field need to be cleaned periodically and maintained and cleaned, and that there's no detail on that either. Is that-
The filter fabric.
Right. So, and I think if Mr. Trinkus can weigh in, apparently, the filter fabric that is proposed, and actually, it's in response to the Water District comments, has a maintenance requirement. Or maybe, maybe I'll leave that to Mr. Trinkus. Your comment on this filter fabric and that issue?
Yeah, is this for the isolator row, Attorney Green?
Yes.
Yes, the, the isolator row is basically a separate row of the storm tech or cul tech, what I call plastic igloos, basically. And in the isolator row, it's wrapped in fabric. And in order to clean that, there are companies that have a machine that goes through the pipe, and basically with a high, it goes, it kind of is self-propelled on a cable, and goes to the far end of the machine and uses high-pressure water, and then a vacuum to basically loosen any accumulated sediment, and basically suck it up and, you know, go from the far end back to the beginning of it. And that does need to be, you know, cleaned at least annually, if not, you know, maybe twice a year, depending on, you know, the sediment load that might reach the system. So there is specific requirements in order to ensure the system continues to function the way it's intended.
Your, your recommendation for regular maintenance is noted. Anything else, Mr. Green?
No, I just want to thank you for your, your patience, and, look, I'm, look, my clients are deeply concerned about this application, and their neighbors are, and I know you've heard this, but-
Understood.
We're just making a record, and I greatly appreciate the attention that this commission has given this application, and your generous patience in allowing us to address the application.
Can I just ask one more question before we let you and Mr. Trinkus go? Because I'm still, I'm, I'm just trying to get clear in my head what we're looking for here. I mean, from my perspective, we have a letter now from the First Taxing District of Norwalk saying they, basically, any concerns they had about the water quality in that reservoir, which I understand is not perhaps as close as some of the neighbors' homes, but has been ameliorated by the applicant and changes that they've made. The Taxing District serves, I looked at their website, 40,000 residents of Norwalk. So I guess what I'm wondering is what additional changes would you want to see to this application to make your clients feel comfortable, beyond what the Taxing District's requiring to keep their constituents comfortable?
I strongly suspect that there is a different dialogue to be had with the Taxing District with the release of this PFA data involving groups reservoir than is reflected in the documents that are before this commission. I think, I think these results are frightening, and it is interesting, every single day when I turn on my news feed on the computer, it is PFAs, it is PFAs, and it is more municipalities that are addressing- PFAs, including with respect to turf fields. And this school has now four turf fields. So, uh, in terms of what my clients would like to see and what their neighbors would like to see, we would like to see the school be forthright with its testing, especially on this PFA issue. Uh, I think my clients are concerned, again, about the environmental issue. And I understand the position of this commission that while it is in standards for special permit, that it may be more front center with inland wetlands. I get that. But, uh, in terms of the overall project, look, the field is there. Would we oppose, uh, the field becoming a, uh, natural grass field? No. Would we oppose necessarily an artificial turf field where the field sits now with proper testing and with proper, uh, stormwater, uh, treatment and with, uh, addressing all the issues we've raised? Uh, I think that the, the community is open to that. But this charade, this, this quote, smart field, this zoning regulation is absurd for the town of New Canaan. It's not done. It's not done in Connecticut. It is not done in towns in New Canaan. And to, to just appear with a text amendment to allow, it, that is so badly worded, that basically says you can put one-story garages if they basically can't be seen, you know, if the landscape and, you know, I guess the screening is okay. You can basically have a garage if you put a carpet on the roof or quote, open space on the roof. It's bizarre. It's, it's inappropriate. And the school can address their queuing problem in other ways. And that's where, I think you would ask these questions the first night and the school sort of brushes it off and says, oh, we can't achieve that. But the school can. And it's also troubling that everyone, inland wetlands and frankly, the zoning department, look past what's going on in the site with the violations that exist on the site. And there are violations on the site. And I gave you those aerial photographs. You can see that they're parking wherever they want to park. You have information in the record that they're ignoring the special permit that you granted on lighting. And everyone gives the school a pass. So the neighbors are deeply concerned and my clients, you know, are, are really concerned. So the school, once again, can deal with the queuing another way. The school should be more responsible on their enrollment and, uh, and what their site can, can accommodate. And I think that the school could be a better neighbor. They could accommodate and deal with this traffic issue. They can establish, and they have established, other parking areas on the site that this commission would probably be open to. But to, to come up with this text, um, regulation of general application in residential zones in New Canaan is just irresponsible. And we urge the commission to deny it. I think the school can achieve its purpose in other ways, smarter ways. I don't know if you have any questions for me.
I don't. Commissioners, I think we're good. Thank you, Mr.
Thanks again for your, for hearing me.
And commissioners, in order to keep things going, uh, as Mr. Finn sets up, uh, let's allow him to make his full presentation. And then at the end of his presentation, we'll ask questions. Mr. Finn, give us, uh, two, two seconds. We're trying to find some power at the desk.
Okay.
They took a wire out of the power plugs. Got power here.
Yeah.
Dan?
Dan, just give it to me.
Hold up. Yeah, let's switch. I got no power.
You'll notice in a moment.
Go ahead. Plug in. Thank you.
Hold on.
Yep, it should work. Make it efficient. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Our correct IT and AV team.
Everything but power outlets.
Fix the screens, fix the cameras, but we have no power. There we go. Thank you, John.
Yeah.
Mr. Finn?
Thank you, Chairman Rabbin. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the commission. My name is Steve Finn and with me here tonight is Christopher Ross, out Chairman of the Board of Trustees for St. Luke's, Julia Gabriel, Assistant Head of School and CFO at St. Luke's, William Kenny, the Inland Wetland Scientist for this project, Melissa Flynn of Smart, uh, the engineering firm, um, and Melissa Flynn of AK, I'm sorry, Marissa Terrell of AKRF, the Traffic Engineer. Uh, each of them will be addressing you tonight. Uh, but I do want to sort of, uh, start with responding to some of the points, uh, that Mr. Green made to you, uh, just a few minutes ago. The rest of the points, I think, will be addressed throughout our presentation. You know, I, uh, I have to laugh a little bit because by my count, the applicant has probably presented to you for a total of about an hour and a half. That was back on December 19th. Since that time, the neighbors and Mr. Green have probably presented to you for a total of about five to six hours. Okay? A lot of repetition, a lot of issues raised that frankly are totally without merit. There are a few that I think are deserving of a response. The problem for me as an attorney is I don't really know collectively what particular points that were made by Attorney Green may have sparked an interest or sparked a concern. I know that if I was sitting on this commission, uh, I would have probably boiled it down to maybe two or three. Uh, but because of that, because I can't discern what really might have, you know, piqued your interest or, or, or raised a, a question, whatever, we're sort of left with trying to pull all the strands of spaghetti that have been thrown up on the wall and, and try to decide which one's stuck with each one of you. And that's very, very hard to do without going on for three, four, or five hours. So we're going to try to do our best to, to hit what we think are issues that might have been concerned to you. But if we miss something, if there's something that's in your mind, please bring it to us our attention because I am confident that we have answers for all the claims made and that when you focus back in on what this application is about, it's going to, it's an easy decision. It's an easy decision. So let me start to get into it. But let me start first with Mr. Green's statement that, uh, with, with regard to notice to the, um, First Water Taxing District. That came to my attention sometime in the beginning of February when frankly, uh, someone in inland wetlands said to me, called me up and said, look, we have a checklist. The checklist provides when you're supposed to give notice to the water company. Our checklist did not check that box. And as a result of that, the applicant for inland wetlands, who was the engineer for the project, didn't send notice to the water company. And as a result of that, I, as representing the applicant before the Planning and Zoning Commission, didn't send notice to the water company or the Connecticut Department of Health either. So I said, oh my gosh, do we have a problem here? But I, um, I, I did, we did some research and the research is crystal clear that issues of mail notice, regardless of what your regulations say, under Connecticut law, and this is appellate court and/or Supreme Court authority, the highest courts in our state, that only the person who was supposed to get notice, the water company in this case, or the Connecticut Department of Health, has any right to raise any objection or problem with that. This is not the, 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 Mr. Green and none of the neighbors have a right to make a claim based on that notice. Only the people who are entitled to get notice are. And just by way of example, if we were supposed to give notice to a neighbor and we didn't, that doesn't mean another neighbor who did get notice would have a right to say, your application is no good because you didn't give Mr. Jones notice. Hi, Mr. Smith got notice, but you didn't give Mr. Jones notice and therefore you have to start all over. Only Mr. Jones in that hypothetical could raise an objection. So this is all a red herring. All a red herring. And the idea that the water company's attorney, Brian McCann, who's a very respected, uh, land use attorney, works for a very prominent firm, Pullman and Commie, didn't know about a text change application that was part of this is absurd. It's just absurd. And the idea that Mr. Green should be raising all these issues about the queuing and the width of the driveway in connection with the submissions we've made in the last month or so is also not fair. He took the opportunity that your chairman, Rabbin, you gave him very graciously to respond to the information that we had submitted and open, and went back all over stuff that he could have raised back in January and February. So with all respect, I think you're being played here. And I get upset about it because I have a client to represent and I don't like these tactics. And I pointed out to both you and the inland wetlands commission, these types of tactics. He knows the law. If he doesn't, he should research it. Same thing with the, with the PFAs. Look, that, that group's reservoir, who know, I, I don't know, I don't know what the results were. Okay? But if there are PFAs in there, where did they come from? Mr. Logan did some water testing. Did he not test for PFAs? He didn't say anything about it. The neighbors have wells. Did they test for PFAs in their own water? Have you heard anything? I haven't. What is going on here? In addition, as, as it was pointed out to me, um, the field, the, the, with the belt and suspenders that, uh, West, Weston Sampson has requested, there are going to be no PFAs coming from this field, from the new field. The new field is, is going to be comprised of EPDM, safer material than the current material, which is that crumb rubber. The new field is going to be better for the environment and safer for drinking water than the existing field. So, uh, we'll get into this a little bit more, uh, but I wanted to at least, uh, vent a little bit on some of this. So, um, let's get back into what our presentation was going to be before, uh, Mr. Green sort of hijacked the first hour of the meeting. So, um, as I said, you heard from us last, um, basically on December 19th of 2023. That was over three months ago. Um, it's now our opportunity to rebut the claims, uh, which we will do this evening. As, uh, Chairman Rabbin pointed out, importantly, we've received comments from the First Taxing District of the city of Newark. They are the owners of group's reservoir, a drinking supply water reservoir, which is located in a very proximity, excuse me, to St. Luke's and is part of the same watershed. As you may recall, back in February, we were waiting for those comments and decided to postpone our rebuttal until we receive them. As we've heard, the First Taxing District hired Weston and Sampson, a very experienced engineering firm, to review the plans. Weston and Sampson conducted an extensive review of the plans and evaluated not only the drainage system, but addressed concerns about the artificial turf. I went back and I read their initial letter. In their initial letter, Weston and Sampson stated on page three, that they had concerns about trace concentrations of PFAs in synthetic turf. The source of these PA, PFAs components can be from materials used in manufacturing or added during the manufacturing process of final products. The concentration of PFAs compound reported posed no significant increased risk to users or the environment. So Weston and Sampson reviews the, reviewed the proposed material for the field and said the concentrations of PFAs reported posed no significant risk to users or the environment. But this is a developing area of science. Given the proximity of the artificial turf field to source water, the district requests that the filing be considered to limit the potential for chemicals in stormwater runoff. What did my client do in response to the request that we consider taking these measures? They agreed to every single one of them. And as a result of that, Attorney Brian McCann of the law firm of Pullman and Commie, who represents the First Taxing Water District, submitted to a letter to Sarah Carey yesterday, which I know Mr. Rabbin referred to, which states, and I want to read this into the record, "As a result of St. Luke's Foundation, Inc., agreeing to these site plan revisions and recommended conditions, the First Taxing District of the city of Newark has no additional comments or concerns with the application as revised." No additional comments or concerns with the application as revised. Regardless of whether you credit Mr. Trinkus's views or not, three out of four engineers, St. Luke's engineer, the town engineer, Maria Copeland, and the Weston and Sampson engineers are of the opinion that the field not only complies with the requirements of DEEP and New Canaan's drainage certification policy, but also addresses concerns about potential negative environmental impacts from the field. Now, importantly, in addition to notifying the First Taxing District, we also notified the Connecticut Department of Health on February 5th, 2024. I've been in touch with Lori Mathieu, who is the Public Branch Chief, Environmental Health and Drinking Water Branch of the Connecticut Department of Health. She has been sent the plans for the project and has made no comments or indicated any objection to it. And she's had them now for about seven or eight weeks. Now you will also be hearing from Bill Kenny tonight. He will reiterate his opinion that there are no adverse consequences to the wetlands or drinking water. In addition, he will review with you his recent works, which turned up no negative impacts that have been found to the drinking water or the wetlands from the existing artificial turf fields at St. Luke's. That's the existing artificial turf field. Again, if there are PFAs in group's reservoir, we don't know where they came from. But if by chance, if they, by chance, they came from St. Luke's field, that's the old field with a different infill. This new field is going to be better in that regard and reduce significantly the potential, uh, over the existing field. And as you know, one of those fields has been in existence at, at, at St. Luke's for 18 years and is deteriorating and is located closest to the wetlands. Don't you think you'd want to get a deteriorating 18-year-old field, field with crumb rubber out of your neighborhood as soon as possible? So we'll get into a little later about what, what is this really about? What are the neighbors really concerned about? Because we do see, and I, that, you know, it's, it's a little trite analogy, but they, they're moving the goalposts. This is a football field. They're moving the goalposts. Every time we say, well, it's not crumb rubber, it's virgin rubber. Oh, virgin rubber's not any good. Every time we take, uh, we, we try to bolster the, and belt and suspenders, the drainage capacity. Oh, that's not good enough. Oh, you know what? We're still not making much headway, we don't think. We better contact a lot of people in town and start talking about, uh, the impact of the project on, uh, some modern, uh, housing in the area. I'll move on. Um, I'm going to add a few more points on why there should be no remaining concerns about the environment and why the notice of intervention is without any merit. As I mentioned, since we were last before you, we specified the intake, the infill material. It is not crumb rubber. It is now specified to be virgin rubber, something called EPDM. I think some of you are familiar with that material. And according to Maria Copeland, EPDM is the material used in New Canaan's own artificial turf fields. Now, um, not only do the facts and the science support the conclusion of no negative environmental impact, but the law regarding scientific claims before municipal commissions is clear. And it is important for everyone interested in this application to keep the law in mind. Now, I was going to read to you from a Supreme Court case, it's called Riverbend Associates. It is the seminal case on the scientific evidence, uh, with regard to environmental impacts. I'm not going to do that. You can You can talk to your attorney, perhaps Ms. Carey can fill you in on what the law is, but I am going to paraphrase it, okay? Specifically, under the law of the state of Connecticut, neither a planning or zoning commission nor an inland wetlands commission can deny an application based on potential concerns or worries. Moreover, even if the risks that go beyond the potential or possibility with regard to chemical or environmental hazards, let me start again, sorry. Moreover, even risks that go beyond the potential or possibility with regard to chemical and environmental hazards are also not a sufficient basis to deny an application unless there is evidence that those harmful effects are likely to impact in a specific way the area that is involved in the application. So for example, and this is just a hypothetical, if there has been evidence that an artificial turf field in some area, other area of Connecticut has been contributing to damaging wetlands or well water, that is not a sufficient basis to deny this application unless there is specific evidence that the same result is likely to occur with regards to the property involved in this application.
Are you speaking to a special permit? Are you speaking to an application that would comply?
I'm sorry, Mr. Herron.
Are you speaking to an application that would comply with zoning or are you speaking to an application that is a special permit application? Because you're applying under a special permit, you're not applying under a...
The law with regard to the standard for concluding that any zoning project may have an impact is, can't be based on potential or possible or could have or might. It has to be...
A special permit has different criteria.
I disagree on that.
So Chris, just to clarify, that case in the statute he's discussing for legal interveners, it doesn't matter what type of application is, it's the same across all planning and zoning applications and inland wetland applications. The evaluating of expert testimony is the same regardless of if it's a site plan or a special permit.
I understand the evaluation of expert testimony. I think what you're saying is that no one can deny on future harm based on any predictive possibilities or any sort of future possible implications is what you're saying. I just want to make sure I understand that because what you're saying is you can't deny based on anything that potentially could happen, that may not happen.
Right. You need expert testimony that says this project is more likely than not going to have a negative impact on this particular area.
Okay, I understand that.
Okay. And if you go back and you look at the reports or you look at Dr. Tian's testimony or the letter from Janet Evans, who was the Mount Sinai person, I don't know if you remember that letter.
I do.
They all use the words potential, it's inconclusive, it might, we're concerned about it.
Right. So you're saying based on those medical concerns, but you're not speaking to other concerns that may cause this application to be approved or not?
No, that...
Specifically those pieces.
It has to do with the evidence that, you know, potential, I would, Mr. Herron, maybe I spoke too quick, but I think, you know, if there are concerns, for example, that there might be a potential impact, negative impact to traffic, for example, I would say the same standard would apply to that. I don't know if that's helpful to you. All right. But, you know, I urge you to, if need be, to, you know, bring the town attorney in and solicit his views on this. So now, I don't, you know, Mr. Herron, I don't want you to feel like we're sort of hiding behind the law because we're not. We think the facts are very, very clear that this field and this project is going to be, improve the impact on the environment over existing conditions. And those, that's our view and our experts will say that. Our traffic experts will say traffic is going to improve. Our environmental expert, Bill Kenny, is going to say that at a minimum, this field will have no increased adverse impact and likely will be better for the environment than the existing condition. So those are facts, not just law. But I am critical of the experts retained by the interveners. For instance, Dr. Tian, he talked about, well, there's potential for this and it had negative impact on Pacific salmon, for example. Well, that's just not relevant at all. It doesn't meet the standard and it's so far removed from what impact this field may have on this wetland and this well water that it's irrelevant. It shouldn't be considered. That's sort of my point. And the same thing with Ms. Evans. And while we're on the subject, Mr. Logan, who was their inland wetlands expert, you know, he said, you know, I took one water sample from the wetlands and it was really, really good water sample. I didn't take any other water samples. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't ask St. Luke's whether I could take water samples from their, off of their property. I didn't walk across any of my clients' properties to the wetlands and take water samples by accessing it from their properties. I didn't ask, I don't know if it was Mr. Castivant or someone, someone asked, well, did you test the well water at your clients' properties? Oh, I wasn't asked to do that. No one asked me to do that. Well, you would think that an environmental expert who's trying to objectively determine sort of what might be happening in the past up there after 18 years of having a field there would say, you know what, we really should test your well water. Didn't do that. Or maybe he did. You know what? Maybe he did, just didn't share the results with us. But, you know, what we did is once Mr. Logan said, I didn't test the wetlands in this area, what Bill Kenny did is he went out and he did test. He took three different tests. Mr. Logan took one test. Mr. Kenny, our expert, took three and found no evidence of really harmful impacts. And then what happens? I talk about moving the goalposts. What does Mr. Logan then do? He criticizes where Mr. Kenny took his three samples. Because he didn't like the results. Lastly, with regards to Mr. Logan, I want to spend one more minute on him. In his original report dated January 16th, 2024, on page four, he states, under his summary of findings, and he underlines this, what I'm reading to you is one of the few points in his report that he underlines. "The major concern that has emerged in reviewing the application materials is the lack of proper best management practices for the attenuation of stormwater runoff associated with the proposal." Doesn't talk about negative impacts. He talks about the lack of best, proper best management practices for the attenuation of stormwater runoff. Now, that report was based on, before the plans were upgraded a couple of times to comply Now, I'm about to turn things over to our presenters, but I want to address a few items that I believe Chairman Rabbin asked us to take a look at back in December. We were asked to provide some exhibits regarding how visible this structure might be from neighboring properties. In response to that request, I emailed Joel Green on December 22nd and I asked him specifically, can we arrange a time to come to your client's, the Pierce's property so that we can comply with Chairman Rabbin's request? And Mr. Green never responded, never gave us permission. And Christopher Rosso made the same request of Hike Kavushin, another neighbor in opposition, and also was never granted permission to take photographs from Mr. Kavushin's property so that we could comply with Chairman Rabbin's request to try to give you a sense of what it would look like from their properties. But we did, despite that, try to give you, we have prepared renderings and those were submitted already. Hopefully you may have looked at them, but we will be going over them again. And also, there were questions back in December with regard to the lighting in the garage. And in January, our engineer, Melissa Flynn, submitted written information regarding the recessed nature of the fixtures and locations in the garage, which she will review with you shortly. In brief, the plan is that by 9:00 PM, all lighting fixtures will turn off and can only be activated by motion, which is obviously for safety purposes. At dusk, the garage lighting will turn on at a 50% level and increase to 100% when motion is detected. The lights will turn off after 10 minutes. My understanding is the 9:00 PM cutoff is consistent with when the lights are turned off at the other parking lots at St. Luke's. Now, in addition to the upgrades to the field, the drainage system and water treatment, the lighting plan, there has been one other change in the plans that I want to raise with you. Unfortunately, when the engineers at Smart designed the layout for the garage, they mistakenly assumed that standard dimensions for parking spaces, that is utilized for many other projects, nine feet by 18 feet, was applicable to this project. I note that there are a number of examples in New Canon, a number of projects in New Canon, where this commission has approved a project with either parking spaces with dimensions of nine feet by 18 feet or has allowed approximately 20% of the spaces to be smaller based on creating compact car parking spaces. However, we acknowledge that as things stand now, the nine-foot by 20-foot space dimensions set forth in regulations do apply to this project because we do not ask for special dispensation from that, which you may or may not have granted based on what you did for other projects. So a revised plan has been submitted, which provides for 177 spaces in the garage rather than the approximately 200 that was part of the original submission. So with that, that's a good segue to Marissa Terrell, our traffic expert, who was a maid aware of the development that we've reduced the number of parking spaces, and she will present to you why the reduction in the parking spaces will not have any impact on our conclusions about how this project will eliminate queuing on North Wilton Road and should also solve the parking problems on campus. After Marissa addresses you, the project engineer, Melissa Flynn, will present, then Bill Kenny, then Christopher Rosso and Julia Gabrielle will also make some remarks. And then, just to give you the final outline, I will then conclude our presentation by addressing the text change and the special permit applications and addressing some of the claims of the opposition. So thank you very much for your time and your attention. And I'm now going to ask Marissa Terrell to address you.
Can I ask a point of clarification?
I'll let him finish drinking because I'm assuming it's with him.
I'm listening.
The lighting, you said the lights turn off in the parking lots at 9:00 PM, but they will come back on at 100% strength if they detect motion. So at 9:05, I can assume that if I walk out to my car, it'll be a dark parking lot, but if it senses me at 9:05, 10:05, 11:05, all the lights will come on. This is just parking lot lights that you're talking about?
There are the lights in the garage. Melissa Flynn will describe for you how the lights are recessed. What I don't know, Mr. Engel, and I'm going to have to defer to somebody else about whether all the lights in the garage come on if someone, you know, walks to a car in the far corner or whether just some of the lights come on. But I'm going to, I'm sure we can get an answer to that question.
But we're not talking about surface parking, tennis court parking and other parking around the campus when you talk about nine o'clock and motion sensors?
I don't believe the other parking lots have motion sensors.
So we're only talking about the parking garage?
Correct.
Thanks.
Yep.
Hi, I'm Marissa Terrell with AKRF. For the record, I believe I was last in front of you in December for the traffic study. We have not submitted a revised traffic study. I had mentioned that we do an extensive traffic study that was evaluating everything from the previous zoning requirements all through the queuing and the establishment. I did all of that based on Connecticut DOT requirements as well as the fact that I represent about a dozen municipalities doing traffic studies and kind of look for everything you may look for in representing commissions. That hasn't needed to change because the only traffic change that I have been asked to represent to you is that the parking garage, which had 196 parking spaces in it, has 177 with the revised plan. That's a net reduction of 19 parking spaces. However, there was a surplus of parking previously, so there is now a lesser surplus with the 19 space reduction. I say there's a surplus of parking with the parking garage because it was determined that the tennis courts at full capacity could handle 80 vehicles and that the corral system would remove 35 to 36 parking spaces approximately. And that would result in 116 spaces that are currently being used in the worst-case scenario. However, the parking lot handles 177. So as such, even if, you know, all of the parking, the tennis court was previously full, they're now all going to go into the garage. The previous corral system was, where the corral system's going to go was full, it goes into the garage, you would still have 61 more spaces on site than how many cars you can park today. So I'm not concerned about the reduction in parking in that it would cause a new problem that I had not previously represented to you. In terms of the queuing, the garage changes don't affect what can queue on the site because those are parked cars. So we have two separate concerns or evaluations on the site. Parking, how much we can park and whether there's a surplus or a shortfall. And queuing, space where there's not a parked car that we can wait to do our pickup and drop off. So parking, I've addressed, but I'll answer questions if there's more concerns. For queuing, we did queuing analysis, if you remember, on March 1st and 2nd of 2023. March 2nd was a standard or average day at St. Luke's in that there was no after-school activity, but it's a school, after-school activities happen. March 1st had an after-school basketball tournament. So we noted that that was a higher queue and all of the analysis that's presented in our traffic study that you already have was based on March 1st. So we do have two days of data collection, but we went with a reasonable worst-case scenario. During those observations on March 1st, the max observed queue was 118 vehicles and that occurred at 3:20 PM. That includes 60 cars queued on site and approximately 58 cars queued on North Wilton Road. What I then do is look for where the space is to queue cars and whether it's being completely used on site. A lot of times, schools have a really inefficient system of getting cars to pull forward, get off their cell phones and pay attention. This school does not have that problem. They are out there telling everyone exactly where to be and who, how to be there. That's not to say that's doing anything different. It just means that I can't gain it strictly by personnel efficiency on this site. My professional's opinion is you cannot queue this site better just by having more people paying attention to how people are queuing. The next piece would be finding more space to put the cars that are waiting to pick up people. In relation to that, nearly all of the space besides double lining cars, which you can't, you know, I talk about double lining cars and that there's a width and a car is approximately eight feet wide or a parking space is and we put another one next to it. And then we still have to have enough space for people to come in the opposite direction on the driveway. Double parking is also not ideal because who gets to pull up next? What happens when kids run between double parked cars? It's not ideal. What I'm looking for is just drive aisles and where we can fit everybody. I said 60 cars were queued on site. It's a pretty good number of cars queued on site and they are queuing into staff lots where necessary. But I wouldn't advise queuing on this site differently than how it's queued today and maintaining the flow that exists because we also have to get people back on, we have to get people off North Wilton Road, we need it to not be a confusing system that makes it unsafe or inefficient. So I wouldn't change how the existing site is being queued. That leaves what can they do? So with the change... So with the change in the system, the corral system is something that we ask a lot of schools to start looking at when they really have a lot of pickup and drop off. The corral system can hold 45 cars. Previously, the site could hold 60 queued. Now we have 45 just in the corral system. And that came at the consequence of removing parking, but it gives more queue space off of North Wilton Road. So 45 cars can queue there. There remains to be about 50 cars that can queue within the site still. So I have 50 cars, or 45, between the existing driveway and through to the corral system, 45 in the corral system. And then you can also queue within the aisles of the parking garage. They're all, except for the center aisle, two-way. And even the center one-way aisle can fit a car and not be too close to the parked cars. Yes, a parked car cannot pull out of the garage while there's queuing happening within the garage. The thought would be you'd put your staff there. It's very common. I mean, even today, a lot of the queuing, if they have to overflow, what they do is they overflow the queue into the staff lot because in theory, the staff are leaving after the students have left because they're in the process of doing that. So I'm not saying that that means the garage can flow perfectly and you can queue cars in at the same time, but you do have the potential to queue cars in the drive aisles while still allowing those cars to park there. The garage could handle approximately 50 cars queued inside of it. If they maxed out all of that new queue space, it's approximately 140 cars. The max queue that we observed is 118 cars. And it was on a day where there was a basketball tournament. So for that reason, our professional opinion is that the queue that spills back onto North Wilton Road today, if all of these queues are managed as well as they are today, same level of management, and that they use the space they have created for queuing in the way they've created it, that there will not be a queue on North Wilton Road during typical or after-school activity conditions. And I believe that's the sum of our changes. So that sums up, just because the parking lot changed, I re-looked at the parking spaces, I re-looked at the queue, we have the same conclusions, unless there's additional questions on traffic.
I have a question, Commissioner Turner. I believe you said 177 total parking spaces? Of that 177, how many are parking in the tennis courts?
So, the 177 is the not, what's currently parked on site. I'm sorry if I misspoke. 177 parking spaces is what is proposed for the new parking garage footprint only. What I did to come up with the 61, that would be the net increased parking, is I subtracted off, from that 177, take away 80, which is the maximum amount of cars that can fit on the tennis courts. And then I also subtracted out from that 177, the 35 cars that can currently park where the corral system would go, that will no longer be parking spaces. So while they're putting in 177 space parking lot in addition to what they have, they'll get a net surplus of 61 parking spaces if they no longer park the tennis court and they remove the parking spaces where the corrals are going to be.
But if they do park it at the tennis court, what are the numbers on that?
The tennis court can handle a maximum of 80 cars on it.
So it would increase it to, how much?
If...
Beyond?
Beyond the 177.
The new parking garage.
It'd be 177 plus the 80, if they were both parked.
Plus 80, okay.
There's no, if the garage is approved, there's no plan to continue to use the tennis courts. The whole, like, one of the real purposes of this is to free up the tennis courts to be used for tennis, and we would agree to a condition that the tennis courts would not be used any longer for parking if this project is approved.
Okay. And as far as the corral, have you done any kind of, you know, level of service studies about what that means when you queue all those cars in the aisles? You know, how do people get out of an event?
Yeah.
You know, what's the impact? And how does it back up and eventually, you know, get up to Wilton Road?
So, regarding level of service, that is a metric used to evaluate the amount of delay that a car experiences to go through a certain intersection. So certainly, the people that arrive 15 minutes early and sit in that queue, because they're 15 minutes early to the school, and then they have to wait to pick up their child, their delay is 20-plus minutes on site for however long they're there. I think your question relates to at what point, for instance, that corral system can hold 45 cars. Those 45 cars are going to wait for however long it takes for their child to get to them based on what time they got there, but that will only affect the parents of St. Luke's school. Your concern, I assume, is largely related to when that queue spills back and then affects North Wilton Road's level of service. So 45 cars fit in that corral system, and then 50, I'll call it 45 because that's my original, 45 and 45. So 45 fit in the corral and 45 fit on the drive aisles leading up to the school. Once 90 cars have reached the site, the queue will then, regardless, so it's not level of service so much as when it spills back and then it impacts level of service on the main road. After 90 cars, it would extend onto North Wilton Road unless the garage space is also used for queuing, at which point, that's 140 cars that can fit, and the maximum amount of cars arriving in the afternoon is 118, so there would never be a spillback onto North Wilton Road. Therefore, it would never affect the level of service on North Wilton Road for the public. The people it's going to affect for level of service is the driveway leaving St. Luke's, however long they have to wait for a gap in traffic on North Wilton Road, is their delay on the school driveway. So...
When you say never, it's an interesting concept to say, because I think, one of the things that I think is consistent across the neighborly dispute between the school and the neighbors is intensity of use. It's one of the things that we wrestled with at Grace Farms, is the idea of how many parking spots are on the property, how many have to be shuttled to the property, and the concept that if you add more parking, it'll actually increase traffic. So what you're describing is, imagine all the queuing goes away and no one additionally drives.
Right. So I said, and I apologize if it was confusing, the, with that function, it should never affect a level of service in regards to whether the site can ever cause that queue again, or it could happen. If it goes beyond 140 cars, it could go back onto North Wilton Road as it is today. What our determination was is because there was only 118 maximum cars, that with today's conditions, with no change in enrollment, if that's more clearly, with no change in anything on the site, except that they move who's on the tennis court into that parking lot, then there would no longer be a spillback. But that's taking what's there and rearranging it, which was the intention of the analysis.
Right. So that would assume that no additional students would drive to school, no additional enrollment, no additional, like, because I think one of the questions that comes out there is excessive parking derives incremental driving. Like, so effectively, people that may be shuttling from satellite points, as inconvenient as it may be, will then, knowing that there's no queuing, decide that, hey, I'm actually going to drive independently. So therefore, your one car that could have been a carpool may multiply into five. So you're back where you started.
Right.
So your logic is sort of, assuming same behavior today is driven, but we add 200 extra parking spots, will be good. But you're not really incorporating any sort of change of behavior?
No, the only change in behavior I had previously spoken to is the change in behavior of if, with that surplus of parking spaces, they let students drive versus being dropped off, and that that car would then stay on site throughout the day, depending on the regulations of the school, and would then leave at the end of the day. So rather than it being a parent coming twice...
So did you include all sophomores and juniors and seniors of driving age, or what metric did you use for that?
So, it's just, it's less about a metric of switching the existing, and it's a trade-off. So right now, that parent is driving to the site. If we let that student drive, the parent would...
One child per parent is what you're assuming versus carpooling versus shuttling?
Yes. Based on the information that we got from St. Luke's, the majority of students, there are a handful of buses, I believe six buses that queue on site, so there's some level of transit, but a large majority of the vehicles are not carpool. They're individual students. So the car has a two-person occupancy, the adult and the child being dropped off.
That's the assumption?
Yes.
In terms of number of parking spots, not including the tennis court currently, including the corral that's used for parking, how many parking spots are on site now, total? Not including the tennis court?
I believe that was put in by the school at the December meeting, so I'll defer to the, an amount of formal parking spaces that are striped there from Chris.
If it's on a particular site plan or sheet, we can refer to that if you know.
And I apologize, mine is based on what I observed, not based on the striped number.
So, couple of questions. It was, how many existing parking spots? How many total faculty and staff work at St. Luke's currently? Who, I assume, commute in and drive and need to park? And then I believe the current policy is they allow seniors to drive to school. Is that correct, Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
So how many seniors are enrolled at St. Luke's?
In that, if I can also just provide context on the, because I do want to answer your question regarding the different tactics for parking, because there's a lot we're using now, and for good reason, and to your point about driver behavior. So we, there are a lot of times we're trying to encourage shared parking. So we're trying to cut down on the number of parking spaces provided on certain sites to encourage people to take public transit, to walk. You think of transit-oriented development, you think of downtowns and how much parking we're going to provide off-street versus on-street. In this particular case, regulations is usually what we're looking at for parking. So that's why I was talking about how the school staff are managing the queue and how the school staff are doing the parking, because the school is in full control of the behavior in the sense that they are, the students are paying to be there and have a responsibility to be there, unlike a patron that is choosing to go to a store and we need to encourage them to go, or we can change their behavior. They could limit how many juniors can park on site. They have the ability to do that. They have the ability to, kind of like a housing complex has the ability to limit how many residential permits are given so that only one, each apartment can only have one car in a garage. So the parking is going to be used however the school behavior indicates that they could. So it's slightly...
So the school, like, playing on that, right? So you're saying if the school said, hey, everyone has to go to this satellite parking spot and then get on the bus, then they could reduce the cars? So you're saying basically they could, they could drive that? So I guess my, my other question for you on exiting North Wilton there, what about extending the driveway, changing the driveway location? So having the driveway enter opposite Briscoe and then parallel the baseball diamond? So you're taking cars off the street and extending the driveway?
Yes. So we didn't look at alternative configurations for the existing, because I'm just analyzing what they're proposing for a site. However, effectively, if you can add 95 parking spaces of queuing on new driveways, then you could, in theory, create the exact same queuing condition as what this parking lot and corral system would do. But that's a pretty heavy burden, considering the current driveway in its full extent can only queue 60 cars, and you'd have to add 95 to get it to cover the full extent.
Right. No, it's just the, that slot there, if you look at the, if you look at the visual, basically, if you had a driveway come off of Briscoe, Briscoe rather, and then parallel the diamond there, you'd effectively take a number of cars off the street there.
Certainly.
So I guess my point is, I'm just curious on how out-of-the-box the thinking was. So you're not considering changing the entrance or exit, the structure, you're not considering, like, intersections down the way, or you're just looking at current conditions plus the garage?
Yes. I am looking at current conditions plus the proposed application.
Okay.
I do, Mr. Herring, I do want to remind you and the commission that we, we already have a check on, on traffic and enrollment, and that stems from the 2013 special permit approval. And I know it was a long time ago, and it is set forth in our, in our original application materials, but we, St. Luke's, for every increase of 53 students, has to submit a traffic study, and that traffic study has to show that traffic is still improved over 2013, over 2010 or 2011 traffic study. So, this commission, in its wisdom back in 2013, when they have...
Well, that's not really a check on the growth of the, that's just a check on whether traffic's changing, just to be clear. All that is, is just a traffic study. So I'm just trying to understand the different levels here.
The traffic study does require mitigation if they go above the 2012 existing condition level of service.
Right. So the existing, so the condition doesn't change. But it doesn't, it doesn't limit growth. It just says if the growth impacts traffic, then there's a limit. I just want to be clear. The intensity, the intensity of the site use is not impacted or limited. You're saying that the traffic study is a limiter? Because I think they're two different things.
Right.
You're saying the traffic, if the traffic is an issue, that the school's site is as of right, so there's no limit on the school.
Yes. So the only, the other limitations would be any building additions, any other coverage limitations for a building...
Right, which is very different.
All right. But when you talk about the intensity of the use of the site, you're talking about putting more students into the existing buildings?
But you said that there's already a check in place for growth based on a traffic study, which is a pretty vague description.
I stand corrected. There's a, there's a check on increase in traffic. And frankly, that's, the reason why I said that is because I've been involved with the school and with the neighbors for a pretty long time now, and the issue has always been the concerns about traffic on North Wilton Road. And so, the original check and balance on traffic was meant, was geared to that, and I admit, it was geared to that. It was meant to be a check on traffic, which always seemed to be the hot-button topic for all the neighbors, especially Mr. Kavushin, Dr. Kavushin.
Commissioners, any further questions? Okay.
I do, I just want to go over the numbers. Did you say that there was 118 cars queued out on North Wilton Road at the worst-case scenario?
58 of them spill onto North Wilton Road, the other 60 are on site. So there was a 58-car queue on North Wilton Road, total of 118 cars queued for St. Luke's.
And then the new scenario, with 35 in the corral and roughly 50 queued in the parking structure, that leaves the rest, how many on the roadways of St. Luke's property?
45 and 45 in the corral. The current corral system is 36 parking spaces, but it would be 45 in a corral system. So 45 corralled, 50 queued in the parking garage for a total of 95, and then a remaining 45 could still fit on the existing driveway as it operates today, before it would be at North Wilton Road.
So my experience leaving Yankee Stadium or any other place that has a parking garage is they don't work perfectly like that. That, I mean, often I have to wait a very long time in my car before those 50 cars exit the parking garage, and I can even pull out. And people don't wait for 50 cars to leave before they start pulling out and replacing them. So that's a perfect, what is it, what is it like in practice? Not a theoretical perfection. What's it like in practice when we all try and leave at the same time? How long is it going to take? And are we really going to have no cars on North Wilton Road? Because I really think that that's what the hope is, that if we give you a text change and this extraordinary, to some people, extraordinary ask, we want perfection out there on North Wilton Road. I mean, we don't want it to just be better, to use your words, better than the 2012 standard. I mean, we want the, we want the traffic solved. I don't spend much time on St. Luke's, but I spend time on North Wilton Road, and I cannot get around that neighborhood twice a day. It's bad. So I want to know what practically speaking, not theoretically speaking, practically speaking, it's going to look like.
No, and that makes perfect sense. So I'll just, I'll clarify one thing, though. The 50 cars that I'm talking about are snaked in the drive aisles of the parking garage. So they're not going to be waiting to pull in like Yankee Stadium, you need a parking space. So you are waiting for someone else to pull out so you can pull in. This is all... This is, all those cars came in in the morning and they parked. And you are now a parent coming to do pickup fifteen minutes before the school lets out and you're going to start parking, queuing in all of those drive aisles. Fifty cars can fit in there with a generous five to six feet between vehicles and not assuming that I can kind of do what parents do, which is force myself in, just like when I'm in a traffic jam at Yankee Stadium. So if everyone is very orderly and very organized, as the queue currently is managed at St. Luke's, then with those cars parked in the parking spaces of the parking garage, fifty can snake around that. With a dismissal, what would happen is the corral system's on hold. The cars that were overflowed into the garage need to get out.
They get first. They're out first.
It depends on how the school manages it, but on our initial discussions, the thought was always to try to prevent people from coming really early and just sitting on the site. So we would prioritize people that showed up when dismissal was, not people that showed up early so that we don't get a lot of people sitting on the site unendingly because, so they can be first in line. So it does depend on who they want to release first, but presumably if you have parked cars in a garage and I want to allow those parked cars to be able to start pulling out themselves too, or people to at least go to their cars, then I'm going to take that queue out first. So there's about half of the cars that are on the driveway, let's say, twenty, that are already lined up to the front door of the school. Those twenty need to clear, start clearing out, so they're going to take kids, pull forward, take kids, pull forward. The fifty could unsnake from the garage and come out and start going down the drive. And then the corral system could start releasing. This is hypothetical. I'm not out there telling, waving people right now, but that's how this could work. To your point, reasonably, not in a perfect world. It's, we've got three zones so we can hold people in those zones and move them up accordingly. So with your question of Yankee Stadium, it's a little bit different because the part that's horrible about Yankee Stadium or any event is getting off Yankee Stadium. In the morning or in the time when you're going there, you need to be able to get people on so that they get off the public road. And a lot of times what happens with a stadium is because you have to pay for parking, it's backing up till the highway. In this situation, we get people on and that's why we have all this queuing space to get them off North Wilton Road. Once they're on the site, if you think about it, if I was timing people from the beginning of the site previously and how long they were on St. Luke's, they're going to be on St. Luke's longer because they're no longer spending ten, fifteen minutes on North Wilton Road. So the parents associated with St. Luke aren't necessarily getting any benefit. There's no operational benefit to St. Luke's in the sense that all the parents can get their pickup done faster. It's that the parents that are there that should be dealing with traffic because it's their school and it's their kid are onsite. And the queue that was previously on North Wilton Road, anytime they were spending ten, fifteen minutes on North Wilton Road, they're now spending in the site. And how fast St. Luke's can get those people off the site deals with those parents' level of frustration. The whole goal with my analysis, because it looked like that was the intention of the two thousand twelve conditions too, is to just, the school is a school. If you choose to have your kid at that school and I choose to pick my kid up, I deserve to deal with the traffic associated with what I chose to do. The goal is to not make the neighbors or somebody that wants to go down North Wilton Road now have to wait longer because of anything that's going on at St. Luke's. That, I feel confident, is going to be completely removed if they just implement these plans as they've been laid out. They use their queuing space and they monitor to make sure that their queue is not spilling back and they're moving people up as they do exactly today. The difference with today is they just genuinely don't have enough space to get people off North Wilton Road.
Commissioner Herring asked if the single exit was the weak link in the plan. Can you address whether getting a second exit is helpful? Or the fact that everybody is required to be in one line in three different, you know, locations on the campus? But is, is that the weak link, that we have one exit?
So if there is a second exit, all that does is help St. Luke's traffic get off the site faster. So it can also get them on. So, and I want to be fair, when you were saying a second entrance, I was envisioning just creating more driveway space. If you create more driveway space, you have more queue than you have today, whether that's to replace the parking garage or anything else. So there's two things again. It's level of service and it's queuing and parking. If you put a second driveway in, I would have whatever the length of that driveway is to queue cars on it. But when I'm leaving and I'm a car, I can be like, all right, I can wait on this side or this side and we can both turn out. So I can basically turn twice as many cars off St. Luke's onto the local road. So there would be a bigger flush of people being able to exit onto North Wilton Road at one time. So good for the parents because it can get off faster. It's only going to be good for North Wilton Road if the speed with which parents can get off the site can be easily absorbed onto North Wilton Road without causing a traffic jam at your next intersection because I just dropped a hundred cars onto that road in a five-minute span. So right now, a lot of the reason you don't have a problem in the AM, you have level of service A and B in the AM on North Wilton Road, is because the problem is everybody gets in and then they can't get back out. So the level of service F is on St. Luke's driveway. The public road is not a problem. If I put two driveways, I've let more come on. I'm likely not going to have A and B anymore level of service on North Wilton Road. I don't imagine it would be F necessarily, depending on how fast parents could get off, but it would be worse than it is today.
So exploring a second driveway is not necessarily beneficial to the neighborhood?
To the neighborhood? No. To the parents, maybe. Yeah.
Well, it is, it is if it reduces queuing, because what you're saying is that basically a second, a second exit reduces the need for additional traffic, right? Because you can get things, you can get cars off-site, so therefore you have to have less corralling space.
My, if, for queuing, the, the ideal solution for queuing to mitigate that second driveway would be to do, whether it's this side or any way of doing this, do more queuing with the existing driveway as it is day. So even if it's a second entrance, but it's exit-out, entrance-only, like, you don't want, to the point of what I made before, that's not removed from the problem. You still don't want two exits onto North Wilton Road with both of them dropping cars at the same time. You do want more queue space. So whether it's through the parking garage or through another means, queuing space is good for the site. The ability to exit faster from the site is not necessarily good for the public, if that makes sense.
But in direct response to Mr. Engel's question, i- if this project is approved, you're confident that the queue along North Wilton Road entering to the school will be eliminated, is that?
I am confident, my professional opinion, as I'm confident that the queue will be removed during all typical conditions onsite. So obviously I did not evaluate the day of graduation. But I did evaluate, because I saw it myself and I can say that I saw a basketball condition with additional buses with additional parents, I do think typical operations and typical after-school activities with using the queue space I've laid out will resolve in no queue on North Wilton Road.
Mr. Rello, I just want to clarify what you just said, though. That would be existing conditions, same enrollment level and continuation of senior-only driving?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's Commissioner Turner. Could you explain the data behind your conclusions? You know, what, what kind of mathematical modeling did you do? How did, how did you come to this conclusion that there'll be no backup or no problems with the queuing?
Yes. So with queuing, I have two tools in front of me. I have space. So just simple math of if I have a hundred feet, I can queue five cars because we make a general traffic engineer's judgment that a length of a vehicle is twenty feet, give or take, for a passenger car. If I'm doing buses, I do a different length. It depends. So you have just the straightforward math of how much pavement and space I can use. If queuing gets more complicated than that, let's say I was telling you that the maximum I could queue onsite was a hundred and my max observed queue was a hundred and eighteen. I couldn't confidently tell you, because the math tells me I'm technically short at least one car with what I observed, I need to use additional modeling software. So that's where you can use a microsimulation product or something that uses driver behavior. And to your point before about Yankee Stadium, I can make them drive forward and see if the progression of the vehicles allows for that one space that I'm short to pull up by the time that car leaves. I didn't need to use that tool in this situation because my space was above my maximum observed queue. So in that case, I can use basic queuing information, but the tools available would have allowed me to just basically look at driver behavior and whether they pulled forward for me to create. To your point, if someone was asking me to analyze additional, which would be asked, again, if they put fifty-three more students there and they need to do an additional traffic study and someone asked me, what's the potential with the fifty-three students? If it was fifty-three individual cars and that went beyond what the max queue was, then I would have to use an additional software to see how drivers behave and if they move forward at a rate that the queue still doesn't go back onto North Wilton Road. In this case, I have such a surplus, I don't need to use that. For level of service analysis, we used synchronous traffic software. So that is a standard microsimulation product, but also a level of service analysis. I put in volumes, I put in lane widths, I put in heavy vehicle percentage, what percentage of them are slower-moving trucks than, than cars, parking maneuvers, all kinds of information, basically everything that's existing on the roadway geometry. I put that in and then it uses the Highway Capacity Manual methodology, which is the national standard for level of service, for me to give you the levels of service that I gave in the original traffic report.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
You mentioned you did this during basketball season. Have you done one during football season when there's more players and parents?
I did not. Our observations are during the spring. Generally, spring is a pretty high-traffic condition and we have seasonal factors that we can use to see if spring was higher than winter than was higher than fall. But no, I don't have observations for the fall.
And when you have more bleachers and more seating sections for the football with the turf field, but you have, do you anticipate more cars for those type of events?
I'll defer to if there'll be more people coming to the site based on, to the applicant, of how they're going to use the football games.
Good evening. For the record, Julia Gabriel. I'm the associate head of school. I, we, we don't have, our, actually, our biggest activity is basketball. So that's where we're getting most crowds, in terms of parents and in terms of student population. It's not in football season. It's during basketball season.
So going back to my original question on the spots and based on your presentation and the numbers I heard, the corral has thirty-six spots. The remaining parking spots on the existing site, not including the tennis court, technically the tennis court is not a parking lot and we don't want it to be. There's an additional one hundred and twenty-four, so a total of a hundred and sixty spots on the site currently. According to the St. Luke's website, you have seventy-nine teachers. I know there's additional staff and administrators and everyone else. I don't know what the total number of faculty and staff is. And then how many seniors? You have a six hundred and three students currently. If you divide that by eight, it's about seventy-five seniors. I keep off there, obviously. But it would help me to understand the rationale, what your total, what those two numbers are for looking to provide a hundred and twenty-four surface spots plus a hundred and seventy-seven garage spots totaling three hundred parking spots onsite. Does the current capacity, the faculty, the staff and the seniors, come close to that number?
Sure. So for our faculty and staff and including facilities, including food service, we're parking about a hundred and forty adults and then eighty seniors.
Eighty seniors.
Eighty seniors.
So you're at two-twenty-ish.
Correct. Now that, what, what this extra parking provides, we cannot have visitors. We cannot have parents come for special events. We cannot host colleges. So the normal course of school activities, we cannot host because we do not have parking spots. So our Parents Association, for example, they have to hold meetings off-site. So the normal course of events, we are not able to host because we do not have the parking spots.
Understood. Thank you.
So it's not your intention to use the extra capacity to allow juniors to park?
We've made no decision about juniors parking. In many ways, I'd love to have juniors park because it helps reduce traffic, because when juniors drive, they come and they stay on campus. Right now, their parents are driving and dropping them off and then leaving and then coming back in the afternoon to pick them up and leaving. So to reduce traffic, ideally, I would love to have juniors park on campus, but we have made no determinations about that at this point.
Nor should we make that a condition. We should give you the flexibility of-
I, I believe you should give us the flexibility like other schools have in town. New Canaan does not have restrictions on juniors driving or seniors. The, the school makes those rules. So I would prefer not to have those restrictions.
Well, let me ask a very specific question that I think is germane to the entirety of the community. How many of the six hundred and three students live in New Canaan?
Well, we have five hundred and ninety-six students on, on campus. And of the students in New Canaan, I believe our current population is about a hundred and thirty. I'd have to go to the website and check that specifically.
And, and so the question, the incidence issue, which is germane, I think, to everybody in this room, is that the neighbors of your school are absorbing how many kids from non-New Canaan? I mean, you, you're, you raise this relative to what the parking requirements are at New Canaan High School, for example. But the germane question here for a special permit is how much are you asking the butters, frankly, to absorb, A, existing non-New Canaan residents, and B, we haven't yet talked about enrollment restrictions or other, other matters, right? But you're, you're in effect, correct me if I'm wrong, you have a ton of kids driving from non-New Canaan affecting New Canaan residents. Is that a fair statement?
We have, of our senior class, of the kids who drive, so we have eighty students in the senior class. I don't know the breakdown of New Canaan within those eighty students. But yes, they, they are, many are driving, not the entire senior class. I'm sure like New Canaan High, not every senior drives. And certainly some are the bus, buses. We do not use the New Canaan bus system. We, that's not something that the school has availed itself of, yet I know we can. We do not avail ourselves of the New Canaan bus system. So yes, we are having students who are driving from out of town and, and in town.
So let me follow, and this links to your comment a moment ago. Your, your parents are paying an extraordinary amount of money for tuition. The comparable schools, let's say, for example, we pick Brunswick or Greens Farm or whatever schools you have, what are their policies on juniors versus seniors driving?
They are permitted, juniors and seniors are permitted to drive at these other schools.
So is it fair, and, and again, I'm making a leap, but I think this is quite germane, frankly, John, to the point you just made. For you to be competitive, trying to get tuition-paying parents, it would be your preference to be able to have juniors drive?
I would say we are definitely at a competitive disadvantage by not allowing juniors to drive, for sure.
Can I, I'm sorry, Mr. Casson. Can I, can I jump in for one second? Because I, I just ask, I want to ask this question again. What impact of, of Ms. Torello, what impact would it have if juniors were allowed to drive on the queuing that forms on North Wilton Road to enter into the school?
Yep. So if a parent is driving a junior today, they're not carpooling, they're not on a bus. If a parent is driving a junior today, which is a lot of them, and they were to drive to the site in the afternoon, they're part of the a hundred and eighteen car queue that I observed. If they're in a parking space and they're waiting to leave, like Yankee Stadium, the idea, then they're no longer part of the queue. So if my max queue is a hundred and eighteen and the site will now be able to handle a hundred and forty and I take, not necessarily sixty, but even two-thirds, if I take the net and they're using thirty spaces for juniors, that's thirty cars out of the a hundred and eighteen car queue and more, more confidence I have, the more juniors they park onsite, the more seniors they park onsite, the more cars stay onsite, the more confidence I have this won't go to North Wilton Road.
And, and that's the same assertion you made earlier, correct? I mean, I, attorney Finn, with all due respect, I got the point. I, I, I don't agree with it. And I am more interested in a discussion which will happen probably later on conditions relative to the fact that the community is being asked to absorb any one of us who has driven around. I drove there yesterday in anticipation, drove down North Wilton Road, didn't drive to the school. There's a traffic problem. And I, I accept the logic of your queuing. I understood her argument before. I don't agree with it. And the logic is you're going to have more people drive, but it's going to reduce traffic. And I understand the mathematics and the queuing theory. But that's just interesting. And what I hear from the associate head of school is that this may in fact be a competitive issue. this may, in fact, be a competitive issue for you relative to retaining and attracting students.
Well, I think, I'm not sure why more people would be driving. Instead of the parent driving the junior, the junior is driving. So I'm not quite sure, maybe, I'm sorry, I'm confused at what you're saying.
That's fine. And I'll just restate my observation about this, is that in a world where parents pay an extraordinary amount of money to private schools, I don't, this is, and Ms. Torello, this goes to your argument, I don't believe they will be patient about going in, going out, when given a set of rules and restrictions on parking and driving. And my observation, my question to you is, is this necessary for you to remain competitive? If it is, and you may not want to answer that question, but to me, and having known a lot of people whose kids went to St. Luke's, they all drove, right, forever, even as juniors. So again, that's just side issue. I don't know who monitors that, that's not my point. I only know that we have a lot of non-New Canaan residents sitting on North Wilton Road, and a lot of New Canaan residents in the queue. And if I, my earlier question to you, which I appreciate your direct answer, is, if everything stays the same, no change in enrollment, no change to juniors, and then you said, we haven't made that decision, then your traffic, informed traffic professional opinion is that it will improve the situation?
Yes. But my opinion is also that it would improve the situation if the juniors drove.
Yep. Okay. And I heard that, and I got it.
Right. Absolutely.
Maybe, I thought there was a disconnect there, so I apologize if, maybe I missed it, so.
Can I just clarify too, though? I mean, I'm taking a little exception, that we do have a lot of parents who pay exceptional amount of money. We also have an enormous amount of financial aid that we give out.
I understand that.
So there are not, you know, in terms of parents who are not being patient. We have plenty of very patient parents, but we do have an enormous number of our students who are receiving assistance.
I understand that.
From New Canaan and outside of New Canaan.
But again, the question before us as a committee is...
I hear you, I understand that. I just don't want it characterized. I take some exception with the characterization of...
I just have a quick question about the seniors today. How many of those seniors leave campus for lunch? And if you had juniors, would they leave for lunch too?
That's a great question. I, you know, it used to be that seniors would leave more often, particularly back when there were some more local Paradise Pizza, things like that, that were local to St. Luke's. It's not, and in fact, what we find are that seniors are not leaving because parking is an issue. They tend to stay on campus. We also improved our food service. Students are staying, their schedule is so tight that they are not leaving in the way they used to 20, 25 years ago. That's not happening.
But if you create more parking, in theory, it wouldn't be that difficult.
I would agree. If it was our issue of parking, I would say it's much more an issue of club meeting time that's happening during lunch periods, teacher meetings that are happening, college counseling meetings that are taking place. The students don't have time to leave and drive all the way into New Canaan, which it seems close, but it's not. You know, it takes a good 10 minutes to get to downtown New Canaan from St. Luke's. That's 10 minutes down, 10 minutes back. That's not a lot of time to go to Chicken Joe's. So it's a pretty limited time for kids to get out for lunch.
And I just have one more comment on with regard to traffic, and that is the analogy of Yankee Stadium, and look, I leave early from Yankee Stadium because I hate trying to get out of the parking lot. But there, it seems to me that everyone's basically leaving at the same time. And my understanding at St. Luke's is that students and faculty don't all leave at the same time. And so this idea that everyone's going to be fighting to get out of the garage at the same time, I, maybe you can comment on that, Julia, but I assume that kids are staying for after-school activities, sports activities, faculty staying to prepare for the next day or have meetings.
It's a very staggered dismissal in the afternoon. You've got kids staying for after-school activities, they're staying for the newspaper, which ends earlier than basketball practice. There's a college counseling meeting that ends separately from those two. Faculty are staying because we have professional development opportunities after school. We have meetings. So it's, there is no standard dismissal time, which I think, frankly, you often see at other schools in town. We do not have that standard release time. It's very staggered, depending upon the division, depending on the grade, depending upon the faculty, the department, so that varies from day to day.
Commissioners, anything further from...
It occurs to me that there's no advantage to staggered release times unless you get the cars off of North Wilton Road, that you have your staggered release times, but I've got to leave, I've got to get there a half hour early to pick up my kid, because otherwise I can't get through the roads. I can't get up and down Briscoe, and I can't get up and down North Wilton Road. So everybody's behavior has changed, and everybody just expects to burn up an extra half hour on the public roads. So maybe behaviors will change, and maybe you will not use this to open it up indiscriminately to juniors, but you'll manage the situation based on the behaviors you're seeing.
Yeah, and I think that's a really good point. As we said, you know, we have, we have had a public relations effort to work with our parents to not come early. I've thought about, should we put a gate at the front so that parents can't even come on? That would create a terrible problem on North Wilton Road. But we've tried to educate the parents that there's no need to come early. Your child will be waiting for you. When you get there, it's safe, the kids can hang out. But that has been, people do like to get there early and be first. I think that's the nature of people these days. I think it's the nature of New Canaan, people want to be first. So we are changing that behavior, and I think this will help.
So would you also perhaps, you mentioned the idea of kids going off and on campus, and that being a concern. So is it within the school's control, your control, to have a student leave campus during the middle of the day, or is that a competitive issue that...
Oh, no, that's completely under our control, and we will often exercise that. Seniors are the only ones who are permitted to leave campus. They need permission from their parents and approval from us. So if we need to regulate that with students, we do.
So you could perhaps remove that ability if you wanted to reduce traffic, for example?
I'm not sure how it would reduce traffic, because the car is already on campus. You're talking about cars leaving during the day?
Right. Reducing car trips. Because you said earlier, your argument earlier was that by having a student drive to campus, they'd be driving there twice, but then you added the car trip by having the student go downtown, so you...
Yeah, I think that's a really good point, but the problem with traffic on North Wilton Road is not at 11:30 when they have lunch, it's at 4 o'clock in the afternoon. So we could certainly regulate them leaving during the day.
I mean, I think the neighbors are really concerned about just intensity. I mean, it's the same thing, honestly, over at Grace Farms, it's 80 acres and 200 spots. So you're basically having 400 spots on 40 acres, and honestly, a tighter neighborhood. So what I'm concerned about is just whether the school will regulate and be a good neighbor with the increased capacity. So even if it is midday, or if it is at midnight, I think the concern, you know, to the point of having the intensity of use, in terms of having students from other communities join us, how does that impact the residential neighborhood? So I'm just interested in whether the school considers that. So what I'm hearing you say is you wouldn't consider midday traffic an issue?
I don't believe midday traffic is an issue. I haven't heard that it's an issue midday. If it is an issue, we would be certainly open to addressing it.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Finn?
I think if we're satisfied with traffic, Mr. Criss, are you...
I had some questions on non-traffic matters.
All right. I was going to have the engineer, Melissa Flynn, address the commission.
Please, let's keep going with the consultants, and then I'm sure we'll have more questions at the end.
Okay.
The other Venera just has two questions.
Not right now. You'll have to wait.
Does anyone need a bathroom break?
Just please state your name.
Melissa Flynn, from SMRT Architects and Engineers. I'm the civil engineer record for the project. So I think I have nine points. I think some of them are going to answer some of the questions that were raised at the beginning of this, and hopefully Commissioner Criss, I think some of yours will hopefully all address right off the bat. So the first one is related to the memo that we provided to Inland Wetlands about the construction method and the amount of excavation. So one of the things that has been mentioned earlier in previous meetings is that we have unsuitable soil and unstable material, and how are we building on top of that? I can assure you, I'm not a structural engineer, but I know our, I would never stamp anything like that, and I've talked to our structural engineers. It's not that we're basing our design on nothing. We've done borings by a geotechnical engineer, and our structural engineer has reviewed those. And part of our goal of this project, because it is unsuitable soil, the opposition has mentioned that we need to remove all of that to get to sound ground. And that is a, that is a method that we could use. Being right next to the wetlands, we didn't want to impact that much excavation. So we've looked at two methods for different structures for our foundations. So closer to the wetland area, where we do have our unsuitable material, we'll be doing micro piles. So the initial intent is that there'll be three micro piles at each column location. So if you think of it as a stool, so you have your three legs, and then you have your pile cap on top. So those three legs of the stool will go down to ledge, and those will go down to secure material that we can build off of. So then we build up from there. As we move away from the wetlands, we become, the ledge gets a little higher, so we use probably more traditional shallow foundation, or spread footing, that you're probably more familiar with seeing. So again, the intent is to minimize that excavation and removal of material by doing this construction method, which again, it would be a pickup-sized rig that's doing it near each one, kind of piecemeal, as we work our way out of the site, again minimizing that impact within, close near the wetlands. So that's just one item that I know has been mentioned by both commissions, and this commission as well. It's already been mentioned that we've changed getting, not changed, talking about our synthetic turf field, we're using the EPDM infill, which is a virgin rubber. I don't need to harp on that, it's already been mentioned. The third item I wanted to review is the field drainage. And this came up earlier with the way that the field drains, based on the two examples that we do have in our plans, because we have an existing, we have a field that's at-grade, and then we have our field that's on top of the parking structure. So the turf system is the infill, the turf, grass blades, a backing for that, so it's like your carpet in your house. We have our shock pad slash drainage board. And then for the roof condition, we have our waterproofing and then our structural slab. So that is the way that that system is. And then instead of the structural slab, we have four inches of crushed stone at the at-grade. But the water still, the water still flows through that the same exact way. The raindrop hits that infill, goes through the grass blades, it's perforated, as Mr. Trinkus had said. The shock pad is permeable, it goes through that, and then that flows horizontally into our gutter, or through our scupper, into our gutter, down to our closed drainage system. And so then that flows into our practice area, where we have our subsurface storage one. There's 96 storm tech chambers. So what we're losing in a traditional, traditional synthetic turf field at-grade is all of those void spaces within the stone. So we are still having all of that storage for stormwater management in the practice area underneath. So that's what's metering out and making sure our peak flows are meeting our pre-development condition. And then as we move down to the garage level, again, we're treating this like a regular outside, or open-air parking lot, where it's deep sump catch basins into an oil sand interceptor and into the subsurface stormwater system that's, again, a little smaller because it's covered. We accounted for a certain amount of blown-in precipitation, if we get a big snowstorm, even though apparently it doesn't snow anymore in New England, it gets brought in on the car. So again, that's where, that's why that one is much smaller, and that's what we've reviewed with Maria. And again, all of these items have been reviewed by the Weston and Sampson memo and the town engineer. And again, we feel that our initial, our original design was adequate, adding those extra isolator row and the additional snout hood, which again, I, there's been so much information and paperwork. I do know that a manhole can't accept a snout. We would have modified that to a catch basin with a deep sump to make that function properly. It was, let's not add another piece of paper to the commission, and we'll make sure that that worked properly. So I want to assure you that we're aware of that, we're trying to just, again, minimize the paperwork that everything is provided. So those are the two drainage pieces that we have, the roof level and our garage level, and some of the things that have come up since our original presentation in December. So going to what we had provided and you guys had asked for at our December meeting, Steve, Attorney Finn had noted about our photo renderings, so I'm just going to hopefully share my screen. And so this is the memo that we had had provided to you. And then here is the, if I can zoom in a little bit, this is the photo that was taken, which I can go back to this item, to 250 feet away from the corner of the parking lot, or, excuse me, corner of the field within the St. Luke's property. So these two photo, so this photo, obviously, it's the same photo. This one on the left, right here, where my cursor is, once it stops moving with the delay, this photo on the left, that is the current condition. You can see the AC is the brick on the leftish part, and this...
AC is the athletic center?
Yes, I'm sorry, the athletic center. And then you do see a gray band, that's the stone that's on the hill going up to the upper field. And the photo on the right, we have drawn in the structure. So there is, if I zoom in really closely, there is the structure shown right here. So hopefully, on your tablets, and you've had a chance to look at this previously, there is a difference in these photos. And again, just trying to minimize the, or to emphasize how minimal the impact will be. Again, this was taken in December or early January, so there's no leaves on the trees. So this is worst-case scenario for visual impact. These trees normally have leaves on them the rest of the time throughout the year.
So what is, sorry to interrupt, on the left image, what is the structure that's visible to the right of the fieldhouse?
This one? That is the stone, that is the grandstand right now, and the slope going up to the upper field, there's gravel since it's pretty steep. So that's what that yellow and gray is right now.
And the black that's underneath that, is that a fence? What is, do you know what that is?
That is the existing fence line.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
So then, the other material that we provided in this, in this memo, Commissioner Turner, you had asked us to fix the detail of our, of our section, since we had our roof leader dumping right into our footing. We know that that is getting connected into our closed system. But I'm going to keep it on this image for now, because it's going to help explain. The third item that we provided in this was the lighting. Steve did a great job describing it already, but we provided the cut sheet of it, it's full cutoff. And again, the key here is that the lights that are closest to the neighbors are going to be 12 feet inboard of the edge of the upper field. So it's going to be right in this area, right in here. So we're going to be 12 feet inboard of our edge of field, and it's also going to be tucked up underneath several of our beams, which there is, I believe right now we have it at 10 inches, so it's going to be actually tucked up up here for most of the view along the neighbor side. But again, the key, the key part of...
Is there a spandrel that's spanning between those columns along that line?
Yes.
That'll drop down to shield the light?
Yes. So, and then the other, again, the big key thing, though, is really the controls that we're providing. So I think I counted, we have 49 fixtures throughout the whole... So, I think I counted, we have 49 fixtures throughout the whole footprint, and each one of those will be motion sensors. So, the question that came up earlier is, all of them will turn on, and that is not the case. It will go, kind of, as you walk through it, it'll turn on, and then, as you drive out, they will all turn off as that goes after 10 minutes. So, that, I see some eyes and questions. That is the end. The last piece of this is the tree inventory that we had been asked to, and Bill Kenny was going to address those. But I don't know if we want to open up to questions, or have Bill go through environmental?
Hi, this is Commissioner Chris, I have a question. I'm going back to the letter I quoted earlier from SMRT on the dated 18 March of this year, mentions the response, and then SMRT response, and it was signed by you, so that's why I'm asking you. So, this is on page two of the document. WSC, the Water District, says that they weren't talking about leaves, they're talking about other stuff, so I kind of caught that one, too. Nice try. Anyway, they go on, it said that AT fields, or that's artificial turf fields, are known to lose a small percentage of debris from the infill in artificial plastic, glass, and grass annually. Okay. Some of this material can get quite small, didn't say exactly what that means, but okay. And so, leaf guard may not sufficiently stop smaller artificial turf debris from getting into the closed storm drainage system. The current closed storm drainage system, which is piped to subgrade detention system SSS-1, does not have a means for capture of smaller sediment, which they just discussed, and would be a concern that debris could pass through the system and be discharges, discharge, I should say, to the adjacent natural resources. They recommend that the SSS-1 system be modified to include an isolator row, which you mentioned, similar to what has been proposed for system SSS-2. They go on to say include that the isolator row would be sufficient to capture the artificial turf debris, and would provide a means for maintenance, friends, removal slash disposal of the debris. What I understand from this is that the stuff will go in here, it gets caught, the tank, whatever it is, fills up, someone comes in, pumps it out, takes it off-site, and does whatever they're gonna do with it, in layman's terms. The response from you, madam, they understand the concern of loose debris, and I quote again what I said earlier, travel path that run off through the geotextile backing and the shock pad will act as a filter. There's no information on exactly how these are rated as filters for this type of material. So, I have no idea whether this is gonna work or not. You're asserting that it is with no information I can find. To prevent small particles, we're not sure what small means, from the infill of or grass blades from entering the gutter, and therefore, the particles from turf or infill will not migrate, they get caught in this. Now, I have air filters in my home, I have some in my office, and I'm the guy who actually changes the filter, and so I can tell you they get gunked up, and you have to get rid of them. So, in other words, I'm assuming, I have to assume that the geotextile and shock pad, assuming for the sake of argument, they actually do capture this stuff adequately. Again, hasn't been demonstrated to me, that at some point, said, okay, it's filled up, and now I gotta change it, like I had to change the air filter. So, again, I'm not sure what the lifespan of the geotextile backing and shock pad will be, assuming it is an effective filter, how long before it reaches, gee, it's all gunked up, but it's caught a lot of stuff, can't do anymore, and which would mean that it's gotta go somewhere else, and perhaps flows off into the wetlands, flows off into wells, flows off someplace. So, this is my concern. So, end of statement, please help me.
Sure. So, I can't define small particle by measurement, which I should as an engineer, everything should be cut and dry. My interpretation is that it's the breakdown of that infill. And the infill is pretty robust, like you're not seeing a lot of -- it's not breaking down after two games. So, again, the backing of the carpet, of the synthetic turf, you don't see a ton of material going through that when you peel up an old field at grade. There's not--
So, you're saying the speed of degradation is not that quick?
Yes, correct. And so, we have that part, and then, this field will have the shock pad, which is, again, depending on the manufacturer, has a geotextile, or it's a manufactured plastic poly, not sure which ones, I'm not gonna say which one. But that is, again, that's a manufactured product that has that geotextile around it. And we've, again, from other fields, we've seen there's not a pool of infill on top of these as we peel back to replace them, because the fields, I mean, this field for St. Luke's is 18 years old. The standard life of synthetic turf field is warranted for eight years, so you're getting 10 to 12 years out of a well-maintained one. And again, so we're seeing that degradation from other areas. And again, we're not seeing that piling up afterward. So, that is not a scientific answer of how much it's going to, but just from observations of other fields that we've worked on and replaced in place. And part of that rebuttal, second response about the snout feature, that is, if it does all go through there, it doesn't do what I'm saying it's going to do, and does end up in our closed system, that is going to keep those things from entering into our downstream subsurface storage system that is holding all of our water.
So, how can the commission gain comfort that the geotextile backing and shock pad actually are rated, and how they're rated as filters, as claimed in the note here?
I guess we can't, but hopefully, the addition of that snout feature at the upstream point of our subsurface storage will, like that is rated for capturing these sorts of things, just from experience. We think that this is going to help, but if that doesn't do what I think it's going to do, that snout that we're providing upstream is going to do it, and there's manufacturer, there's information that says how many total suspended solids that takes out.
Why not simply, Commissioner Chris, again, simply install the isolator row, which is what they're requesting?
So, they had--
They seem to think it's a good idea. I haven't gone into whether it is a good idea, but they seem to think it is, so I'll spot them on that for the moment.
It is, and they did provide us two options, so that's why we picked number one, or option number two. The reason that the isolator row might not be the ideal solution for this subsurface one is getting access to it, because that is all the way on the far side, outside of our parking garage. So, getting that vac truck in there is going to be a little more challenging than the one that we have right in the maintenance yard that's outside of our parking garage. So, it really was a maintenance, I think that was mentioned earlier, obviously, we know we need to maintain all of these facilities. So, that one worked because we can get to it. This one isn't as easy to get to. The manhole, or which will be transferred, or updated to a catch basin, so the hood works. We can get something in there to maintain it much easier than the isolator row that would be at the practice field outside the structure.
Final question, it's the penultimate paragraph in the response here, last sentence in the response, it says, "As the information about," this is what you wrote, "as the information about microplastics is advancing, providing containment curb around fields at grade is one of the best management practices recommended for preventing the migration of small particles outside the field system." I'm not sure what you meant by information about microplastics is advancing. It sounds like, you know, we're not quite sure, I'm reading this as well, we're not quite sure what the best way is, but this, the best way, I think, we figured out at the time.
And that is, again, as these materials break down, and as microplastics and concern about microplastics is increasing, again, we're next to a natural resource, we want to protect that. At grade, a lot of the, if towns are requiring microplastic treatment, because right now there is no current standard for doing that, it's having a containment curb and a grate that you, again, you clean out at grade, it's a trench drain like that, so it stops it. So, that's another piece of our entire, or most of our field is, besides where the stairs are and where the turf comes up to the grandstand, that's all contained. So, if anything does migrate that way, it's staying within the field proper.
That's my question, thank you, Ms. Flynn.
Can I just jump in for just a second?
Please.
So, just so everyone's clear, that the letter of 318 was, there was another round of correspondence after that. You look like you're aware of it, I just want to make sure the record is clear, that the letter from SMART of 318 was not the last pronouncement on complying with Weston and Sampson's requirements. And so, there was a subsequent addition of the snout, and at that point, Weston and Sampson said, we're fine, we're good, everything is fine here. Lastly, you know, you submitted your CV, right?
Yes.
All right, so I just, for the record, you know, Ms. Flynn has extensive experience with artificial turf fields, extensive. And so, I would refer you to her CV if you really want to be impressed about her experience with artificial turf fields. That's all I have in response to Mr. Chris's point.
Commissioners?
You were saying, you're saying the letter from Trinkus Engineering on the 22nd has been answered.
No, sorry, Mr. Trinkus, there was, I don't have the dates, but there was additional--
That came after.
Yeah, can you trace--
Because he does talk about the snouts in that letter.
Yes.
And he raises questions. There's probably four questions, I could outline them, in the 22nd. It is after the 18th, and the only thing after that is the First Taxing District summary letter on the 25th.
So, we got the 318 letter from Weston and Sampson, and we represented, at the Inland Wetlands Commission hearing, to Attorney McCann, who represents the First Taxing Water District, that we would comply with their last request. And Attorney McCann represented at the Inland Wetlands Commission that we had met all their recommendations and had agreed to all their conditions. And then, he wrote a letter that was submitted yesterday, reiterating that, that was addressed to Sarah and to this commission. And so, with all respect, we've got, as I mentioned before, we have three engineers now who feel that this system is more than adequate to guard against environmental issues. We've got Maria Koplak, who's an independent engineer, who signed off on the original design by SMART, and then it's signed off on the additional belt and suspenders recommendations, conditions recommended by Weston and Sampson. We have Weston and Sampson, and we have SMART. And so, we've got three out of four, and I think that's sufficient. And with all respect to Mr. Trinkus, you know, he's out there by himself.
Point of clarification, though, I believe Maria Koplak's letter said that it complied with the town drainage policy, she made no representation about environmental conditions.
Well, she did say in front of Inland Wetlands Commission that she had no concerns about that, and that this field was using now the same, she asked about the infill, and that was an indication that we, she was curious about environmental contaminants from crumb rubber, and that we, she asked us to specify what the infill was, and we indicated to her that it was not gonna be crumb rubber, that it was this EPDM. And she said that that's the same material that's used in all the new Canaan fields.
My only point is that her letter referred to the drainage commission, and I'm just--
I agree with the letter, the letter does, only talks about the drainage, yes. But I would refer you to, as Mr. Green referred you to her Inland Wetlands Commission testimony, I would refer you to that as well.
I've watched.
Okay, thank you.
Which is not testimony before this commission.
Well, if you're gonna watch it from Mr. Green, you might as well watch it for the applicant as well, but that's fair.
So, one more question for you on the lighting. The little cut sheets for the light fixture are in the package. You have the cross-section, which you described the position of the lights, but did you actually run a lighting study to show the angle of incidence on the lighting and how it will migrate out from the structure and where the cutoffs are? Again, going back to those renderings of, you know, from neighboring properties, it's not just seeing the structure illuminated, which it needs to be for safety and for the obvious reasons, but what we're trying to avoid is what I'll call the Grace Farms effect, right? The big glowing building in the background. We don't want that, right? There is an opportunity here, given the way the structure is designed, that additional elements could be added to the overhang portion that does not affect the garage, that could block the lighting further, if the applicant would be acceptable to that, but we just want to make sure that the lighting would not affect the neighbors.
Yeah, so we, in the original plan, we do have the photometrics, but I know you're more talking about that glow piece of it. Our opinion is, based on the location and how much it is being shielded by the actual structure itself, and also the distance from the adjacent properties and the amount of screening, which, when Bill comes up here and talks about the trees, the 600-plus trees that are between us and the wetlands area and the properties, there, our opinion is, there's sufficient natural screening to mitigate that glow that could be potentially displeasurable to the neighbors.
Have you done a cross-section to show the actual, in that east-west direction, to show the structural members, the depth of the girder beam, the position of the light, relationship to the edge, all of that, so that, rather than just, you know, a highlight on a schematic diagram?
I know our, I've talked to our electrical engineers, I don't know, like, we didn't include it in the package, I know they had looked at it from that perspective, and I can, we can provide those cross-sections as a condition. I just don't have them at my fingertips. I know our electrical engineer looked at them that way and did not have concerns. But again, we didn't formalize them into presentation-worthy material.
Commissioners, anything further? We're almost there.
So, you made the comment earlier about throwing a lot of spaghetti at the wall and seeing what sticks, and that you have no idea, you know, what we're thinking, unless we let you know what we're thinking. I know that your point resonates, that you have met the standard of the town engineer and Sampson, Weston and Sampson, and the First District. I understand. But I will say that it has stuck with me, what Mr. Green said once a long time ago, which is, it is, the standard is on you to prove that it is safe, not the neighbors to prove that you are unsafe. So, that is why I have to kind of side with Mr. Chris, when he says, I want to understand when doubts are raised about the size of a small particulate, and when doubts are raised, whether this is meeting the standard, you know, the design standard of the manufacturer. And those questions in the Trinkus letter of the 22nd were not addressed in your dialogue on the 25th with First Water District and with Cary. So, that's a doubt, and it has not been answered, I think, for Mr. Chris's satisfaction, and perhaps others. So, I'm gonna propose to you what I think might end up being a condition, which is that you say, we've designed a system, and it is safe, and we're confident it's safe, and our experts say it's safe, but there are doubts in the neighbors' minds. And so, it seems to me that where we're heading here is ongoing testing of this, to make sure that the maintenance is done properly, and that the particulates don't end up downstream, and that it may satisfy the First Taxing District, which is further away, and it may affect them differently than it affects some of the neighbors. So, it just seems to me that, for some of us, a testing standard might have to be, the neighbors don't have the right to come on to St. Luke's property and test, and they made that point also at some point in the presentation, that they don't have the right. So, once we approve this-- So once we, once we approve this, you know, they don't get to come and test for the next 10, 20 years. I know of sites in town that have had environmental impact, and I can think of one in particular where Chevron has been required for the last 20 years to hire an independent company to test the groundwater and take a groundwater sample every year for the next 20 years. So I'm hoping that you'll, you'll, now this last doubt, you'll answer this doubt that must be lingering, which is, how do we know? You can point and say that plastics, microplastics, is not a standard in the state of Connecticut, but I'm looking at studies all up and down, which says, but it's becoming more important, and it's becoming a standard, and it's been bandied about. So I know that there are lingering doubts, and I know that some of us will probably want to know, what is the ongoing standard for testing to find, for things that have not been asked and answered by First Taxing? That's the spaghetti that's sticking on the wall for me.
Well, I appreciate you sharing that. And let me first say that you haven't heard from everyone on our team yet, and Mr. Kenny has a lot to say with regard to these types of issues. And, you know, I don't, I also want to remind everyone that there is a field there now, okay? A deteriorating field with crumb rubber. And so the question is, our position is, is that that is the standard by which you should evaluate this application. But, but I can understand why you think, well, legally, that may be the case.
Legally, that may be the case.
That did not sound good. So legally, that, that is the case, okay? Factually, I can understand as responsible commissioners to our community why you want more than that, okay? And, and I think we've done a very good job of giving you more than that. But let's do this. Let, let Mr. Kenny address you, and then let's revisit your concerns. I'm not saying that you're going to be completely 100% satisfied, but that is, that's not the standard either. And so let's hear from Mr. Kenny, and then let's, let's get back to it. I will, I do want to put this out there now that, and maybe Ms. Kerry has views on this, but we, we have to be careful that, that in placing conditions, you don't make your approval contingent on something that should have been done now. If you come to the conclusion that in the end, that you want some kind of monitoring into the future and reports to be made in the future, that's fine.
You're talking to a guy who has to vote on the basketball schedule at Grace Farms forever. So I don't think it's without precedent to ask for a schedule where we continue to revisit this, because that may be the only way we put some of these concerns to bed. And I don't know that everybody shares my concerns or that I have many, but I do think that, that we're heading there. I'd love for you to suggest the solution rather than we impose one.
So that's fine, and I don't want to get bogged down in semantics, but revisit makes it sound like you're going to re-decide the application based on further information. And that, that would be a problem for all of us.
I want to vote for your basketball schedule is what I want to do.
Okay. All right. Well, look, let's hear from Mr. Kenny and...
Thank you. I can...
Why don't you take, why don't you get your thoughts together, and then I'll hear from Mr. Phil?
Good evening. I'm Bill Kenny, the principal of William Kenny Associates in Fairfield, Connecticut. I am a professional landscape architect and land use ecologist. I've been licensed for over 30 years and have been practicing as a landscape architect and a land use ecologist for those 30 years. I'm a graduate of the Yale School of the Environment, where I obtained a degree in environmental management. In addition, I'm a professional wetland scientist and a soil scientist. I spend my time being both a scientist, a natural resource scientist, and a designer. I spend my time working with property owners such as the school to better understand the natural resources that are on their property, and also working with them and understanding their land use goals to find a way to protect the natural resources or improve them. And having the benefit of working in metro New York, we, I have, much of our work is on what I call redevelopment projects, such as this, where we're working on a piece of land where there's already development, and we're redeveloping that and able to bring it up to current standards, which creates an opportunity to help improve the environmental conditions and natural resources on the property. And I think this project is a prime example of that, where there will be an improvement to the environmental conditions of the property. So what I'd like to do is, since I have not presented to you yet, is to go through the research that we did for the property, to make the initial submission that we did, and then also review with you some documents that we submitted more recently in response to comments from town staff and the Wetlands Agency and your, your commission, as well as the public. So we initially got involved with the project in 2022 to identify and map out where the inland wetlands and watercourses are on the property, particularly those near the proposed redevelopment of the athletic field. And then in 2023, we were asked to get involved and work with the school and the other professionals on their team to, with regard to the actual redevelopment of the field. So at that stage, we went out and did more studies about the wetlands and other natural resources on the property. So we inventoried them and assessed their condition and quality, assessed the conditions of the developed area of the property, the existing field, and then worked with the team, looked at the proposed development and said, made suggestions of how perhaps things could be changed to improve that. And then after going through all that process, we came to the conclusion that the project would, would not adversely affect the wetlands or watercourses or other natural resources. Then, then we started the review process with the town, and other comments came up, and we did additional work after that. The primary reasons for our conclusions have to do, there's three primary reasons. One is that it is a redevelopment. And redevelopment can happen in different ways, although the, the site is some 40 acres or more. The project area is about three acres, and because it is on the existing field, we're avoiding significant direct impacts to existing natural resources. Like, we're the, some six acres of forest that is immediately west of the field, there are, we estimate roughly 600 trees that are 10 inches or larger in size. And if we were to put that field out into that forest, we'd be eliminating hundreds of trees. With the current design, we have counted, there's 12 trees of 10 inches or larger that will be removed. And they're actually trees that have grown up since the field in this area was initially developed in the 90s. In the mid 90s, this area was leveled off, and on the western side, a steep bank was created, and large boulders were put on that bank to help stabilize that. And it's amazing, on that bank of boulders today are where these 12 trees are growing. They've grown up out of those boulders. And so with some of the work that is proposed, we'd be removing 12 trees that have grown up since the 90s, when the, the initial field was put in. And then some, some, 18 years ago is when the field was converted to a synthetic field. And, and so now, the fact that we are building within that footprint, and the fact that a synthetic field already exists, that is a huge reason for being able to keep or improve existing, the natural resource conditions on the property, the environmental conditions on the property. So if this project were to be denied, you'd still have that field there, you'd still have stormwater runoff and, from that field, or infiltration of water from that field. And so the next thing is, because we're not really, we're not working in the natural resource areas, we're not building in the wetlands or the stream, we look at what we consider indirect impacts. And they're, in a situation like this, they're primarily related to water management, and as water passes through a developed area and then makes its way to a natural, natural area, it has the potential to carry pollutants with it and then contaminate that area and cause impacts to that area. This project will, and there's two ways to mitigate that. One is to reduce the source of pollutants. So if you change how you manage that land in such a way so that you're discharging less pollutants, that's a good thing. And the other is to improve how much of those pollutants you remove from that water before it reaches the wetlands or watercourses. And with this project, we're doing both of those things. We're both reducing the source of pollutants and then having a more treatment, additional treatment, and removing more pollutants. So because we're developing within the same footprint, we are reducing the source of pollutants, and we're increasing the removal of pollutants. That's the basis for our conclusions, that the project will improve the environmental conditions. So let's look at some of those, how we're reducing the source. One is the improved field material. The, there's a couple of improvements there. One is the, no longer using the crumb rubber, which is recycled rubber from tires that may have more heavy metals and other contaminants in it, and we're now going to use the virgin rubber, this EPDM, that has less of those constituents. And the other is working with, and responding to Weston and Sampson's recommendations, the use of a field that will not have the, the PFAAS material. The, so this field, they've asked that none of the field materials have those PFAs, which are commonly known as forever chemicals. And so the school has agreed to do that, to put in a field that does not have those chemical compounds. And in addition, Weston and Sampson has asked for certain protocol for handling of the removal of the existing field, and that that be done in such a way that there's a record of where that, what that material is and where it's taken off-site, needs to be taken off-site and disposed of in a legal and careful manner, and, and recorded, and the school has agreed to do that. And then also with the soil that underlies the field, to do testing in accordance with state standards, so that, to confirm whether or not that material is contaminated in some way. If it is, it would be cleaned, but, so the school has agreed to do that testing and, and to make sure that that material is handled in an appropriate way to ensure that, again, that there's not impacts to the natural resources. Next is the increase in, well, no, another interesting item related to reducing pollutant sources is, gets back to the traffic management that was discussed earlier. That, all of that work to increase the amount of parking, particularly under the roof deck under this parking structure, is, has great environmental benefits, just doesn't, not only does it help traffic flow in the, in the neighborhood, but it has great environmental benefits when you, so we're taking cars that are queuing on the street, we're taking cars that are parked on a tennis court, and we're taking those and putting those under a protected parking structure. So when there's runoff from those cars in the street, runoff, stormwater runoff from those cars on a tennis court, there are not management practices in place in those areas to capture that runoff and to clean it before it's discharged to wetlands and watercourses. So now by moving those cars into and under a protected surface, that's a great improvement, a great reduction in, in pollutants making their way, potentially making their way to a stream or a wetland. And, and then next with the, lastly, there's an increase in pollutant removal, based on the work that SMRT has done, and then working with the town engineer and Weston Sampson and the First Water District. The current plan will have a stormwater management system that is up to current standards, where the existing project does not have that. And this is similar to, quite often you see redevelopment where someone takes down a house and puts up a new house, and the old house maybe was built 80 years ago and has a septic system that is substandard, and now you put in a new house and you bring, bring up, put in a new septic system up to current standards. So the drainage improvements are more than 20 years old that exist with the existing field, and the new field will have this new system that has been reviewed by these, the town and the water district, and based on that, improved treatment and the reduction in pollutant load. It's my professional opinion that there will not be an adverse impact, and that we can actually have improvement to the conditions in the wetlands and watercourses and adjacent upland areas that are currently maintained as woodland. So in addition to that work, there was three other things I'd like to review with you. And the results of that work that I just reviewed with you was a report that we did regarding the wetland delineation, and then another report regarding our assessment of the wetlands and watercourses and the project. Since then, and those reports were from 2022 and 2023. In 2024, we prepared a brief letter, one letter regarding subsurface water quality testing that we conducted. The, whenever we look at a project like this, there's, we, we look at it and say, okay, what type of evaluation of existing conditions do we need to do to be able to complete our work? If we were working within the wetland, if it wasn't a redevelopment project, if this was a virgin property, and we were cutting down 300 trees and, and encroaching within the wetland, we would do a lot more testing within the wetland. But because we're working within an existing footprint, that it's, it wasn't necessary for us to complete our assessment and come to our conclusion. We didn't need to do a year of water quality testing to be able to come to that conclusion. So we, we didn't need to do any testing, per se. But the, the neighbors did hire a consultant, and they did some testing. So we figured, well, okay, let's, and they found, they did, tested water at a stream, one inflow into the property, just before the water entered the property, and they found the water to be good, good water quality. And, and that's just a snapshot, you know, to really do a quality assessment you want to test over a long period of time in different conditions, storms, season, and so forth. So, but I understand it was just one time. I was surprised that they didn't, they had an opportunity to test where water left the property, but that wasn't done. And I would, I would have done that. You want to see if it's clean when it's coming in, is there a contamination issue? You'd want to check where it leaves the property. That wasn't done. So we, and there's two streams entering the property. So we just tested at two, in two streams where they, where flows in, and we tested where the water leaves the property. And we found that the quality was, we also found it was good on that one time that we tested, good water quality. And it was equally well, you know, we, we tested for a variety of parameters. Some of the parameters were, there was better quality when the water was leaving the property than when it entered the property. So, but in general, it was substantially the same, and good, good water quality. So we have submitted that to you and to the Wetlands Agency. And then at the, your last meeting, when concerns were raised about wells, we worked with the school, because the school does regular testing per Connecticut law. They have to test, they have three wells on their property. They have to test, they have three wells on their property and they have to test that on a regular basis. And depending on the constituents, they test at different frequencies. But they test for general water quality, bacteria, color, odor, nutrients, and that's done more regularly. And then they also test for heavy metals and that's done less frequently. And along with our letter, a, there was a letter from Aqua Environmental Lab has been testing the school's water since 2013 and they provided a, a letter regarding the results of their testing from that time. And in that letter dated February 23rd, 2024, they say, "We can confirm that the water at St. Luke's at the time of this letter is safe for consumption, free from any harmful contaminants and that no presence of heavy metals have been detected." And they, some of the tests for metals are every three years and somewhere every six months, but the general water quality is every three months that they do that testing. So then we decided, we know, we recognize that well data is available for all wells, all private wells and there, there's records at the town. So we looked through the town records to look at that. We wanted to see if the, the athletic fields on the property are at one elevation, how deep are the wells and what's the gradient? Are the bottoms of those wells below or above the fields? If there was contaminants coming off the fields that could make their way down to the wells, are the wells at an elevation where they could be affected? And we found that the wells around the property were, they're all at an elevation that's below the fields on the property. So there's groundwater movement is complex. It's difficult to map exactly where it's going to move, but you know it's not going to move up. So then we looked, so we were able to document that the wells are below. And then we looked at the test results. Many are taken from the faucet. And so if there's treatment in the, in the home, you're testing after treatment. But we were able to find one sample that it was tested before treatment and that showed, that was an offsite property immediately adjacent. That showed that the water quality was acceptable and safe for consumption. We did do, I talked about the trees. There were some questions at the Wetland Agency about the number of trees to be removed. So we did do a very broad review of the approximately six acres of trees immediately west of the field. That's about 350 feet wide. And we found that, you know, in that 600 acres, there is about 600 trees that are 10 inches in diameter or greater. And with the 12 trees that we're proposing to remove that are within the existing development footprint, that that's about 2% of those trees. So we're removing about 2% of those trees. That's, that's what I have for you this evening.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Kenny? Wow, nothing.
I had a, I guess a question. A couple of the letters went into environmental impact at the construction process. And there is a, I completely agree with you and appreciate the, the change in materials and the fact that the new field will be in better materials and that there's great care and remediation of the past, of the past materials and leading detail and really appreciate the applicant's efforts there. A couple of the letters highlighted, you know, the construction traffic and the fact that, okay, yes, if you're replacing the field with the new field, that's like for like. But if you look at the fact that you're building a garage and a structure with all that cubic yardage of concrete, what's the environmental impact of the concrete and the truck trips, et cetera? And how will that be mitigated? Or can, what's the best practice against that?
Right. It, you know, it's pretty standard construction for the region. And the state has developed soil erosion and sediment control measures, a whole manual that, that deals with that. And this site is, it is three acres. It's relatively level, which is, they will not be working on the slope itself that already exists. They'll be working on the, so that's, that's very helpful that it's a relatively level area. There will be certainly a certain amount of earthwork. They need to make excavations for the footings and foundations and then, you know, truck traffic to bring in materials and remove materials. But we, a big part of the work we do is to do site monitoring during construction like that to ensure that the best management practices that are in place, that include perimeter sediment controls, such as the typical steel fencing you would see or sediment traps, that all of those things are in place and being maintained. And right now, I mean, over the last 10 years, we've worked on quite a few projects of this size for Sacred Heart University in Fairfield, where they've put in a number of new dorms, new athletic fields. And it's been demonstrated with proper design, like the project has, and with proper maintenance and monitoring, that these projects can, a project of this size can be completed in such a way that you can control erosion and then capture sediment and in such a way that you protect those resources that are critical, that are downstream.
So do you believe, so what I'm hearing you say, so thanks for that. So completely, again, agree that the, the like for like replacement of the field makes sense. And then from a construction practices perspective, you know, obviously it's an intensive construction process, but you're saying that your team has been retained to help monitor that process to keep it within the best practices. And then in terms of?
Actually, and I'm remembering now, the last couple of projects that the school has, has completed, we did the site monitoring for the school as a condition of their wetland permitting.
Okay. Got it. And are there any strategies to mitigate the, whether it be the, you know, design of the building or the construction materials that were evaluated to kind of reduce any sort of potential impacts that you see as?
I don't see the need for that with the materials that are proposed. Anything more than, you know, it's pretty, the concretest standard material is used on projects throughout the region. And so I think, as was discussed, the upgrade in the materials for the field is great. But otherwise, the other construction materials are very standard.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Turner, the, in our P O C D, we have a section on sustainability. I don't think I've heard anything about trying to make this building or this new structure conform to, you know, lower carbon footprint. You say, we're going to use standard materials. You know, it's a huge missed opportunity to look at alternative materials that can address sustainability and reducing the carbon footprint, excuse me. Is there any thought being given to this?
I think the, the stacking of the use is, in my opinion, a substantial sustainable design feature for improvements to the local, the immediate local natural resources by putting cars under a protected surface and layering those uses. That is a significant investment into sustainability, in my opinion, and very substantial benefit for sustainability.
But I feel like, I mean, honestly, I mean, the, the amount of CO2 released in the production of the concrete will likely offset the, you know, what, X gallons of oil that might leak out of the cars? So I'm just trying to understand, like, what is your sustainable, like?
The oil leaking from the cars are impacting water quality and organizations.
Yeah, but CO2 is impacting something else. I'm just, I'm just trying to understand, like, what your logic is.
So. I just had a thought slip my mind, but the CO2 in, let me, let me, I'm going to, I had a response to it, but it just slipped my mind. If there's another question, then I'm sure it'll come back to me. Oh, here we go. This is it. By layering it like this, we're not going and clearing a forest to build this field somewhere else. And the amount of those trees would be pulling CO2 out of the air and releasing oxygen. So by layering it like this, we can do it in an area where we're not removing hundreds of trees. And so I really think this is an excellent, excellent, sustainable design.
If we're, to use lead as an example, materials, you know, again, you haven't mentioned anything about alternative concrete, you know, energy saving fixtures, you know, everything's standard. What creativity, what can we do to make this project meet our P O C D and our sustainability?
Can I answer that? I mean, I think it's a really interesting question and it's one that, having led most of building projects on campus, we've always had those conversations. I think the nature of this project is different than a classroom building where you have much more opportunity to think about solar, to think about energy retention, how we face, how we use glass to capture natural light as opposed to electricity. This is a pretty basic project that doesn't, I don't think it, we have the same opportunities as traditional building because I think it's a really interesting question that you raise. But in terms of alternative materials, I don't, I don't know enough about alternative materials that are as strong as the materials that we would need to create this particular structure. I would have much more knowledge if we were talking about a traditional classroom building or a cafeteria or something like that. The nature of this is a little bit different. I don't know if there is, we are certainly moving to a more environmental infill product, for example, rather than using chrome rubber. I think that's much more sustainable. But in terms of the materials that we use to create the field, I think these are about as green as we can get. I don't know about other, the basic concrete buildings, if there's a different material that would be as strong as what is needed for this. Again, I think the nature of this project doesn't lend itself to the same lead opportunities that other projects do.
And, and I would agree with you, but you do have a few opportunities.
Sure.
That you could look at and.
There, there are some things, different admixtures for the concrete. There's a company in Beacon Falls that is using recycled glass. And they're finding that it's quite strong. It's stronger than, and lasts longer than, than other traditional mixes of concrete. So might be something next.
Something to think about.
Absolutely.
Commissioners, anything further for Mr. Kelly? Thank you. Mr. Finn?
Christopher Ross, I was now going to address you.
Good evening again. My name for the record again is Christopher Ross. I am the current chair of the St. Luke's Board of Trustees. And in my volunteer role as a trustee, my 28 fellow trustees and I have a fiduciary duty to safeguard the students, the faculty, the staff, the visitors, the families, the neighbors of St. Luke's. It's a responsibility we take very seriously. I think we've got some very good experts here. We rely on those experts and we hope you can rely on them as well. I'd like to address a couple of inaccurate comments that, that have been made by the opposition. And, and first off, we've heard from the intervenor that St. Luke's has used this process as a workshop. I don't, I don't think that's a fair statement. We presented a very good plan. We listened carefully. When we could, we incorporated thoughtful and fact-based ideas to improve the plan. And I, I don't understand how being responsive is somehow a negative to the intervenor. We are trying to show intentionally that we do care about concerns and we're addressing concerns that are raised. But at the same time, we have, we have the desire and I think the right to, to continue our evolution and our improvement as a, as an educational institution. As you know, that St. Luke's has been, St. Luke's School itself is almost 100 years old. We celebrate our 100th anniversary or centennial in 2028. And we've been on our site at North Wilton Road, which predates almost every residence around the site. It predates every resident around the site. So it's disappointing to us that some of our current neighbors have taken to flyers, to a website, to lawn signs and so forth to sort of stir up opposition using terms like, quote, "It's illegal" or, quote, "It's an abuse of the special permit process." I, I don't understand that at all. That's not even remotely true because it's neither legal nor illegal, seeing as we're in the midst of this very public permit process to establish whether it should or should not be approved. That's why we have this special permit process. And in our view, it's dangerous and irresponsible that those opposing this project resort to those types of cavalier soundbites in an effort to strike up fear. One might say that to do so, that sort of fear mongering is a breach of the public trust. But that's not how a thoughtful and fact-based process works. That process must rely on the facts that we've explained previously tonight by our experts and by the independent experts like Weston and Sampson and Maria Copeland. So it's unfortunate the opposition is largely made up with what I would consider to be sort of partially misleading statements that intentionally represent only a partial truth. So let me offer a quick example. At our last meeting and earlier tonight, Attorney Green referenced the aerial photographs of the campus that he submitted at the last go around. But he didn't provide any context, either because he didn't want to or because he didn't do the research. He didn't tell you the date that the aerial photographs were taken by the satellite, did he? Well, I recognized it immediately because I was there the date those pictures were taken. And I focused in on a grouping of maroon dots right outside the front entry of our school because that was the final time the class of 2023 gathered together as a class seconds before they tossed their caps up in the air because it's our graduation day. So it's actually a pretty cool photo, but in order to prepare our campus for graduation, our maintenance vehicles and buses are all jammed together and, and the maintenance lot, our tennis courts are packed, any available flat areas are available with cars because it's graduation day. This is no different than any other school on their graduation day or perhaps another special permit use like a church on Easter Sunday. The point being, this is not a typical school day and Attorney Green didn't even attempt to recognize that. He only wanted to distort the perspective to show this one image. But from our perspective, let me restate why we're here. We know that we have this parking shortfall and we don't want to use our tennis courts for parking. We would like to use them for tennis. So we proposed to use this previously developed land, as Bill Kenny very thoughtfully explained, for this dual stacked purpose. We create the solution that you heard about earlier from, from our traffic expert that eliminates the traffic congestion. And we only disturb about 1,000 square feet of existing lawn in order to reconfigure an existing parking lot, in order to make the queuing lanes work in our corral, where those waiting cars will now sit, sit still on campus and be turned off instead of idling and creeping forward on North Wilton Road. And as Bill Kenny mentioned just moments ago, we know that we will cut down 12 trees and we have to prune 11 of them. But it's important to recognize that those trees started growing after the original field was built in the 1980s. I mean, I'm older than those trees. Maybe some of you are as well. And we think that's a responsible outcome because, well, what's the logical alternative? The alternative is to create a parking and traffic solution elsewhere on campus, which would require cutting down lots of trees and moving lots of dirt. Bill also referenced that a moment ago. So instead of having parking hidden under a field, it would then be exposed where these trees were cut down. So how is that better for the site? How is that better for the neighborhood? And meanwhile, the alternative is that the existing turf field will remain where it has been for almost two decades. Its drainage systems would not be vastly improved as they would be in this proposed project. But the reality is, as you've heard earlier tonight, that field has had no impact on the wetland or on the water quality. So I have to state the obvious. Attorney Green's clients bought their home in 2022. clients bought their home in 2019. If schools were such a concern to them, why did they buy a home next to a school? Was there a banner on the side of our building that said, "We will never change"? No. His clients have intervened on environmental grounds. And if turf fields represented such an environmental concern to them, I'm not sure why they bought a house next to three artificial turf fields. Three, not four, as Attorney Green has said. So in that vein, let me turn it over quickly to someone who has been here a lot longer than 2019. But before I do that, I'd like to thank you not only for your thoughtful consideration of our proposal based on facts and not fears, but also for your service. Because it struck me this morning that above our front door at St. Luke's, we've etched the words, "Enter to learn, go forth to serve." And we're very grateful, no matter what the outcome is, that you model that mission of service. So thank you very much for your dedication to our community. Julia?
Hello, everyone. Again, uh, as you know, my name is Julia Gabriel. I'm the signatory on this project. So I know you've probably seen my name a few times. But more than a signatory, I'm the one who first proposed this idea. And I want you to know, I did it from a place of genuine care and empathy for the neighborhood in which I live and work. I've been at St. Luke's for 35 years, and I've been a resident of New Canaan for the past 33. I'm currently the Associate Head of School, but I've also been a teacher, a coach, and the advisor to the school's environmental club. In addition, I've been a mom to three St. Luke's graduates, and, believe it or not, three current grandchildren who are in the school. I've also been co-chair of every building project for the past 25 years. I also think I have a special understanding and empathy for the neighbors, because I live just three short miles from campus in one of the oldest homes in New Canaan that my husband and I have spent a lifetime lovingly restoring. It sits directly across from a nonprofit that is also operating by special permit in a residential zone. So all this is to say, I have a very keen understanding of what it's like to be on the other side of an organization like St. Luke's, on the other side of an issue. And like, to be directly across, I care very deeply about St. Luke's and care very deeply for, for New Canaan. So for those opposing this project, who characterize the school in the public record, on social media, on anonymous websites, as deceitful, uncaring, and having a complete disregard for historic preservation, and who describe the project as garbage, environmentally irresponsible, hazardous and ill-conceived, and I'm using direct quotes, I take that very, very personally. For every building project that I've represented before you for the past 25 years, the issue of traffic has arisen. Has the school grown? Yes. But so has every other school in New Canaan. And so have the number of cars on the road. All of us, no matter what side you're on, can agree that traffic has gotten steadily worse over the years, no matter where you are. Two parents working have put more cars on the road. Families own more cars. I guess all of us here tonight have more cars in our family now than we did when we were children. The accessible economics of cars and the complexity of schedules has added to the problem. It's not just St. Luke's that owns the traffic on North Wilton Road. We all know that that has become a major cut through from Wilton. But even given all of that, St. Luke's has responded. We've set up carpooling. We've contracted with multiple bus companies. We've limited driving privileges to seniors only. We staggered our schedules. We've hired police officers on especially heavy days such as holiday weekends and early dismissals. All efforts that not have been, have not been required of any other school in New Canaan. And speaking of other schools, I've heard repeatedly that St. Luke's has outgrown its campus, that we should be like Brunswick and Greenwich and just go buy another campus. And I'd like to take a moment to talk, to talk about that and shed some light on that statement. If I take every other school in New Canaan, also located in residential zones, and compare their population to their acreage, you can easily calculate a density factor, or students per acre number. For example, New Canaan High School has about 1,200 kids on nearly 24 acres. That works out to 53 students per acre. East School, 29. South, 42. Saks, right up the street, 32. St. Luke's currently has 596 students on 45 acres. So our density number is 13 students per acre. Let me repeat that. It's 13. New Canaan High is 53. St. Luke's is 13. And let's even add Brunswick to the mix, since they've been held up as a pillar of expansion. First of all, Brunswick starts in pre-kindergarten. Brunswick purchasing a parcel to use for their early childhood programs is simply not applicable to any comparison with St. Luke's. But for this exercise, let's just focus on their high school, just their high school, which has 433 kids on 14 acres in downtown Greenwich, a density number of 31. If you took our entire school, all our grades, grades five through 12, not just the high school, let me remind you, it's 13. The point is, we're significantly less than these other schools. So I think it's clear that St. Luke's has not outgrown its campus. And indeed, it is a beautiful campus with natural forest, a sparkling pond, and a bubbling stream. A campus I will note that our neighbors have loved walking, biking, and jogging through. They've borrowed our fields for family reunion pickup games. They regularly walk their dogs on it. Some have sent their children to our school, and have even been on our payroll as substitute teachers. St. Luke's is an asset, not just to its neighborhood, but to this town. I would be happy to submit to the commission a list of the many, many times the town has used our campus for youth sports, library functions, safety training for both police and fire departments. And none of this mentions the thousands, literally thousands, of New Canaan students and families we've served for nearly 100 years. As I said, we are an asset to this town. And we love the green of our campus. I literally take my students out every single spring to pick ramps and fiddleheads to be cooked in the school cafeteria. I do that. Which is why this project is so important to me and for all of us. It preserves green. It keeps the rest of the campus undisturbed. Again, the campus our neighbors enjoy. A field that already exists, that has existed for nearly 20 years, gets repaired and raised thanks to our campus's unique topography, and parking relocated underneath it to convert a current parking lot to open space that will absorb a queue of cars that is currently sitting every day on North Wilton Road. This project makes that go away. And no longer will this commission ever have to hear about cars backing up on North Wilton Road again. This project is good for the school, it's good for the neighborhood, and it's good for the town of New Canaan. It's an innovative solution, and it's a brilliant idea. It's brilliant because it solves both the needs of the school, the town, and the neighborhood. I'm very proud to propose this project as both a representative of St. Luke's and a concerned and longtime resident of New Canaan. And I have confidence that all of you will carefully evaluate the facts and benefits that this project brings to everyone. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Anything else, Mr. Finn?
Yes, I, I have some rebuttal to Mr. Green's comments, but I think in fairness, if Mr. Green, if you're going to allow Mr. Green to ask questions of our experts, now is the time. You know, I, I want, I want to state for the record that I was limited in the questions I could ask of his experts. And I think fundamental fairness, which governs this procedure, requires Mr. Green, who's had so much opportunity to present his positions repeatedly, be, keep it very, very short. And that's what I would ask. And it's getting late, so.
I would agree. Thank you. Mr. Green?
Very, very briefly, I don't know that this commission.
For the record, Joel Green.
I don't know that this commission limited Mr. Finn asking questions of consultants, but it doesn't really matter.
To Ms. Tarallo. I have just two questions, just so that we're all on the same, uh, how many, when you did the calculations that lead to the number of spaces that are going to be in the, used in the garage and did the offset, how many spaces do you count being on the site?
Parking spaces?
Correct.
I counted how many cars were extending, because my concern was the queue. We already knew the car, the school was overparked. So I counted on the parking, on the tennis courts. On the day I did it, it was 22 cars on the tennis courts.
So I note in your report, you don't mention the gross number of parking spaces on the school site, correct?
No. I just note in my study that it's full, and that it's overflowing to the tennis courts. So it's, that's why I defer to exactly how many are striped on the site.
All right. Uh, I was just going to note for the commission that there's 167, I, based on my count of the site plan that was produced, it showed 100, I counted 167 spaces on the site plan. So I just want to put that into the record.
I counted 160.
Okay. Well, there's a couple, two spaces. I also counted, included in the site is that property to the south, I think. Had two spaces on it, and there are a couple of other, well, close enough, 160.
Okay.
I have no further questions of this witness. Mr. Kenny? You testified repeatedly tonight that there were great environmental benefits, and you avoid pollutants reaching a wetland or water course by parking them, uh, in this proposed structure. Is that correct?
Yes.
And repeatedly, you said, "great benefit."
Yes.
And that's because there are metals, oils, petroleum, and other products that come off these cars regularly, that, when it rains?
Yes, or they may, um, yes, or they may drip onto the pavement, and when they're not there, it rains on that surface.
And you talked about the benefits of the treatment, the, um, treatment train that is in, that is proposed to deal with metals and particulates and the like that is proposed by the applicant. Is that correct?
Correct.
And that's because it helps remediate, or eliminate, or remove grit, petroleum products, metals, and so forth. Is that correct?
Yes.
So to the intervenor's point, where right now, according to, um, Mr. Rossow, there are 80 cars parked on the parking lot. Uh, there's no treatment for those sorts of materials on the tennis court. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
And so when the intervenor, and the intervenor's petition, one of its grounds for pollution existing on the site is that right now, there are cars, 80 cars being parked on the tennis court, and by Mr. Rossow's testimony. And so, uh, that is a basis to find that there could be environmental impacts from that. Is that correct?
There could be.
And, well, you said it was a great benefit to put them in the ground, under, I'm sorry, in the building. So it's a pretty fair assumption that there's no treatment at all, uh, on the tennis court, correct?
I, I wouldn't say no. There are wooded buffers between wetlands and water courses. You can see you're going to get some, there's not formal treatment. So I, to say no, I'm not sure there's some treatment occurring.
Well, those compounds are washing off the tennis court. And in any event, they're ending up in the soils around the tennis court. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Uh, you, um, are, you indicated that there's an improvement by virtue of the turf field, a new turf field being put in and replacing the old field. Correct?
Yes.
And by my count, based on the aerial photograph, there are four turf fields on the site. Are you aware of that?
I know there's other athletic fields, like, whether it's three or four, I know there's other.
And you heard, and you indicated that you did this testing in response to the presentation by the applicant, submissions by the applicant. Is that correct?
By the neighbors.
By the neighbors.
I'm sorry, by the.
By your experts.
I'm corrected. It's late. I apologize. Uh, by the intervenor.
Correct.
And you heard the testimony by Dr. Tian and Mr. Logan, is that correct?
I did.
And you heard their testimony that there were compounds that were, that are discharged from the chrome rubber infill, whether it's virgin rubber, or whether it's, uh, chrome rubber. You heard Dr. Tian's testimony that there are compounds released from it. Is that correct?
That there could be, yes.
Well, he testified that.
He asked, he answered the question.
Mr. Green, we, we don't need to recite the.
Fair enough.
Same responses he's already given. If you have any new questions for him?
All right, here's, the wind-up is, why is it, with all of this testing, you didn't test for the compounds, including PFAs, and the compounds identified by Dr. Tian? Why you didn't recommend to your client that they test for those materials in the order to provide some comfort to this commission and to the interveners?
As I discussed earlier, you, we consider, we could, uh, evaluate a property at a PhD level of intensity, but for our purposes, we're comparing it to existing conditions. And because it's a redevelopment project, where we're redeveloping within the same footprint, and a field already exists there, and I know that we're going to upgrade that field, both in its materials and its treatment. It's not, whether there's, that'd be interesting, whether there's PFAs there. But we are putting in a field that has, will have no PFAs. So that is enough for me to know. I don't need to do that testing to complete my work, complete my evaluation.
And, and.
I know, I don't believe Mr. Logan didn't test for that either.
Well, Mr. Logan was testing the water entering the wetland, wasn't he?
Right, and he could have tested it when it left the property.
All right, all right. I'm not going to belabor this. You're now aware that there are PFAs detected in groups reservoir. Is that correct?
I understand from your testimony this evening.
Oh, you didn't see the materials?
I haven't seen the materials.
Well.
Mr. Kenny, could you just, when you answer, lean into the microphone? I, I don't think people on Zoom are hearing you fully.
Just move the microphone between the two of you, so you can both speak into it.
Mr. Chairman, this may be a good point to say that Mr. Green said about two questions ago that he had, it was his final, final wind-up, and now we're two questions.
I, I agree. I, I'd, we'd really appreciate it if you could abbreviate and, and wrap up the questioning.
Well, I think, all right, I think, uh, in terms of the PFA testing, the commission can draw its own conclusion. Uh, I have no further questions for Mr. Kenny.
I have one follow-up question for Mr. Kenny. Uh, Mr. Kenny, with regard to where that traffic queues on North Wilton Road, how close is that to water courses for what?
I have, I have a map here. I can move it, but I don't.
If you can, just describe it. I know you're pointing to Mr. Finn, but for everyone else.
Can you please just speak into the microphone? I can't.
Sure. At the northwest corner of the property, just south of, uh, North Wilton Road, there are wetlands that are mapped right up. They are less than 50 feet from the road in that area, basically.
Right, right. So, so the North Wilton Road, where cars may be queuing, is a lot closer to the wetlands and water courses than the tennis courts, for example.
At that, yes, at that location in the northwest corner, yes.
Thanks. That's all I have.
Any further questions?
No follow-up, Mr. Kenny.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny.
I just have a question now for, um, Mr. Rossow. So, just for the record, the, over the aerial photographs that I found, I didn't hunt for them, they're on the New Canaan GIS system, and that's where they came from. So, Mr. Rossow, is it your testimony then, that the school, well, you've already, we're clear on the tennis court, but is it your testimony that there is no parking on the school site on the southeast corner of the property behind the academic building, other than on graduation?
No, I didn't say that.
Well, so when you said to the commission that that was graduation day, and that there were cars parked everywhere, the school does park cars on the south.
were cars parked everywhere, the school does park cars on the southeast corner of the property beneath or behind the academic building. Is that correct?
Yes, there's a gravel area which we occasionally use for overflow parking, which is the parking shortfall issue that we are here trying to solve.
And you're aware that the school never got a special permit to park cars there, aren't you?
Well, I object to the question. It's like, why did you stop at beating your wife? Because we don't, our position is you don't need a special permit for that.
All right. And are you aware that cars are parked on the northeast corner of the property near Wilton Road by, I guess, what's known as the art building?
There is a, there's a parking lot at the northeast corner of the building. There's a parking lot at the formerly known as the art house and there is a gravel area there that is occasionally used for overflow parking, similar to the area we just discussed.
And do you know why those parking areas weren't shown on the site plan that you've submitted to the commission?
Because they're not technically permanent parking areas. They are overflow areas where we have accommodated vehicles on a temporary basis.
And, but that's part of the daily routine of the school, is that correct?
I wouldn't say it's the daily routine. It's on an as-needed basis.
All right. And there are vehicles parked by the maintenance area of the school. Is that correct?
Occasionally, yes.
Including by the assessor's records, there's 13 commercial vehicles that are parked on the site.
How is, I'm sorry, Mr. Green, how is this relevant to the whole environmental impact issue that you're trying to prove?
Well, Mr. Kenny talked about the benefits of parking cars indoors because they don't leak metals, oil. There's no treatment. These parking areas are not shown on the site plan. They're not subject to any special permit at all. And all those materials are going through the gravel and into the ground there. So that's just.
You've made that point repeatedly. And we also object to the term of referring to vans and buses as commercial vehicles. So anyway.
And I would just conclude, I'll conclude, but I would just say that the zoning regulations don't allow that parking without a special permit. It violates the zoning regulations and therefore, and I did not plant any of these signs and I didn't have anything to do with any of these signs, but the comment that the use is illegal means that it violates the zoning regulations. That's just a point that I wanted to make. But that's all I have. And I, again, appreciate the commission's consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Finn, concluding comments?
Yes. First of all, I promised I would get back to Commissioner Engel about whether that piece of spaghetti is still sticking or not sticking, if you, if you know what I'm referring to. I think Mr. Kenny did a very good job of explaining why, there are six basic reasons why it's his opinion that environmentally approving this project is going to be, benefit environmental conditions in the area. So I, I want to be complete. I don't want you to think that I didn't get back to you. And so in fairness, I, I just wanted to see if there's, you have any other follow-up questions or you don't feel like that's been adequately addressed or?
I think it comes down to, it's not about the fear mongering, you know, it's not really about, it comes down to this, are you improving the conditions? And the standard, to your point, the standard for a special permit is here, the standard for a tax change is here. And therefore, when you ask for a parking structure, we're not talking, we're getting out of the realm of replacing a crumb rubber field with an EPDM field. And a lot of us can say that's an improved condition. And we've heard your parking, you're a traffic expert, and we've heard about an improved condition. But asking for a tax change to the regulations takes us to a whole nother level, which is why you're getting, the grilling you're getting, which means is not just a mere special permit. It's a tax change to the regulations to talk about a parking structure in a residential neighborhood. And I don't know that we've asked, we've adequately answered the question whether this could be done with an underground parking and a field on the ground. I don't think that question has even been asked and answered. Meaning, could we do this? Could we get these improvements without the tax change to the regulations? That's one of the things I'd like to know.
Well, I, I believe, was that, do you have a, did you look at digging down underneath the field in your vetting this project?
We looked at a number of alternatives, Commissioner Engel, and digging down was not one of the, we looked at the idea of digging down or trying to create some sort of subterranean something someplace else. But as you know, from the, as we know, from the borings that we took on Watson Field, we have very shallow ledge at one end, at one long end of the field and very deep ledge at the other end of the field. That was not a suitable site to do that type of work. We looked at other surface alternatives elsewhere on campus. And again, coming back to this idea of stacked use to maintain the, the green nature of the property, this is where we landed as the most efficient use of land that had already been developed. But digging down under Watson Field would not be feasible.
Because of the ledge?
Because, because of the sloping ledge that starts very, very shallow at one end and, and drops down towards the wetland side.
I also think, I, I know it's late, but it was part of my presentation to address the text change. And it's, it's, I think, the original application, the supporting materials cite often to the P O C D about why a parking structure such as this is, is good for New Canaan. And I will get into that in a few minutes. But I know it's late and I can tell from your faces that your attention span is, is not what it was at the beginning of the hearing. But I do feel I need to, you know, that's another piece of spaghetti that's stuck to the wall. And so I feel like I should address it because perhaps other commissioners have other issues that I need to try to address. So why don't I just start and I'll try to be as efficient as possible, Mr. Redd?
Before you do, Mr. Commissioner Chris had one follow-up question.
On the text change, so thank you. Text change is, for people who don't know, is this commission acting in its legislative capacity? I think that you would agree. You're nodding. So you, that's a yes.
Yes, sir.
When we, assuming that something is within our planning and zoning rules and someone's asking a special permit, we're acting in our administrative capacity. As you know, Mr. Finn, when we act in administrative capacity, while we have a significant amount of leeway, it's not infinite. When we act in our legislative capacity, our brief is far broader, similar to the state legislature, as long as it's consistent with the federal, with the federal constitution and the state constitution. If they want to raise taxes to this amount or that amount or tax these people or those, they can do it. It's their judgment, similar to us. And so we have a lot of leeway with the text change, which is a necessary precondition for any consideration of your special permit. So as a condition precedent, that has to be passed. And you've been to other meetings of this commission, you know, first you have to have a text change before you can apply the text change. Okay, you're nodding on that one too. And so it comes down, the, the elephant in the room that's been talked about is, is the text change a good idea in and of itself? Our current rules under section 6.2, point F.6 prohibit these types of structures outside of the downtown area. Not to split hairs on what that means, but it's just prohibited. I have to assume, I wasn't there when that was written, but I have to assume this commission did it because it thought it was a good idea. And so what I'm hearing here is that the, your clients want to have us reevaluate whether this is a good idea and maybe for this location, but perhaps not others. When I read the text, it talks about open space, I thought that was, I'm going to say it, a kind of a bad joke. It's the, it's the, it's the top of a, of a parking garage. It's not, in my opinion, open space. And that kind of hit me. I think what it boils down to is that despite what was stated, that the intensity of use of the property is not that high, it really is. A lot of the property is unusable. And compared to public schools in New Canaan, there's a lot of busing of people there. And so it's not, everyone's driving. And also the catchment area is much narrower. You have a much larger catchment area. What is it, maybe 20% of your people come from in town, others from, you've mentioned like 40 towns, a lot of places. So you're really going to drive there as a practical matter. And so you need to put the cars someplace, not only for people who are legally able to drive there, such as senior students and perhaps juniors, anyone with a driver's license. You know, the, the third graders at East School don't drive to work, don't drive to school. And so you're boxed in. You're grandfathered in correctly to your current footprint as an institutional use in a residential area, which other institutional uses in residential areas have all kinds of different rules they got to deal with. You're a bit exempt of that because you're exempt, because you're grandfathered in. You can expand the footprint. That means you have to apply for institutional use in a residential area, which brings up a whole nother issue, set of issues.
Is there a question coming?
The issue I'm saying is that if I'm asking the question, what is best for New Canaan? Is having a large parking garage in a residential area a good idea for New Canaan? And that's really what I'm, I'm wrestling with because everything else is, still has to, you still have to answer that first question with a yes, before you even get to all the conversation about pollution and sightlines and all the rest of the stuff. And so I'm still struggling whether that is the case. You're really out of room. And so by having a large parking garage, you free up other space. You can build other buildings and expand. And so I, it's tough for me to come to conclusion that having a large parking garage in a residential area is a good idea. I just, I'm still struggling with that. And any commentary you can have on that would be helpful because in a further intensification of what is an intensely used footprint, again, is something I struggle with. So these are the issues. And because I have to get to a yes on your text amendment for anything else happens. And I'm still struggling to get to yes on that. So, end of statement.
Okay. So there's a lot to unpack there. And with all respect, I disagree with a lot of it. And I'll get into that in a minute. I do, I think what you just said was that if you approve this text change, it frees up the property to build something else. That, that with all respect is not right. Because we're up, we're maxed out at coverage now. All this text change seeks to do, and what this commission has allowed other institutional uses to do in residential zones, is not have this particular structure count towards coverage. That's the only reason why we, we need this, because we're up against coverage. And we want to avoid building another surface parking lot, which would not require a special permit and would not require a text change. So when I first approached the town planner about this text change, I was trying to fashion it so it would be limited to a number of properties that it couldn't be used throughout the town. And it was decided after a lot of discussion that actually this text change should be more global in its impact, rather than limited to a number of properties. And the reason for that is because the plan of conservation and development, if you look at it and you look at the citations in our text change application, strongly support this. And, you know, I, I know you concluded, I'm getting a little ahead of myself, at the last hearing where I was remote and I could barely hear you, Commissioner Chris, you were kind enough to point out to us some concerns about the language of the text change.
Yes, I did.
And one of the things you mentioned was that open space is not a defined term, that it could be anything. And that was probably, perhaps generated by Mr. Green's ad nauseam statement. You could just put a green carpet on top of the structure and that would qualify as open space. Well, as it turns out, open space is a defined term in your zoning regulations. Section 2.2 of your zoning regulations defines open space. And I am ahead of myself, but perhaps I can just pick it out of the regulations. So the text change in and of itself incorporates a definition of open space. And as I mentioned the other, when we were on the Zoom, open space is repeatedly used by your P O C D, preservation of open space. And this project preserves open space for two reasons. It's a dual purpose, it's using land for a dual purpose, as Mr. Rossau explained, and it prevents another surface parking lot from being created at St. Luke's. Do we really want another surface parking lot in a residential area? As I said, we could build that with site plan approval. And I know you might say, well, we can turn down site plan approval. With all respect, not so easy. And so this is, and, and let's talk about the implications for coverage. What, what is coverage limitations designed to prevent? And again, I'm getting ahead of myself, but it's, sorry, let me give you the definition of open space first, okay? Open space, this will be incorporated into the text change if you approve it. Land preserved in perpetuity for protection of natural resources, natural features, scenic resources or community character. Now, our text change incorporates that, plus it says it applies to athletic fields. Athletic fields are not on site. They're certainly a lot better than looking at a surface parking lot. Okay? And these, these fields, as Julie indicated, they're used by New Canaan. Schools need athletic fields. And they need athletic fields that are not deteriorating. So to have this, an athletic field doesn't count towards coverage, right? That doesn't count towards coverage. So this seemed like a really good way of furthering a lot of goals of your plan of conservation and development. And I, I list probably 10 citations to the plan of conservation development in my text change application. And this text change is consistent with all of those. And with all respect, there's been no citation to the P O C D that says this text change is inconsistent with the, with the, with the P O, with the P O C D. So.
No, I understand, Mr. Finn. I mean, ultimately, at least for me, when I decide, looking at text changes and acting in our legislative capacity, I ask myself, what's best in the, what is in the best long-term interest of the town in New Canaan with all costs and benefits being considered? That's sort of what I come from. And that's, again, a legislative issue as opposed to administrative issue is a whole different set of considerations. Whether the roof of a structured parking is open space, I have a tough time wrapping my mind around. One can argue using that line of thinking is that, well, we're going to, instead of having single-family houses, we're simply going to have a 20-story building and then the rest is open space and green. That is a way to do it. I'm not sure I would get behind that in the town of New Canaan, but that has been argued by many people that simply you have more multifamily and less single family and you truncate development and you go vertical because you either can go up, you go down, or you go out. There's only three dimensions available. And so I still struggle with the, including the camel's, potential camel's nose under the tent of approving it in one place, we have other institutional uses in residential areas, which may very well like to do it. And they're going to argue the same point. And we end up having more and more parking garages in residential areas and elsewhere. We're residential areas, I'm less concerned about in the middle of the downtown, frankly. And, you know, is that a precedent this commission wants to, wants to deal with? This is, again, something I, I, I struggle with. And I, I grant that there are parking, there are traffic issues. I think that's a kind of a no-brainer to me. I think a lot of it is a product of your own making in that as you have more and more students and more and more staff and more and more administrators, you have more and more need for parking, there's going to be more cars coming in. And at some point, do you say, no más or not? It's nice to grow. Businesses like to grow and I, I get that. Growing elsewhere becomes awkward logistically. And, and so it comes, I think one of what it comes down to is, you know, which challenge do you want to have? The challenge of parking or, excuse me, cars queued up on North Wilton Road. I've been through that. It's, it's not pleasant. I see that in front of Ponus Ridge. I live on Ponus Ridge. And, you know, ever been by in pickup time on, on West School? It's a long queue. It's a long queue of cars. Okay. Or do you want to have a large parking garage in a residential area? This is what I'm struggling with. And it comes down to, first of all, is that a good idea? Is this in the best long-term interest of New Canaan? Because I have to come to that conclusion to approve any kind of special, excuse me, text change in order to get to everything else. And that's what I'm struggling with, Mr. Finn.
I understand. And I appreciate the struggle. And, but the text change is designed so that it will not have, you cannot approve this unless it is properly situated on the property so that it's not easily visible. And I go back to that you could build a surface parking lot. So would you rather have more surface parking lots in residential areas? Or would you rather have a garage that is, to all intents and purposes, outside of the campus, looks like a field and can't be seen by anyone off-campus? Or if it can be seen, it can be barely be seen? Why isn't that a good solution? Why isn't doubling up the use of land, in that matter, that has no impact on the neighbors? The structure itself will have no impact on the neighbors. We can debate whether the field, the artificial field may have some impact on that. And I think we've shown that it will not. If anything, it'll have positive impact. But the structure itself. And what is the, we're looking for an example. Garages are allowed in residential zones, by the way. Section 3.4C-1 authorizes a garage for more than five vehicles and can exceed building coverage of 1,000 square feet. It says, it says detached garage is accessory to a residence. Okay? Now granted, St. Luke's is not a residence, but it's a 44-acre pre-existing use in a residential area. Your regulations do not prevent or say that you cannot have the structure that we're proposing at St. Luke's. What it says is, well, we know that garages have to comply with coverage. The only reason why we're here is not because we feel we need permission to build a garage at St. Luke's. The reason why we're here is because we're, we need to exempt that structure from coverage.
But what we're all struggling with, not just Mr. Chris, is opening Pandora's Box by a text amendment. What it will do is in a residential, for example, by your logic of having a field on top of this structure qualifying as open space, will allow the person down the block who wants to build a four-car garage with a tennis court on top and not count towards coverage because he's got a tennis court on top, and it's a open space. Whether it be a field, or a tennis court, or a putting green, or whatever it might be, it's, it's going to, it's going to do that. It's going to open Pandora's Box for those types of workaround applications.
Only, only if it meets the criteria of the proposed regulation, which requires that the visual impact is mitigated by site design or the surrounding topology. So only those circumstances. Look, and there was a discussion last time about whether you, as a commission, can amend a proposed text change, or whether you have to start the process all over again. And the law is clear. In fact, it's anticipated that when commissions deliberate on text changes, they may edit it or amend it. So this is in your hands, okay?
Legislative capacity.
Yes, precisely. But let's talk, I want to talk a minute about what is the purpose of coverage restrictions? Why do we have coverage restrictions? And the reasons for coverage restrictions are the following: to avoid building scale that impacts neighborhood properties, to avoid bulk and mass, to promote open space, and to reduce impermeable surface. That's why there are coverage limitations. This text change and this project do not implicate any of those rationales for coverage restrictions. In fact, this text change promotes the preservation of open space because it's not going to cause St. Luke's to build a surface parking lot someplace else. It reduces impermeable surface. You've heard, you've got a field on top of a garage, okay? Dual purpose for the same area of land. Bulk and mass, you've, these, these properties, the neighbor properties are hundreds of feet away from this, and they're buffered by 600 trees. Not going to be any bulk or mass impact on any neighbor. Avoid boarding scale, building scale that impacts neighborhood properties. Again, it's located into a hillside, the lowest part of the campus. On one side, there's a hill. On the other side, there's 600 trees. And it's located hundreds of feet away from North Winton Road. No one's going to see this. It is a perfect solution. It solves for traffic. It avoids a surface parking lot, which is unsightly. It solves for parking. It's good for the environment. I don't think it's a closed question. If you want to, if you want to amend the text change so that is more restrictive, that's fine. But I will tell you that if you look at my submission on the text change where I cite to the P O C D, you will see seven or eight citations to both the strategic element and the implementation element that support this text change. So, why don't you, why don't you think about that? I do want, I do want to respond to some of the alleged zoning violations that Mr. Green cited too. As I said, 3.4C-1 allows detached garages accessory to a residence in a residential zone. And when you translate that to a special permit use in a residential zone, I think you come to the conclusion that garages are allowed at, for special permit uses in residential zones.
And which we've turned down.
I'm sorry?
Some of which we've turned down.
Okay. And, you know, 6.2F-7 was cited, but, I'm sorry, you should take a look at, I think 6.2F-5 was cited, but you should take a look at 6.2F-7. But in any event, the regulation, I admit there's a little bit of a fuzziness about garages in residential zones for special permit uses. But again, garages are allowed in residential zones. Okay? And garages that are more than five, has more than five vehicles that are in excess of 1,000 square feet are allowed. So if you've got a two-acre property, you could, you can build a garage. You need a permit, okay? You do. But we've got 45 acres, okay? And, and that's without making sure that it's not visible to the surrounding areas. Ours is not going to be visible, and it's preserving open space. So.
I understand, Mr. Finn. You make some points that I can, I can wrap my mind around. I would just note that I would suggest there's a difference and not a distinction between a five- or six-car garage that probably is going to have all kinds of very precise design features embedded in it if it comes before this commission, and 177-vehicle concrete garage. I would suggest there's a difference, not a distinction, between the two. And again, I come back to the issue of a large structure in a, that is not allowed now in a residential area and precedent. And whether, again, what's in the best long-term interest of the town of New Canaan encompassing all benefits and costs to all participants? And that's ultimately, when we're acting in our legislative capacity, is the key thing that I think about. And that's the thing I'm still struggling with, with this application, which I have not decided on. But this is what I'm struggling with in coming to the conclusion on what to do. So.
All right. I, I know we're sort of repeating ourselves, but I maintain that the reason why we're here for this text change is not because we can't build a garage, but because we have coverage issue. So, anyway, let me, let me, let me move on.
Yeah, why don't you?
Yep.
Wrap it up.
So there was a, Mr. Trinkus wrote a letter saying that, you know, the coverage that submitted on our survey is incorrect. Mr. Trinkus is not a surveyor, and his interpretation that you must exclude certain corners of the property from lot area has never, in my experience, ever been adopted by any licensed surveyor who has worked in New Canaan. Moreover, the zoning enforcement officer and the, nor the town planner, from Hyrum Peck to Steve Kleppen to Lynn Brooks Avenue, to our current planner Sarah Kerr, has ever, to my knowledge, endorsed Mr. Trinkus's view. In addition, the available coverage for this lot was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission in 2013, and then again in 2018. I believe there's an approved map on the land records, map number 7726, that calculates the lot area and available coverage identical to the one filed with the pending site plan and special permit application. So this coverage issue is just another red herring. Mr. Green has repeated often that, that he believes there are alleged existing zoning violations. In short, we dispute that there are any existing zoning violations or that a survey needs to show that the tennis courts or areas of the campus are temporarily being used for parking. We also submit that whether zoning violations exist are in the purview of the zoning enforcement officer, and there has been no indication that any violations exist other than Mr. Green's allegations. Lastly, with regard to zoning violations, section 8.2.8.3.G provides that the commission can approve a special permit on property where zoning violations exist if granting the special permit will remedy the violation. So if you believe that there are violations existing on the property because we're temporarily using areas, if this application is approved, it will address those claim violations alleged by the intervenor. And that's perfectly permissible under your zoning regulations. So let's spend a little bit more time on the text change. You know, this text change is under 3.7E.2, which is exemptions from coverage. And that section has a number of subsections that provide exemptions from coverages under certain circumstances for recreational clubs, the historical society, hospitals. And my point is, is that allowing extra coverage for those uses run afoul of, for the rationale for coverage in the beginning than the exemption provided in our text change for the reasons I mentioned. None of the considerations for why we need coverage limitations apply to this text change. Let me try to streamline this. The neighbors have complained that the garage will be easily visible to surrounding properties and will impact the modern houses in the area. The exhibits we have provided clearly demonstrate that the parking garage will not be easily visible from the neighboring properties. And again, if you compare the visibility of this structure to a surface parking lot, it is clear that this project is far superior. Two, two, two last points. So in our application for text change, which was dated October 23, 2023, we cite to the strategic element of the P O C D for support, pages 41, page 12, page 5. And the implementation element, which we cite to protecting physical character, preserve and enhance physical character, maintain environmental health, which is what this text change would allow, and that this will help continue to preserve, conserve natural resources in New Canaan. I mean, the alternative here is terrible. The alternative here is, is keep the, keep the existing field, probably with the chrome rubber, and build a surface parking lot. I, I, I don't get it. I really don't. Lastly, and I am trying to be mindful of your time. In response to Mr. Cruz's statements about the text change the last time, I did redraft it in accordance with your request. I capitalized "open space" to signify that it's, open space is a defined term. And I added in some commas and some other language that you requested, and because you asked me to do that. As I mentioned.
I suggested it as a, a better way to state it.
Okay, well, I didn't want you to think that I ignored that, so I have copies here. I'll just give them to the town planner. As I said, you are free to redraft the text change to address your concerns. Thank you.
I would state, Mr. Finn, that you say here that passenger vehicles, these are your words, constructed underneath areas that are maintained as open space. So in this case, open space is defined very specifically and narrowly as the roof of a garage. I don't really think that the definition using here is a practical matter, because it has to be under, has to be on top of a garage really qualifies as open space, especially the definition you provided to us, which I am aware of, sir. So I think that you said that term here is still awkward. That's me.
Well, I, I'll leave that to you. I mean, we, we did talk, we're, we're latching on. We use the term athletic field. That's what applies to our particular project. And again, this text change was drafted so that it would apply more broadly than just to St. Luke's School because we thought that's what would be good for the town and implement a number of the strategies and goals of your P O C D. We could have drafted it more narrowly. We could have. And frankly, that's what I was intending to do. But I always thought, based on some discussions I had, I thought it was better to broaden it because, and the more I looked at the P O C D, the more I thought, this is good. This is a good idea. And it is supported by your P O C D.
Well, we're redrafting our P O C D now, and we welcome public input.
Well, I think, I think, you know, I've monopolized a lot of your time on this.
You've been generous listening to me, sir.
And I tried to respond directly to your concerns. And I feel like the other commissioners may have some questions about the text change, but my guess is that everyone's ready to call it an evening. But I'm here to try to answer any questions.
You're good?
Uh, yes, I am good.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Finn? Any additional questions?
Thank you. You've done a very thorough job taking care of a lot of spaghetti.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I really.
We just addressed this document. He capitalized the word "open space."
We haven't even gotten to see it.
That's the point.
I'm sorry. You know, he can force examine my witnesses. I get to go last. He could have, he commented on the text change. You've heard from him. If he speaks, I'm going to want to speak.
We're not, I'm sorry. We're not hearing anything further on the text change. We'll be evaluating that and commenting and probably revising it on our own. But that's for us to do.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again for your time.
Appreciate it. Anything further? This application's closed.
Thank you. Not much. So do I. Let's keep this rolling, wrap up the last few items here. Deliberation on open items.
Didn't we have, you know, what, you had to hear it first?
Yeah, no, we're going to cut to that after. Frog Town is the first one, yep. We have to vote on, then we voted on that, so Frog Town and we have Downriver, right?
Oh, right, Downriver, right.
Right. All right, commissioners.
You didn't vote on Frog Town yet.
No. Commissioners, any comments on the Frog Town application? Again, this is for the increase in building coverage for accessory dwelling unit, building coverage exceed five by 553 square feet.
I'll dive in because I want to go home, so I think that this, it did not feel consistent with the intent of the regulation. What we're talking about is not a one-story. I know it's technically a one-story garage, but it's got a full lower level below it, and the parts that he is exempted in order to get that more than 1,000 square foot garage are small decks and eaves, and so I don't think that this, the intent was to reward perhaps a ranch, a one-story house, and so I just don't think it meets the spirit of the regulation, so I'm inclined to vote against it. Also, I think, based on our rather strict interpretation only a month or so ago on Country Club Road, I think the commission, and this informed my vote, the commission is taking a rather narrow view of this regulation. Did not allow the last poolhouse for the same reasons I'm citing. Make me uncomfortable with this poolhouse. If this was a one-story poolhouse, I might feel differently, but I really feel like it's a very large poolhouse, and he hasn't really given up that much in terms of height restriction.
I think.
It was under 1,000 square feet, though.
This is under 1,000? Oh, it was more than 800, which is, which is, in many places around the country, 800 is the limit for an A D U. It was more than 800.
In New Canaan, it's 1,000 before a special permit.
Right.
Well, detached requires a special permit, but it's, 1,000 is New Canaan's threshold, so we shouldn't be.
How big is it?
I believe the footprint is.
995.
995, okay.
So, we can't.
That doesn't happen by accident.
But it's under 1,000?
What I'm struggling with is citing the, the application as being for an accessory dwelling unit, whereas what we really have is a four-car garage with a poolhouse below it.
Three-car garage, I think.
Above it.
Three is drawn, but.
You get four, and they're 10.
Yeah.
You know, as of, as of right, they're allowed up to five garage bays, so we can't, we can't regulate.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, but.
Below that.
Yeah, it's just, I know it's drawn with a lounge and an apartment downstairs, but, you know, we all know it's going to be a poolhouse.
It doesn't. Why does that matter?
I guess it doesn't.
I mean, if they came in for a poolhouse, would be, you objecting to that? It's just semantics about what you call it.
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Knag on Zoom. You know, I feel that this is quite different from the one we rejected, you know, and in particular that it's done in a way that's acceptable to the neighbors. It's in the back. It's not really visible to the neighbors in any meaningful way, and I think these, these applications need to be evaluated each on its, on their own merits, and the other one, I think, was much more, was much different because of the problems that it caused with the neighbors. So, you know, I'm, you know, I don't see why we should prevent them from building as a garage, poolhouse, whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, if I could add my observation, I also think this is very different from the one we saw last month, in that a site plan for the entire site had been submitted a year before. They could have figured that out beforehand. Somebody then said, oh, we can jam some more in here and get over coverage, whereas the one that we saw today is going to keep an existing house, prevent another huge house from potentially being built in a spot, using the space effectively. I actually found this one to be a rational use. I did note particularly that there were no complaints from budding neighbors.
And to add to that, honestly, I believe the spirit of the regulation in terms of the limitation on height and to allow the additional coverage, I would venture to say that it was intended for existing structures where they were limited by certain aspects of either the structure or the site to allow them the additional coverage. You know, if you're, if you've got a clean slate of a property like the previous application, you've got a clean slate of a property where you can design within, you can easily design within the regulations, but you didn't, that's, that's not a reason to increase the coverage.
This is Commissioner Chris. Also, that part of it is banked into what is going to be a hill, provides some additional screening, de facto screening, that I think is beneficial, and I would concur, Mr. Chairman, that, you know, the, here we have an older, bit rambling, been added on to a few times house, and I think it's really for that type of, it's more for that type of installation that we would, perhaps approve it, as opposed to, here's just two acres that's empty, you know, and I just want a big house. You could have figured that out from the get-go. Here, they already have some cards that have been dealt, given the, given the house that exists, so I'm, I'm sympathetic to Commissioner Engel's comments. I think it's a bit of a close call. I'm leaning a little bit more towards approval, but, you know, still more towards the center for me.
I would just add that I also think that this is pretty different than the one last month, where that was all new construction. I know it's late, but I also think that at some point, we need to think about this regulation, because I'm, should we keep stumbling over every time it comes before us and having different interpretations of what it means?
Few more examples, we'll know how we feel.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if you're the sixth person that comes, maybe we will have figured it out, but, so, anyway, let's just put that on the table for a later date that we need.
I will add that to the list.
Yeah, I'm sure it's a short list. You've got it.
Oh, yeah, very short.
I'll also state that should this commission approve it, that as a condition, the applicant would be required to have a landscape architect design whatever landscaping they're going to be putting in, and it would need to be submitted to Sarah Carey for approval. We've already asked them, and they said it was fine, so I don't see that as an issue, but I would, I would recommend that that be included.
Okay. Any further comments? Chris?
Just a quick one, a quick comment. I mean, I do think it is nice the way it incorporates it into the site. The, you know, when we think about coverage, it's a two-acre zone, and it's, you know, it's a convenience to have this extra coverage, but the comment of, I think the coverage reg is there to prevent sort of overdevelopment of a given site vis-à-vis the neighbors, and, you know, again, I use the term intensity of use, and one of the things that jumped out at me was, just by virtue of where the location of that building is, it basically doubles the length of the driveway, and I guess, one of the, I think the architect mentioned it'd be nice to have that second leg of the driveway, which is probably used, you know, a third or a quarter is, you know, have that section be permeable, just because you're already adding an extra 1,000 square feet of roof line, and you already have a big pool, and you already have a 7,000 square foot house. I feel like, again, I don't feel like I can legislate it, but I feel like that impermeable nature of that additional driveway, I prefer to see it permeable, is I guess my point, because I think you're kind of balancing off hardscape versus building structure.
Did there, they have a drainage report associated with this application, correct?
Yes, they do.
And did they assume that it was paved asphalt driveway all the way back?
Correct, and gravel would be treated the same way, under the model. Gravel is treated the same.
What I learned, if it's, if it's, what do you call it, grass?
Belgian block?
No. Structural grass tiles, pavers, that's, that's considered non-perme, that's considered non-permeable, but if you gravel it, they consider the idea that you're just going to pave it in the future, whereas if you put cement block down, like, to drive fire trucks over, that you're not going to rip that up, they consider that impermeable, or, sorry, permeable. So, that's actually preferred to gravel. That's what I learned from the site engineer I worked with.
Any further comments, anyone?
Well, the lawsuit alleged that we didn't cite our reasons, so whoever's going to make the motion on this, I want to make sure that we get legal and we cite our reasons.
Absolutely. Do I have a motion?
I scared everybody.
No, I gotta do my homework.
Someone take the hot potato.
This is Commissioner Chris. I move we approve it.
Okay.
I would have a condition that a professional landscape plan needs to be developed and submitted to Sarah Carey for approval. She certainly has the ability to kick it back to us if she feels that's the right thing to do, but she has, would have authority to do so. Commissioner Herring, your issue on coverage, would you, and permeable services, would you want as a condition that the building materials for the extended driveway should be permeable?
We cannot legally require that.
Can't do that? Okay, well, that's, okay, so much for that. Reasons, I see this as a well-designed addition. I think that the partial banking of the structure provides a much reduced visual impact for neighbors, and I think that the existing dwelling, which is somewhat large and bit rambling, but very low, ameliorates the additional coverage being created by this A D U.
I'll second it, and I'll add that I think that Plan of Conservation and Development talks about allowing accessory structures in larger zones, and I think, again, the way that this one's been situated on the site, it does a good job of fitting in while also preserving an existing structure.
Agreed. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, call to a vote. Dan Radman, I vote yes. Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Kent Turner?
Yes.
Art Gossavat?
Yes.
John Cris?
Yes.
Chris Herring?
Yes.
John Engel?
No.
Paul Knag?
Yes.
And Tom Benton?
Yes.
This one passes. Next one we have is six Downriver Road. Discussion.
This is Commissioner Chris. I think they're nicely designed. I'm okay with the front doors facing Downriver Road. They are Downriver Road addresses. I prefer the separated, the two separate houses opposed to a larger, I think it's a larger building that's just, has a common wall. I think that provides less impact on the site. I think they did a very good job of utilizing the site. It's a very tough site.
And he's got a legal easement on the record, and he's got the approval of Town Hall on a curb cut on Downriver is preferred over a curb cut on Main Street.
Yeah.
Anything else, anyone? Any other comments? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Herring?
Okay.
Okay, it's called to a vote. Dan Radman, I vote yes. Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Kent Turner?
Yes.
Art Gossavat?
Yes.
John Cris?
Yes.
Chris Herring?
Yes.
John Engel?
Yes.
Paul Knag?
Yes.
And Tom Benton?
Yes.
It passes. All right, then, last order of business here. We're back to St. Luke's, St. Luke's School, 377.
Just before that, we should probably discuss scheduling a special meeting for deliberations for St. Luke's, rather than, just while we're in the deliberations portion of the.
Okay.
Meeting, so.
Potential dates.
Yeah, so I.
Potential dates.
I recommend the week of April 22nd, which is the week after the school's spring break. The Inland Wetlands Commission has a drop-dead date of making a decision, I believe, on April 22nd, so I think waiting to meet and deliberate until after Inland Wetlands has their full decision is logical.
Passover.
So, weekend of April 22nd is my recommendation.
Is there any conflicts with room availability?
I am pulling that up right now.
What date is Passover?
Monday. That Monday is Passover.
Gotcha.
It's also Earth Day.
23rd on my physical calendar.
Mine says 22nd. Probably starts on the Sunday, I think, since it's the first day.
Okay, so, looks like this room is booked on Tuesday.
It's on Monday. Say again, sorry?
Booked.
So, it looks like the Wednesday and Thursday of that week, this room is open?
Okay.
Wednesday.
Wednesday can work.
Wednesday?
Wednesday's good with me.
Does that work with the rest of the commissioners?
Yeah.
That's the 24th.
24th.
Yes, sir. Special meeting, we can do that at 7:00?
7:00, yep.
Okay.
Dan, if I'm not seated for that, because I'll be in Europe that week, doesn't matter.
So, it, so right now, where we stand, I believe Commissioner Larson has attended every meeting in person for the matter, so she would be seated before you, and assuming all other regular members are at the meeting, you would not be seated.
Yeah, you'll be, you'll be okay.
It'll be a hybrid, and make this.
Yeah.
Wednesday, the 24th.
That works.
And just to clarify, that would still likely not be a full decision that day. That would just be deliberations, where then I would have more direction of how to draft resolutions for you all.
Draft a resolution. Yep, agreed. Do that next week, on the week before we get a meeting. Administrative actions, we have one on the ticket here. This is again for St. Luke's, 377 North Wilton Road, St. Luke's School, request to rent our athletic facilities, including the stadium and upper field, tennis courts, and the athletic center, and main building gyms. Hours are listed here for the stadium and turf field, July 15th, or, this is football camp dates, July, the week of July 15th. Upper field softball games are April 27th, May 11th, four different dates in here, and stadium turf field soccer camp dates are Sunday, July 21st, so a series of different camp dates during the summertime. We get this, it's typical, every year, we get to review their dates. Any issues with these particular? Any issues with these particular dates or what they've submitted? Is it consistent with their previous year's applications?
Yes.
There's no conflict with other things? Is there a master calendar?
Conflict-
Conflict with what?
Other activities on these fields that are scheduled?
Well, that's for them, that would be for them to coordinate. Yeah, that's their deal. Okay. Vote on this one? Do I hear a motion on the schedule for the fields over at St. Luke's?
I'm listening to you, Chris.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Call to vote. Dan Radman, I vote yes. Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Kent Turner?
Yes.
Art Casavant?
Yes.
John Cris?
Yes.
Chris Herring?
Yes.
John Engel?
Yes.
Paul Knag?
Yes.
Tom Benton?
Yes.
And meeting minutes, last and final item. Everyone get a chance to review these. I can't vote on the February 28th when I wasn't here, so. Can I, can we call a vote on approval for both of them together? Okay, so I'll abstain for-
And you don't have to go through the roll call. You can just say all in favor.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate everyone's time.